There we go. Welcome to the October 16, 2015 City Council Special Meeting. My name is Tom Vance and I am honored to serve as your mayor. Madam City Clerk, can you call the roll?
Mayor Tom Vance.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Kathy Huckabee.
President.
Councilmember Don Jarand.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Keller.
President.
Councilmember Tom Odell.
Here.
Councilmember Ramiro Valderrama.
He is joining us shortly.
Councilmember Nancy Whitten.
President. I pledge the duty of.
Okay, and we should, well, she never left, but we should welcome back our deputy mayor anyway. After knee replacement surgery, she's looking very, very good for having gone through that. Only two weeks ago, or thereabouts.
Yeah, give me two hours.
I know.
Thank you for coming. That's really great.
I won't ask you to lead us in the play, just because I know you can't stand up. Councilmember Keller, could you lead us?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, you did stand up, so.
Yes, I did.
I'll remember that next time. Okay, can we have an approval of the agenda, including the consent agenda, or a motion to approve? We've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any, any issues with the consent agenda? Mr. Odell, Councilmember Odell.
For the benefit of the council, I previously notified the chair that I want to discuss item number six. I think I changed my mind and let that one go.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three minutes limit per person, or five minutes if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 p.m. So we still have an opportunity to submit something, I guess. The end of business day. To the city clerk. Okay, I have Scott Hamilton.
Hi, Scott Hamilton, 19727 Southeast 19th Street. I actually may push that three minutes a little much, and I appreciate your indulgence if I do, because this is very important. There's a British term called gobsmacked, that if you don't know it, you can look it up, but it's, it's one of incredulity. And I was gobsmacked when I learned 10 days ago that Smamish wasn't going to participate in Cascadia Rising, especially when all the other cities in the Smamish Plateau Water District were going to, and, and especially when there are three fault lines, earthquake fault lines that come through the southern end of Smamish. And as I looked into this, it became clear beyond a reasonable doubt that there was no intention of the City Hall to participate. It was pointed out that EFNR and the King County Sheriff's Office would be participating, but the absence of City Hall's intent to participate was just something I just couldn't believe. And then on the September 1 City Council meeting, when I looked at the tape, our city manager's response was that the water districts were the appropriate agencies to participate. And while certainly the water districts will have their own issues to deal with in terms of repairing any water and sewer disruptions, it's going to be City Hall that our citizens look to. If you have trees that come down and block roads, if you have roads that are upheaved, it's going to be City Hall that is going to be the one that would have to coordinate with FEMA if we're talking about a really huge disaster. It's going to be City Hall that will actually be talking to our police and fire chiefs of our contract agencies. It's, it was just really a stunning statement on the part of our city manager that it's the water districts. And I'm really glad to hear that, that City Hall has reversed its position on that. I just hope that it won't be lip service. When, when we had the wind disaster, windstorm in, what was it, 2006, or whatever that was, you know, there were parts of our city that were without power for more than a week, and I think some of our homeowners may have been without power as much as two weeks. And I remember that the city manager called me to help do some marshaling over at the high school parking lot as people brought all the tree debris and so on. And I think what is also disturbing is that on September 1 at that City Council meeting, it was Member Valderrama who brought up in the council reports, why aren't we participating? And I was really struck that not a single City Council member spoke up in support of Member Valderrama's question and the issue at hand. And I find that just extraordinarily disturbing. This is public safety we're talking about here. The 2001 Nusqually earthquake caused damage in Smamish. It caused damage at my house. It caused the Smamish Parkway to be upheaved. And I really think that, that the City Council and the city administration has to undertake a paradigm shift in its thinking about its approach toward disaster preparation. And, and to be sure, the idea of an earthquake, particularly a devastating earthquake, the odds are pretty long, but all it takes is that one time. And, and I just really have to say how disappointed I was with that September 1 thing, and, and ask that you really take a real good, hard look at, at your policies and your thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. This is an event that about to take place in nine months down the road. City takes the emergency preparedness very seriously. We have built the City Hall to withstand the earthquake, and then we have actually, the emergency operations center consists of the back room right here, and also the extension to this particular facility. We have, in the past, in numerous occasion, activated the EOC, Emergency Operations Center. And that's whether it's the windstorm that you mentioned to me, that I think you and I had talked at the time, and we also had the big snowstorm event. We wanted to make sure that all the other lip folks are taken care of, as I believe that actually a few of the council members were here at the EOC sitting with me. Few of them volunteered to go out there, knock on the doors. We tested our EOC, and we had identified some issues. While it functioned well, we need to make some improvements. And this council unanimously provided additional resources, so we just recently, last year, updated our emergency operations center. And we have actually tests scheduled for October 15 that we do drills. We periodically participate in the drills. I don't remember exactly what I told the council member Valderrama's request, but I think that if I look at it, probably wanted to say that, let me look and follow up and get back to you. September 1, we're in October. I know you had called me, you had called the deputy city manager, you had called multiple council members on this issue. And when I find out that you actually called the deputy city manager, I told him to follow up with you. Because it's a nine months down the road, this particular function in terms of being participate on the drills is coordinated citywide as we get closer to it, just like all the others serious ones in the past that, in the drills that we had informed the council, and council would have been informed with that. So I appreciate your sensitivity, I appreciate your comments, but I assure you that we take that very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Mary Wikter. I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Smamish. And I wanted to start with an update for Tamarack Drainage. In the last two weeks, a council member did come out for an onsite visit. The city staff scheduled a long meeting with me, and we had discussed many of the options and plans ahead. There has been an engineer who's been assigned, and she came out on Friday for a two-hour site visit with me. So I wanted to say that I'm extremely thankful and hopeful, and I would like to express my deep gratitude for all the support at this time. So today, I'd like to go back to something my son and I talked about on the 19th of May. There's an ingress egress for Tamarack North along Northeast 6th Street. This photo is from December, and you can see a construction truck there, and local traffic has been using that at Gravel Road since sewer was installed in 2004. It is the only exit for Tamarack to the north. Right next to where Tamarack private roads start, there is a public transition, and you can see they're interested in health and public safety. They've got a fire hose there which can attach to a hydrant off to your right. It does say, as you go up closer to Tamarack, that the road is closed, but they are allowing people to go by foot. And I don't know if you can see it there, it says, "End of County Road," so you can see the transition, but you could get for emergency access, an ambulance, a police car, and maybe a fire truck through there right now. One of the concerns I have is there seems to be a rather new dead-end sign. I'm not sure when it went up. It's on the east end of Northeast 6th, where it connects to 216th Avenue, and that is just below or south of where the roundabout is. There used to be a sign that was up for a number of years saying temporarily that the road would be closed. You can see the clearing grade for permit for that started in 2013. That sign has now been taken down. I went yesterday to Northeast 6th, and there are four lots being built, lots 2 through 5. And you can see this, what it looks like. It's a pretty tough-going road, and there is construction debris, but you could drive in an emergency, I guess. As you follow Northeast 6th Street and it goes uphill, it becomes 210th Avenue. You can see, it's kind of dark, but you can see the, the physical barriers there by the great big concrete things that can't be moved by hand. And you can also see the two new homes that were built recently in the last two years as lots 35 and 36. Those homes have also both sold and are occupied. And then if you go around the barriers and you look back the other way, you see the road closed sign. The lot to the right is Lot 1 for Tamarack, and this is looking downhill to Northeast 6th Street from that curve. So if you walk along 210th going south, you'll see the Realtor sign there. That's been up for a number of years. And that lot is in a landslide hazard, sensitive overlay area, and drainage instability would have to be dealt with if that lot is developed. We have also entered the wet season, so I have a question about emergency and road access, because really the only way to get to that lot is through narrow private roads for 3/10ths to 7/10ths of a mile, since it's blocked at the other end. And that wears out the roads a lot, and for emergency, we need to be able to get through. So my final slide is, currently the road is closed. I'm not sure why or who gives a permit for that or for how long, but I would like to have the cement blocks used, so at least we could have it for emergency access, and thanks to the topic before me that led into this.
Thank you. Next is Cheryl True.
My name is Cheryl True. I'm at 445-210th Ave., Northeast in Smamish. I'm here to express concern regarding the vacant lot that is just toward the north of my home. Mary just showed a slide of that lot. The whole area in question is designated as a King County environmentally sensitive area and a landslide hazard. This lot in particular involves severe slopes and substantial stormwater and groundwater drainage issues. During heavy rainstorms, strong streams are formed on both that lot and my own, and I've looked out my dining room window and seen mudslides. And the neighbor across the street recalls when a large area of old-growth trees slid down into the ravine during a storm. However, it now appears that this lot is in the process of being sold and developed, and I'm hoping there's codes and ordinances in place to prevent my home from being adversely affected. The lot has a relatively small area of flat ground close to the street, but quickly drops down into a deep ravine with this deep slope going down further into the direction of George Davis Creek. The drop-off curves around to the south and west to form the shared east-west border of my property, with the same, with approximately 20 to 30-foot bank being a very short distance from the north side wall of my house. Since I bought my house four years ago, I've worked with King County to identify plants and, and shrubs and other vegetation, do what I could to help shore up the bank on my side. And the vacant lot next to me is covered with trees of varying sizes that most certainly have been responsible for maintaining whatever integrity exists within that bank. But last month, a geotech crew came in with a backhoe to do their studies and tore up small trees and berry bushes and other vegetation on a relatively large portion of the flat section between the drop-off and the street, and there's been no indication of intent to cover the resulting exposed loose dirt in order to mitigate erosion. The developer currently looking to buy that lot is the same one who last year bought the next two lots further north. Mary also showed that, those places. These lots have similar, though less severe, topographical changes, with a steep drop-off limiting the available building area. Yet he built and sold two fairly large homes close to the street edge. All trees for the adjoining building sites for those homes were removed in less than a day. A neighbor later discovered there's been claims made stating substantial impervious surface from old driveways existed, which thereby allowed for removal of more trees, making the available building area larger. Residents in the area can vouch for the fact that there were no driveways there. This apparent deception certainly has not eased my concerns regarding excessive tree removal, increased landslide risk, slope stability, and water and drainage, water drainage and runoff issues. While I understand the development of this lot is likely, I just hope the City of Smamish has strict measures in place that will be enforced in order to address these concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Keeping in mind, we will have a public hearing in just a few minutes on the tree ordinance. So if you do have public comment, please come, give your name and address.
Karen Moran, 20705 Southeast 3rd Way, Smamish. I just wanted to address the council a little bit again about the emergency preparedness stuff. I've been on the EMAC, and it's been together for over two years. That committee has been working with the East Side Cities, the East Side Districts, the East Side Utility Districts, the East Side Fire Districts. And I know, I personally had tried to have a conversation with Mr. Yuziki, and I know, you know, super busy, and Mr. Lyman, I know, super busy. I am thrilled the city is finally on board with this. But there is months and months of preparation the other cities have done, so please get in contact with them.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Please step to the podium.
Hi there, thank you. I have a class tonight on disaster preparedness, so I need to speak now, and that's why, because I am interested in speaking.
Could you give your name and address, please?
Oh, sorry. Okay, my name is Susan Haas, H-A-W-S, like Smamish. And I live at my parents' home, which is 19524 Southeast 24th Place, just down the hill on 24th, almost down to the bottom. So I'm just really interested in encouraging that this city become one where people are look back and say, wow, isn't it great the City Council adopted this strong tree ordinance? And that's why I bought this house, and that's why I chose this apartment. And Smamish is such a leader in the state in doing that, and that's the only reason these trees are still here. And isn't that wonderful? So I'm just really encouraging you to look to your staff for support, but really take the leadership role in adopting a tree retention ordinance that retains existing trees more strongly than is existing now. And to do this now, and to not procrastinate or try to postpone the difficult task of consensus-building to the forestry plan. I really encourage you to just go for it, do it now. Life is short. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, public comment is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I just asked the staff members to follow up with the two citizens. One related to, both of whom are related to development activities and the one related to public works issues.
Is your mic on?
I did ask the staff to follow up on the couple citizen comments, that the one is related to Mary's comments, and the other one is related to the, the development activity on the single lot issue. That's that the public works and the planning staff will be contacting you.
Okay, next on our agenda is item number 12. This is the second reading, public hearing, amending chapters 21A 15, 21A 35, and 23 100, as well as establishing a new chapter of the Smamish Municipal Code pertaining to trees, regulations, and Civil Code compliance. First, Mr. City Manager, I believe you have a staff report?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
We do, Mr. Mayor, and we've been working on this particular ordinance for quite some time. It's been almost a year and a half, I want to say. Council, first planning commission spent a lot of times, and then it came to the council. Council has been spending lots of times on this issue. So I'm going to turn it over to our community development directors to give you a staff report. Jeff?
Good afternoon, Council. Jeff Thomas with Community Development. Kathy Curry, one of our senior planners, is joining at the staff table this afternoon. A very brief staff report, the public hearing on tree regulations was continued to today. And you'll recall, on September 15, council was working off of a table, an 11-by-17 table that had about 30 items on it. Proposed council amendments that were discussed conceptually on September 15, and council directed a number of those items to move forward to today, and for staff to go and craft those conceptual amendments into a semblance of code language, what they would actually look like in draft code. So hopefully you've already found, as you were reviewing your materials for today, an 11-by-17 fold-out table in your packet. That will be the primary document that we'll be working off of, at least initially here, after folks that may wish to speak during the continuing public hearing have a chance to do so. Also included in your packet is an adopting ordinance with a clean copy of the code that would accept all of the amendments, the 18 amendments that you're going to go through today and discuss, and either say yea or nay to. So with that, that really is the staff report for this afternoon. I'll turn it back over to the mayor, and I think the first order of business is to continue the public hearing.
Thank you for reminding me.
Well, wait a minute.
You have a question. Obviously, if you have a question.
I have several questions as we go through this. I would think it might be more meaningful to, we're going to go through this section by section anyway, and if I want clarification on some of the sections, would that be a good time to just ask the questions?
As we go through the 18 items, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So what I'm saying is, if you'll maybe ask for questions first.
Absolutely. When we go through, we'll go through them one by one. Some I don't think we'll spend much time on, others we'll spend more time on.
Perfect. So I'll hold my questions.
You'll have an opportunity.
With the understanding that in addition to any discussion, that we'll get the questions.
When we get to the end of the 18, I will ask for any additional thoughts. Okay, last time I continued the public hearing to today, so I'm going to reopen the public hearing. Do I have a list? Okay. As usual, this is three minutes per person, give your name and address, five minutes for a recognized public organization. First name I have is Susan Prince.
Hi, my name is Susan Prince, and my address is 17518 Northeast 119th Way in Redmond. And I'm an ISA-certified, track-certified arborist for, I've been ISA-certified for almost 20 years, been track-certified for about six. And I work in this area, mostly with developers, and I work in all of municipalities around here. And my concern, and my reason for being here today, is that the codes of each of the municipalities are getting more and more complicated, and they're not based on, many times, on scientific evidence, and because of that, those, those non-factual things are becoming factual. I went ahead and answered some of the questions I think Nancy had on, on even the definitions of drip line that are commonly used in my, in my industry, haven't been quoted correctly. I've made recommendations on the verbiage of the drip line. A significant tree definition that you guys have right now does not include the word "healthy," and it also doesn't include where you're measuring the tree, which in arboriculture, the standard height you measure is at 4.5 feet from the ground in the U.S. So when you just say an 8-inch diameter tree, I can measure that at the, at the root, or I can measure it at the top of the crown. It needs to be specified.
Could you be careful when you're speaking in the microphone? You're kind of fading in and out, and I really want to hear what you have to say.
Not really, not really sure how, I'm nervous, and I'm not sure how this works. Pull it closer is better? Is that better?
Much better.
Okay. Right now, your code says, "A certified arborist is a person that's passed the exam," and then you've added in there, "to have three years of experience in the industry." That really should read as, "That's a qualified individual." A qualified individual is generally a person that's passed the exam, two exams, ISA certification and track certification, and has three years' experience. Those two are not the same. Your, I mean, I can go on and on that. Your landmark, your definitions between your landmark and your heritage trees. The heritage tree is a commonly-used term in arboriculture, which means a tree that has significant either aesthetic value or something that's never used for a 22-inch diameter tree. Some of the municipalities use the term landmark for trees greater than 30 inches. And my concern for you is that, I know the intent is to try to preserve larger trees that are presumably older trees, but the truth of the matter is, is that the largest diameter tree you're going to find is going to be a cottonwood, which is never, should be considered a retention tree, that, because it grows six feet a year. It's the tree that does the most damage in our area for failing. So anyway, I've also, you've used the terminology "cluster," which is not an arboriculture term. You should use the word "grove." So I made a list of just this kind of stuff, and I'll send to you also my concerns about not, not adding the term "healthy trees." I'm working on a project now, and I have photographs I'll send to you, in that I had to count all of the trees there. When that brief windstorm hit, 38 of those trees failed. I have pictures of them that, you know, the developer would have to mitigate. It's become punitive for replanting.
Thank you. If you could, you want to pass your information on to the city clerk, and she can make sure it gets to the right person? Thank you.
Hello again. None of my pictures are from Tamarack. My name's Mary Wikter, and I live at 408-208th Ave., Northeast in Smamish. And I have not been able to read a lot of the tree stuff. I have read the past ordinances and not the new one, but I've sat through several meetings, and what you're doing is very important. It has very high priority. I know it started with an emergency tree, and I think the decisions you make are very important, so I'm glad that you're taking that public input, and I'm glad to be here today to talk. What I did is I just took these pictures right before the meeting. I thought I'd let the trees speak for themselves. So most of you have probably driven down Inglewood Hill Road to the traffic light at East Lake Smamish Parkway. This is a big, older, healthy tree, and I've kind of noticed that it's really started leaning lately, and maybe it's just because I'm watching water so much. But you can see there's cars there, and there's actually two kids running by at the bottom because they just got out of school. It's a big thoroughfare, and that tree's been there forever. Everybody sees it, but it's really starting to lean, not through, I think, the health of the tree, but because water hasn't been managed in the area. And I know it's in Inglewood, and I know there's a moratorium, and I know Inglewood's getting fixed, but I have an idea that the trees are only as good as the foundation they stand on, and if water runoff is affecting those, that also affects. And I don't know how that works in with the tree ordinance. The second picture here I have is from the ravine lot behind me. They're considering putting drainage through from Tamarack. And it's a big, old tree, and about 3/4 of the way up the tree is ivy, which is not native, it's an invasive species. And while I don't know if it kills the tree earlier, I know typically you try to cut those and take them off. And you can see it's over the power line, so I don't know how that ordinance counts that, but if you have trees on your pro- But if you have trees on your property that's going to be developed, and they haven't been maintained well, and they're going to be taken away for free because you haven't maintained them, that just doesn't seem fair to the trees. So if you haven't maintained them, I don't think you should count it the same way. And my final slide, sorry, I'm over my time here, if that's a valid buzzer. Right next to this tree that I showed first, just up the hill on the right side, you probably drive by it every day, is a lot that was cleared quite a while ago. And it was cleared, it was never revegetated, because it wasn't required to be, I guess. And the only thing that grows up is blackberries, which are invasive and noxious, but you can't make people fix them, and developers don't fix them after the land has been cleared. You can see all the trees have been cleared off of it, and that piece of junk's been sitting there for a while. And I don't know when they're going to get to doing trees, but they haven't paid any surface water taxes because there's no building. And my suggestion would be to have the city put impact fees when lots are cleared instead of when they're built, so that this could be handled, and maybe some trees could get planted in the number of years that this is sat vacant and idle. So those are just my pictures from today. I'll pass them around, or give them to the city clerk, or whatever you feel is appropriate. But I just wanted to try to let the trees speak for themselves.
Thank you. Just take them down. Next is Nicola Weiss.
My name is Nicola Weiss, and I live at 1716 211th Way Northeast in Sammamish. My house is just west of Meade Elementary, and one of the things that I love about my house is that at night, I can sometimes hear coyotes howling, and sometimes I'll hear a barn owl, and sometimes in my backyard, I'll see piliated woodpeckers. And this past year, and I suspect over the next few months, the wooded areas around my house have been demolished, and I'll be surprised if I ever see that woodpecker again. The character of this city is changing, and it didn't have to, but the laws allowed it to. I'm here to urge the council to take time to do wildlife analyses in these places. Someone with a clipboard for three or four hours is not going to catch all of the wildlife that live in a wooded area. Maybe a camera set up overnight. Protect wildlife corridors. I live near a ball field, and when it's ball season, there's always an influx of rats. People just don't get all their garbage picked up. And those barn owls and those coyotes, they keep those populations in check. It's great. And when building is going to be done, an eight-foot street tree, while it might be beautiful, does not replace a 50-foot cedar tree or dug fir. It doesn't replace it for the animals that depend on those trees for survival, and they're a part of this ecosystem, too. We don't live here all by ourselves. They're a part of us. Well, that's everything. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Jan Bird.
It's Jan Bird, 3310 221st Avenue Southeast. I haven't used this before, so bear with me, folks. Okay, there we go. Anyway, this is basically a tour of my yard. This is my, my big dug fir is well over 100 feet tall. Sorry, trying to get this to, what's the trick to the, oh, there we go. Another picture of my backyard. On the left, it looks kind of light. That's basically Laurel Hill over there, used to be a forest. And let's see, and there's my big guy on the right. Sorry, this isn't, oh, there we go. It's a little bit lighter back there. That's the new development that just going in on 223rd behind me. It was the old Mike Reed, now it's the Dave Klein property. This is a new development behind me. The brown house is directly behind my neighbor's house, so I'm in one. And this was taken on September 10th. And if you can see the size of the logs, look at the guy next to him, next to the logs. My house shook when these were coming down. It really made me feel rather sick, and that's what we have left behind. So my point is, at every city council meeting, that we don't approve a tree retention ordinance, what you see in this last photo is what's going to continue. I agree with Mr. Yazizi's comments at last council meeting, that writing a permanent tree retention ordinance has been going on for a year. It's now time to finish it. We've known ever since it was in the Planning Commission, the goal was to do the best we could for now. After we have an urban forest plan, we would revisit, make needed revisions to it. So I was very disappointed when, on the September 15th city council meeting, councilpersons Witten and Valdarama voted against extending the meeting beyond 10 o'clock, after councilperson Witten spent a good portion of the meeting commenting on concerns about the ordinance. And there were a lot of good comments made about the ordinance, certainly quite appropriate, but to bring up all these issues and then say, "Oh, well, 10 o'clock, time to go," you need to finish it. So thank you to the rest of the council for getting the job done and getting that part done. And I know it's been grueling, working on the tree ordinance and the call plan at the same time. And I know councilperson Witten wants to have a good ordinance, should like it to be right the first time. However, we've always known, we have too many unknowns at this point to have that perfect ordinance. What point is there to have the perfect ordinance if it took so long, there was very little left to protect? If we wanted unlimited time to craft an ordinance, that should have been done during the recession, and unfortunately, no one had the foresight to do that. So I hope the whole council will work together tonight and make a really good faith effort to get the job done tonight. Nobody on city council wants to have the legacy of delaying the tree ordinance and the city bearing the consequence of that inaction. And on a separate topic on the tree ordinance, I would vote a definite no on allowing one street tree to count as one replacement tree. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Margolise, yeah, or Margolis? Margolis? One of those. Pardon me if I mangled your name. Close. Close, okay, good.
My name is Barry Margolise. My address is 105 South Main Street, Suite 230, Seattle, Washington, 98104. And I'd like to comment on the tree ordinance. We own land on 244th. We have agreements to purchase another four parcels. We intend to submit a plat application for a 25-lot preliminary plat. The tree ordinance here, I think, goes to the issue of an overall concept. And the concept has to be, is where does the city of Sammamish sort of sit on some overall concepts? For example, if I have a flat piece of land, and it has no trees on it, and I'm zoned R4, I can do a certain amount of density on that land after I deduct my proposed area for right-of-way. But if I have a parcel of land, which has a creek in the corner of it, which this parcel does, I now have a 150-foot setback from the creek for a buffer. The way the ordinance is written right now, all the trees that I have in that buffer, I can't count. Why is that? The purpose of the buffer is just to provide a separation from the creek. But many trees in that buffer, all of a sudden, can't count. And do I get any credit for it? Do the trees actually do anything in the buffer? Because if they do something, then the buffer should be reduced, because there's an effect of the trees in terms of some contribution towards the aspect of the buffer. In the city of Redmond, we owned a 17-acre parcel. It had steep slopes on it, it had ravines in it. It was zoned for single-family. Every single tree on that site counted towards the 35% tree retention for that property. The trees on the steep slopes, the trees in the buffers, all counted, and we met city of Redmond's 35% tree retention, tree retention criteria. Here in the city of Sammamish, if you have critical areas, if you have buffers, all of a sudden, those areas come out of, in fact, the area that you can use for density. So in effect, there's a de facto downzoning of your site because of critical areas. In the city of Redmond, the density on the total site counts towards the density that you can create on the land. Now, you would look to do maybe clustering on the property, but it's eligible if you can make a reasonable development work. In the city of Sammamish, it's not eligible at all. I have to ask you, why is that the case? In effect, you're not allowing the zoning that you have on a piece of property to physically be implemented. If you drive the streets, like 228th or 244th, what do you want to see in the future? If you look at Polygon's development over here, what's the big issue with that? The big issue with that is there should be probably about a 15-foot setback from 228th. And in that 15-foot setback, there should have, all of the existing trees should have been retained. New trees of substantial size should be created, so that the main boulevards and the main streets in this city have the aspect of healthy, growing trees and a vibrant tree cover. In the slide we just saw from the neighbor, if I can just take one more second, the issue with that development is she showed a fence, and she showed the whole site cleared. But the fact is, if there had been maybe a 15-foot buffer beside the fence, and the existing trees that were there had been retained, that slide wouldn't have looked anything like that. I recommend that trees in buffers, which are slowly there to be, for protection, all be counted, all be counted towards the tree retention requirement, as exists in the city of Redmond. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. David Hoffman.
Good evening, council members. My name is David Hoffman. I'm here with Master Builders, or on behalf of the Master Builders Association. Address is 335 116th Avenue, Southeast Bellevue. And here, again, to speak on the tree ordinance, of course. Actually, here to speak in favor of the underlying ordinance, and certain amendments under item 17, Exhibit 1, and against certain other amendments. The Planning Commission has spent nearly a year working through call plan language and amendments, and working through the language that you see before you today. The code language before you has been thoroughly debated and discussed. I was present for nearly all of those meetings, as were many of the people in the crowd this evening. This draft ordinance will drive the development community to retain the largest trees on site. That is one of the primary goals that the council and the commission has worked towards through this process. We strongly encourage council members or the council to adopt the following amendments. Amendment 1, in Exhibit 1. Amendment 17A, and that would be the street tree credits, option A, and the language addressing later in that same section, replanting in buffer areas and stormwater facilities. Thank you for your consideration on those. We do have serious concerns over Amendment 6 and Amendment 12. Amendment 6, other jurisdictions that are mentioned in the language there, Issaquah in particular, has a lower retention percentage in single-family zones, 30%, than what is being considered in your ordinance tonight. And their minimum tree density, while they do have a minimum tree density, is actually two significant trees per 5,000-square-foot lot, not four. So present that to you. We have very serious concerns and are opposed to Amendment 6. On Amendment 12, the commission debated this issue at length, and as the previous speaker spoke to, the commission had a very long discussion about the credit in critical area buffers. And the maximum credit that could be given in the underlying ordinance is 25%. We're not asking for full credit for every significant tree in the critical area buffer on site. We're not asking for 50% credit. Both of those options are provided in other jurisdictions, including Redmond, which has a 50% credit for those trees that are in the buffer areas. We're not asking for that. We're asking you to stick with what the commission proposed and has already debated. The underlying ordinance is far more restrictive than the former code was. This is equivalent to a 40% increase in retention on site. So also, there is a very good credit for retaining landmark and heritage trees, and there is a three-for-one and a two-for-one replacement requirement for removing those landmark and heritage trees. This is a big incentive for the development community to maintain those large trees. If that's what you want, your ordinance is already getting you towards that goal. If street trees count for replanting, and they are simultaneously required in the landscaping code, as they currently are, the city will have more trees in the future than the city currently has. Many sites that are lightly forested today, as they're developed, they will end up having a greater and higher tree canopy post-development than they currently do. So as you can imagine, the development community would like credit for those things that we're doing that helps add to the tree canopy of the city, and we'd like you all to recognize that. We can support that outcome. Thank you for your time tonight and over the last year. Strongly encourage your adoption of the code this evening, after what I'm sure will be a thorough debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Hess, you already spoke, so thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in the public hearing? Please go to the podium. Give your name and address.
Eileen Stahl, 21553 Southeast 28th Lane. I'm a member of Friends of Pine Lake. I wanted to thank the council, first of all, for all the hard work and sticking your neck out and coming up with a really good tree ordinance here. It's wonderful. And given the comments of the two gentlemen that spoke before me, I want to say that the tree ordinance, as written, not counting the trees in the buffer toward tree retention, is absolutely necessary, and it's an acknowledgement of the fact that we are on a plateau. We live on a plateau, and whatever stormwater or whatever retention we have up on our plateau protects our streams, protects Lake Sammamish, protects properties from stormwater. It retains the aesthetics in our city, and it's good for the environment and for wildlife. And I think that it's a wonderful ordinance, and I encourage you to pass it tonight, and I really like the way you've retained trees in our city through this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, for what I actually came to talk about. Karen Moran, 20705 Southeast Third Way. In reading through the ordinance, one of the things I didn't see in here, which I have, anybody who knows where I live have great concerns about, is the amount of what I consider to be scrap trees. Another gentleman talked about the cottonwoods, and then talking about, you know, some of the just garbage trees.
Karen, would you repeat the sentence that you said? You had significant concerns about what kind of trees? You turned your face.
Scrap trees.
Okay. Yeah, we've got a lot of those.
We do have a lot of those, and they're dangerous to anything surrounding them, whether they be houses, or fences, or anything like that. So I'm not seeing a whole lot in here regarding how we could credit people for, frankly, I don't care if they remove those, if they're going to put in a maple, or if they're going to put in something that is actually a good, strong tree. The other concern I have is, keeping that in mind, and then this is where you guys have to do your job, is, again, where we live, and many of you have seen my pictures of the bear that comes and visits us every week, and the coyote who lives in the backyard, and the raccoons on the deck. I'm really getting concerned about the habitat issues and the fact that what used to be every so often we had these animals is now constant. And that just tells me the habitat's getting smaller and smaller and smaller, and so we really need to protect that.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one else? Then I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will move on to item number 12 in general. We have a list of exhibits. What I'm going to do is, is we'll start from the top and work our way down. Where appropriate, staff will make a preliminary statement about each issue, and I think we can probably get through some of these fairly quickly. Others will take a little more conversation. But, so let's just start, there are only 18. So let's start at item number 1. So, let's start at item number 1. And we did have someone talk about the drip line issue. Jeff, do you want to make a comment on that issue first?
Certainly. Item number 1, the definition of drip line. I believe it was Councilmember Jaren, a few meetings ago, that requested that definition to be included in city code. Staff researched a number of jurisdictions. The definition of drip line was very similar across compared jurisdictions. We looked at, this definition is almost word-for-word based on what's codified with the city of Redmond currently. And we felt that was a good base definition of drip line to work from. So, that's what, at council's direction to include this definition. This is what staff has proposed language to include.
Anybody got any issues with this? Councilmember Jaren.
Thank you. I don't have an issue with the drip line. I kind of figured that was the definition, but what I have an issue with is what we're using the drip line for. Yesterday, I went out to Ebray Creek Park and measured the drip line of one of the large trees there. And basically, it's a 30-foot radius or 60 feet across. And if you go to a cottonwood, I'm not sure what the drip line is on a cottonwood, but it's enormous. And so, I'm trying to visualize developing a lot and keeping some of these heritage trees like a cottonwood. And underneath, we're telling them, you can't touch the land inside the drip line, and in fact, I think five feet out of it, you have to fence that off. You may end up fencing off your whole lot. So, and then later in our discussion, we talk about amending the soil. Well, if you either have to leave it alone, or if you're going to amend it, then you're disturbing the area inside the drip line. So, I think we're going to have to clarify that in our discussion. I was struck by the arborist who talked about scientific discussion and code, perhaps digressing from what is scientific evidence and actually common sense. So, if you try to visualize an ordinance where you're keeping all these significant and heritage trees, even though we created a new definition for heritage, you're going to find that when you actually develop the lot, it's going to be either impractical to do any landscaping or the trees themselves may come down in the next storm because they've been exposed by taking out some of them. So that's just one of the concerns I have as we go along.
First of all, are you okay with the definition?
Yeah, I'm okay with the definition.
Jeff, you want to discuss the other issue?
Well, Councilmember Jaren just brought up one of the public commenters. I believe it was Ms. Prince, the first lady who spoke this afternoon. And it might be helpful for council. I can quickly run through, staff took notes on what her comments were. She spoke to a number of different terms and definitions. I'd be happy to just quickly run through a staff response to those right now because I think it might help curtail some of the questions that may come up from council.
Sure.
So, there were a number of terms. So drip line was the first one that came up. I think we've just discussed that, where the definition, the foundation of that definition came from. Also, it was raised that there was no measurement prescribed in our code for where the tree gets measured from, its size, when you're looking at it. Our code actually does define DBH, diameter, breast height, and it's defined in code already as being at 54 inches above grade. So our code does cover that. The definition of certified arborist, we extracted a definition for certified arborist based on the ISA website, the International Society of Arboriculture. So we're, staff was very comfortable with that definition, and we also did look at other codes along the way. Again, we feel comfortable, we're very similar in definition. Heritage tree is already defined in our code. That was predefined before any of this work started. We did add a definition of landmark tree, and the commenter was absolutely correct. The intent of the Planning Commission was to add a description of a larger base-sized tree than a heritage tree. So that's where the conversation and the recommendation from Planning Commission came from. I think that was actually the list we had. Oh, and then, I'm sorry, the last item that was brought up in regards to definitions was cluster versus recommended term from the commenter of using the term grove instead of cluster. We actually got onto cluster because we removed the phrase "stand of trees" in an attempt to, from a legal concern, actually, from our legal council. So we got rid of stand and went to cluster. But if certainly there's, if grove is a better term, that's something I, we did look it up quickly here, sitting at the table. I don't think we have a problem with that.
Can we just assume that they'll find the right definition or right term? We okay with grove if that's the right term?
Just want to comment that, to me, a grove is a lot bigger than a cluster.
Well...
My mother had a grove, which was basically about an acre in size. And a cluster of trees is a grouping of, you know, some number of trees, much smaller than that.
My mother's definition. And just one more additional comment. Sorry, bringing it full circle back to drip line. Just friendly reminder to council, often the drip line, we will have overlap in the drip lines too, so it's not a one-for-one cumulative effect if we add up all the drip lines and then draw the circles. So, if that's helpful for Councilmember Jaren's comment.
Councilmember Jaren, again?
Just a question, Jeff. You said that, I have my...
But you were telling me earlier you wanted to...
Go ahead, go ahead.
In terms of drip line, what we've done with the vegetation strip for Pine Lake, for example, in front of the lake is, say that at a minimum, it's a minimum of X feet to be used or 25%, whichever is greater. I think you might, one response you might do if you're concerned about the drip line preventing any maintenance area for actual yard and whatever they want to do is to give them some kind of a guaranteed percentage or some, something that said, even if there's a drip line, no matter what else is required, you get to use your yard as a yard for maybe a fourth of it or whatever it is. Or if it's a lot under a certain size, like a 4,000-square-foot lot, maybe there should be no drip line requirements or...
Yeah, I don't know. Is that a new?
Yeah.
I'm lost.
So, one staff response on that. I think when we talk about protecting the drip line, the code really looks to that and also protecting it during construction activities and no disturbance area so that we want to make sure that we don't have heavy equipment. There's a great example, speaking of Redmond, just on the parkways you're headed out to 202, where if you just, they built a big retaining wall now along the parkway. And if you just look up, those drip lines of those trees were really compromised during the summer season when there were some clearing and grubbing activity and grading activity taking place. Protecting five feet out from the drip line during site development activities is really important, and we've found ample amounts of literature... Yeah, that's different. And then getting to Councilmember Witten's comment about, you know, can the kids run and play under the drip lines once, you know, the construction activities are over with? So the code really speaks to while the site is under construction, protecting during those type of activities.
No, it's not. The protection area isn't long-term, the drip line protection.
In terms of fencing them, like having your fence up and so forth, that's not long-term. That's during the construction activities to protect from those activities.
Can they landscape under it, long-term, after construction?
In terms of planting or in terms of using it as passive recreation area, yeah. There's, we don't, that would be a really tough enforcement business for staff to get into that, so.
Are we okay with that, then?
Yeah, I feel much better hearing that explanation. The one point I was going to make is on, you said you've added a definition of landmark tree, I think.
Correct.
And heritage tree was already in, but the definition of heritage tree is somewhere else in the code. I couldn't, I couldn't find it in the, at the same location where the landmark definition is.
It should be under 13... Well, it's in the definition section, yeah. It should be under 15, 1331, I believe. So we can double-check that for you, though.
Can you check that?
Sure, yeah.
Exhibit 2, you have 21A15, 1332, tree landmark. You have the definition of landmark. And then 33 is the definition of significant.
Right. And so landmark is a new definition, just like drip line and certified arborist. So that's why those are being included, because it's actually amending the code. And then, per council's direction on September 15th, there was a request to amend the existing significant tree definition. So then, we've obviously then included that to include the proposed amendment from council.
Okay, I was just looking at the amendment then.
Kathy's going to double-check the exact location of the heritage tree, but I'm pretty sure it's in the 21A15, 1331. We'll verify that for you.
Okay, can we move to item 3? I think we've covered items 1 and 2.
Oh, 2, I have a comment on 2.
One more? Okay, go ahead.
And 2, I would like to add to the definition of a significant tree, the word "healthy." And "healthy," "non-invasive" and "native." Or maybe "not native."
Isn't that the same thing?
No, "non..."
Well, "non-invasive" is not the same as "non-native."
Right, "non-invasive" is like bamboo and holly, English holly.
That's invasive as heck.
Of course, yeah.
That's why I said that.
No, I've been trying to grow holly for 20 years in my yard, and it won't grow, so...
If Kathy, I'll deliver them with the roots on.
I keep planting new stuff from everybody, and it doesn't grow.
Okay, hold on, hold on, let's...
I have so much holly growing everywhere, and it's very painful to walk into it. It's really invasive when you have a large forested area.
Okay, so what is your, what is your main comment on item number 2? I want to get back to what you were looking for.
I'm looking to add the words. I mean, I have a forest of trees that are getting on to 100 years now. And the Douglas in particular are suffering from probably what they call root rot, something in the soil that is killing, unfortunately, even the very mature ones. Usually, they just strike the babies. That's why I said I think "healthy" is really important. I don't think, since you have a right to take down at least some trees, if they're, at a certain point, the unhealthy, unhealthy tree becomes a danger tree. I think you shouldn't include non-healthy trees in the definition of what has to be preserved or replaced. And secondly, I think you really do want to strike out the, and not include invasives in, in, to exclude, you want to exclude invasives from being counted because you want to, you want to take the invasive.
Are you saying invasive or non-native?
Well, I said "non-invasive." Three, "healthy," "non-invasive," and "native." Now, "native" might not be a good one, that's a separate discussion. But the invasives, like the holly, just are taking over the forest. They're nuisance trees, and everybody is urging you in all the literature to remove the invasive trees.
So Nancy, would you take on a very healthy white pine that will say 50 feet high?
Well, that's native.
No, it's not, not native to the northwest.
Well, I said "native" is a separate discussion, but I said invasive...
Take native.
Off the...
Okay, so take... Healthy and non-invasive, because you want to remove the invasive.
Are we okay with healthy and non-invasive?
What does staff have to say about it?
I do have a question on that as well.
So, to the extent of the discussions taking place thus far regarding this, we're fine with that? That matches our practice currently, anyway. So that's, when we go to Section 230 of the new regulations, 230 speaks to exemptions. And we're going to have a quick discussion about that, anyway, in regards to imminent danger, unhealthy trees. When we have a development proposal that comes in with an arborist report, the consulting arborist working for an applicant will identify trees that are unhealthy and the reasons why. That's part of their work that they do. We review that, and those are trees that, again, in our current practice, we're striking those as it is. So Councilmember Witten's comment, I think, is consistent with our practice.
Okay, so we're okay with item number 2 as amended?
Yep.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Councilman, or Deputy Mayor Huckabee, you have a question?
And when we get to retention, I really wanted to talk about the concept of "healthy" because I very definitely support it. On the other hand, my neighborhood is very subject, like you are, trees with root rot. And we were just out walking the other day, and my neighbors have taken down four trees that are, they were on the property when they purchased the property back in 1980. They're up by the street. You can see when the trees were taken down, they are, there's nothing in the center. It's just complete root rot. Those trees are not in danger of falling on the house or falling on anybody. I have some question about, because I don't understand how long these trees might survive, and do we really want to strip some of these lots bare? Because root rot is something that is very pervasive in the city. Beaver Lake has it, and many developments have it. If we don't let some of those trees stand, at least for the next 20 or 30 years, and then replace them at that point, do we end up taking down more trees than we want? That's the only question.
The comment I have is on mine, in a forest. Every big tree that comes down takes down others because there's no, they can't fall in any direction without. And I'm really concerned about one that's leaning like this, and I don't, I suppose we could have a professional come in and log it. Well, even there, I would be very concerned about the logger going up the tree, it's so bent. But it's going to take down at least four to five trees that look healthy.
I understand that, but when you have trees that are standing there, as I mentioned in the example, where they're at the far end of the property, they're not, they might fall on the street at some point, but they aren't in any imminent danger. Do we really, would we really want to have the developer remove those trees 25 years ago and not get the benefit of having those trees in place for this last 25 years? They're now being taken down and replaced. So I want to be, maybe an arborist can help us through that process when you've talked about that. But I think if we just focus on taking down every unhealthy tree, we're going to end up decimating our tree canopy much more than we...
I actually have a situation where there's a cedar that one arborist told me, well, it's got root rot, and, you know, you can see that here. And then another arborist, who actually turned out to be a little more qualified, said, "Yeah, there's a start of root rot, but this tree will last another 30 years. It's not going to fall down unless we have a hurricane."
So, Mayor, that's a really good point. So when we do receive information in from a consulting arborist working for a property owner or an applicant, as you're well aware, one change that we've made this year with our development review process is the city now has an ISA-certified arborist on-call representing the city for a third-party peer review. And we are utilizing that consulting arborist on the city's behalf, just like, you know, we have Kathy, but then we also have an on-call wetland scientist as well in the same type of capacity to start to, you know, we're reviewing these types of things. And we have had this exact conversation come up a couple of times this year already, where we have, you know, a consulting arborist from the outside saying this tree's unhealthy, and we have our own arborist saying that exact case.
Well, I figured out that the first guy was trying to sell log cutting.
Well, yeah, and, yeah.
Maybe one solution, so we can move on, is to leave it up to staff to define "healthy" based on an arborist's report.
Subject to our arborist's report or something like that.
Sounds good.
Are we okay with that?
And I think something that might make the ordinance pass more quickly is, we have it in lots of ordinances where we give staff discretion to adopt regulations, defining terms, or doing whatever is necessary for its appropriate implementation.
Councilmember O'Dell, you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. I'm probably the only one among the seven of us who seriously considered a career forester at one point. And I still have a whole shelf of tree books in my personal library. The, I think, having a healthy tree, I mean, I agree with whoever said that a tree can have a start of root rot and still be there for 30 years. I completely agree with that. I think elsewhere in the wording that we're dealing with here, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, there's wording about a danger tree or imminent danger as being grounds for removal. Now, if you have a tree that's starting to show signs of becoming elderly, then perhaps, you know, the best thing to do is keep an eye on it.
Well, we do have other clauses that go to hazards and that sort of thing.
And we're going to get to that on the next page, once we move a few items down.
All right, so include the word "healthy." Now, I mean, if you include "healthy."
Well, if I give staff the discretion based on an arborist's report...
To define it.
To define it, because then it's flexible. I mean, I have a tree that's completely dead with root rot. with root rot. Every branch, it doesn't have one green little needle on it.
Okay, let's try to sum up here. I think we're okay, are we okay with, as a group, with having some discretion on the level of healthiness of a tree?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to item number three. I think we did talk about that a little. Do we have to talk about that some more?
No.
We okay?
So then, just to clarify then, we did have a very brief discussion about grove versus cluster. Staff's comfortable with cluster, so.
And then, I have one on three. Item D.
Item D?
Yes, I'd like to create a new subsection that would be on a higher priority. Significant trees providing relief from identified environmental impacts. I think that's a lot more important than off-site screening.
Well, they're both in there.
I know, but it's the order of priority.
We could make one D and one E and then move everything down if that's-
Sure.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
So we, so just to clarify, so we'll split D. So the existing, the existing D will move down to E and we'll create a new D that will essentially say significant trees, as councilmember Witten said, identified from environmental impacts.
Providing relief from identified-
Providing relief from.
And half a D right now.
Yeah, so move what you move down, we'll delete that and put it into its-
That's a, more of a cosmetic, but it's, that's good. All right, anything else there? So let's move on to item number four. Jeff, you want to get us started on this one?
Yeah, item number four is, actually, it was pretty straightforward. It was a good suggestion from councilmember Witten in regards to adding some language about careful scrutiny of the larger trees and trees near critical areas and their buffers. So in the professional evaluation section, 220, we added a new component there, essentially saying just that, requiring the written evaluation of significant trees within or near environmentally critical areas and associated buffers. The, we also felt that the 1A there was a little bit all-encompassing, so we didn't specifically note out the landmark and heritage trees, but that certainly, if council would so desire, we can spell that out a little bit clearer in the 1A as well.
Any thoughts?
I have one additional I'd like to make.
Actually, councilmember Witten, are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
So it's councilmember Jaren and then Odell.
Thank you. I have a little bit of a problem here. I'm trying to understand a professional evaluation in determining whether a tree removal permit, but then what councilmember Witten is providing is, provide a written evaluation of significant trees within or near environmentally critical areas and associated buffers. Well, you can't remove the significant trees within the environmental critical area or buffer, so why have an evaluation of them?
You mean versus like identification?
For what purpose? I guess I'm confused.
I mean, an evaluation is looking at each tree to see how healthy it is.
That's, that's an expensive proposition.
Yeah. Why are you having to evaluate the trees in the critical area if you're not going to do anything with them? That's the question I have.
But say near perhaps is okay, the trees that are not in the buffer and not in the critical area.
Okay, but.
Yeah. Should we just draw a line through the, just the within, since that would be a tremendous expense?
Within or.
But then, secret trees near environmentally critical areas associated buffers.
Yeah, so that means outside them.
Outside them.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
You okay?
And again, you might want discretion for the near because it's a very subjective term, as defined by staff or something, as determined by staff.
But if you're looking at A, you're looking at the viability of all the trees on the site. This is just another subset.
Councilmember Odell, you're next.
So I like the idea of having a tree protection plan prepared by a certified arborist, but I would like to add the words approved by the city. That way, we don't have some fly-by-night guy come walking in the door complaining he's, contending he's a certified-
So you mean the arborist is approved by the city?
The arborist is approved by the city. And I'd also like to open it up to the city staff biologist as well. They feel comfortable.
Have to hire a new additional.
So a quick staff, a quick staff response, we do like our certified biologists we have on staff, that's, oh, she's here, wait.
Now, Jeff, what I'm getting at is, I know we have our list, but if someone walked, as this is written right now, some other arborist could walk in, there was somebody claiming to be one, with a report that they've written up. But it's, they're not on our list, but the way this is written, we'd have to prove it.
So, councilmember Odell, if I do understand what you're suggesting here, I don't, I would look to our legal counsel to speak towards, I don't believe we have the ability to tell people who they can and can't hire. So if someone does hire an ISA certified arborist, we do have a way of validating that, just like we do with wetland scientists and engineers and other building code professionals. If they hire one, they hire one. I believe the mechanism that we have in play right now to help mitigate what you're suggesting could happen is that we also have our own ISA certified arborist on call to be able to do peer review of that work.
I agree with Jeff. The way that the council can best regulate this is, as the council has done, with the definition of certified arborist. So that if an applicant brings a consultant who satisfies that definition, then he's satisfied, the applicant is satisfied city code. More to councilmember Odell's point, if you're worried about some fly-by-night arborist, and I don't know that we've had that experience here, you can tighten up that definition. You know, you can add, say, five years' experience instead of three, as it currently reads, or something like that. But if an applicant brings in a consultant, and that consultant satisfies the definition, in this case of certified arborist that this council's adopted, we're going to go with that consultant.
Okay. Otherwise, we're okay then with, with any changes? The slight change we made to striking one word from item number four. Let's move on to item number five. Any got, anybody got a problem with imminent danger as opposed to threat?
And we just had imminent danger is already defined in our code. It's actually defined in chapter 16 through our adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code. And imminent danger is defined as a condition which could cause serious or life-threatening injury or death at any time.
And that could be anything, whether it's the health of the tree, or-
Yep.
You got hit by lightning and now it's leaning, or whatever it is.
Yep.
Wind, okay.
I have.
Councilmember Jaren?
Well, going to the question, question of the definition, if it is in the, in the code someplace, is it obvious to a person when he reads imminent danger, do we have a glossary someplace, or can you put a reference in there for a definition?
Yeah, we could certainly put a reference in, because it would be to a specific section of code in the municipal code, would be the reference.
Councilmember Witten?
Is there any reason, this question for staff, that the word danger versus threat should be more consistent with the concept of hazardous dead or otherwise dangerous trees expressed in point 240, 1E? It just seems to me from a logical standpoint, consistency, that you used a different reference point now. And maybe you meant to, that might be fine, but.
Yep. So we have hazard tree already defined in code as well. So that's a pre-existing definition. So I believe in, in 241E, councilmember Witten, the section you referenced, it's specifically speaking to trees, whereas in the exemptions in 230, it's speaking to-
Once it can be removed without a permit.
Yes, exactly. So, and again, the council had requested we define imminent threat, and rather than go and create yet another new definition, already having imminent danger defined, our legal counsel recommended we, we go with the existing definition. It seemed to fit the bill, so.
Okay, are we done with this one?
Nope.
Councilmember, actually, yeah, okay, I have councilmember Odell.
Thank you. On one C on this, I'm curious about the reference to noxious weeds, to contain noxious weeds. Why would you have to remove a tree to contain noxious weeds?
So, yeah, and this actually came up with the planning commission. I believe someone, maybe in not-so-direct terms, spoke at the public hearing earlier this afternoon regarding this. And it was the tree, the example, I forget who brought it up, but it was the example, the tree with the ivy that was kind of growing up around, choking the tree and does damage to it. That was the intent of that term.
You cut down the whole tree because it's covered with ivy?
If, if, if there is an example that comes up where the tree is damaged to the point from, from that invasive taking it over, that is a possibility, so.
You physically girdle the ivy at the base of the tree, it will die.
I understand that. What I'm, I think what we're talking about is examples where that type of maintenance is not done, so the situation gets out of control essentially and then harms the health of the tree.
I guess it's the tree that offers imminent danger as opposed to the tree that's healthy enough not to.
Recover.
Councilmember Huckabee?
Yeah, I'm a wee bit concerned about us amateur gardeners that may not understand the difference. And by way of a story, when we moved here, we have a green belt behind us. Every one of the trees was just filled with ivy, riddled with it. And I spent two years pulling out, killing the ivy, girdling the tree and going out and continuing to pull it out. All of those trees have survived. We've been here 30 years. So who's to determine whether that tree is damaged to the point where, let's just take all the trees down, versus let's do multiple maintenance on that tree to keep it going? And so I get a little bit concerned when there's, when we're making, it's exempt from being removed. Is there some path that we can follow, or some concept that we can follow, where someone would have to at least bring it to the city's attention, or they'd have to contact a certified arborist to get a real good sense of whether this tree, or like we had, it was probably 30 trees that are sitting there in the green belt, that all needed pretty significant work over a couple of years to make sure they would live?
Right. So a couple of thoughts on that. The first one is, the, the after-the-fact documentation for these exemptions is required. So if there certainly was unlawful tree removal, that someone went ahead and claimed an exemption for, that proved to be invalid, then, you know, that kicks enforcement provisions at that point. So that'd be one thought. The second thought is, maybe to, to maybe help clean this one C up a little bit, we could look at just simply framing that language as routine maintenance of any significant tree that presents an imminent danger, and just sticking with our imminent, our all-encompassing imminent danger term that would incorporate any vegetative matters like that, or a potential fire hazard, and we just keep the language nice and simple. Council may want to consider-
Is everybody okay with that idea?
Yeah.
Well, I was confused by reading that anyway. The way I read it is routine maintenance of any significant tree necessary to contain noxious weeds doesn't require a permit. And that seemed like a fair statement.
Yeah.
I'd just soon be able to remove the ivy without a permit.
Me too.
Now, but that's saying something different than that, the way I read it? Is that saying that you can cut the tree down if it's got ivy on it?
Forget our people planting-
It says routine maintenance of any significant tree. I don't think that means cut it down.
No, I didn't think so either.
No, so, so by cleaning that language up, it, the removal is in A, right?
Correct.
So then the C is the routine maintenance, so then we can just condense that language down to just go straight to-
That means remove the ivy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's what it is.
Be able to routinely maintain a tree for any reason?
I agree.
I mean, I thought this is in the danger section, so I don't think it even fits.
Well, I think most people, if they have a grove of trees in their bag, don't necessarily go back and maintain them on an annual basis. But if they see ivy, if ivy is obviously taking over, then that's obviously a reason to-
But a routine maintenance should be exempt. If you're, if I want to prune a tree with a dead branch, I mean, I, that's, routine maintenance is routine. It should be exempt without any need to be, have a purpose for it.
So, so actually, staff will revise its previous comment. The deeper we go into this, the more sensible it becomes that we should just strike C, because we do address maintenance elsewhere in the code, so.
Good. Are you striking C?
Yes.
A little confusing.
Thank you.
Okay, then, if we're done with imminent threat or imminent danger, let's move on to-
Minimum tree.
Item six.
Item six was in a possible amendment that you discussed on the 15th, and it would add a minimum tree density requirement to the code, which currently does not exist. So the planning commission did not make any such recommendations. They did discuss it and did not elect to include that in their recommendations to you. So what you see in the right-hand column here is all new language, hence in red and underlined. And it would propose to add a minimum tree density per lot, as you see in the, broken into three categories, the low-density R zones, the higher-density R zones, and then the O in the business zones. The challenge with this, I think, is twofold from staff's perspective. One is enforcing this requirement could prove to be challenging over time. The other challenge with this could be more of an unintended consequence from the perspective of smaller type lots being challenged with maintaining this tree density. We saw city manager cringes every time this example comes up, but we did have a plot alteration earlier this year where that was the exact challenge of locating trees on new lots. And there was concern about those trees being successful-
Between the houses and-
Yeah.
In a lot of inappropriate places.
Yeah. So, a couple of thoughts from staff on that. I think with the other regulations in play, this might be an appropriate subject of discussion in an urban forestry management planning effort to look at here in 2016 and 2017.
Councilmember Jaren?
Thank you. I agree. I see all sorts of unintended consequences with this. And it comments about the Issaquah, and I'm thinking about Issaquah Highlands, and there are lots in Issaquah Highlands that don't have any trees.
Mm-hmm.
And so I wonder if that's excluded under the development agreement in the Issaquah Highlands, if they have a city ordinance which requires trees, because clearly, they're not requiring them up there. And quite frankly, if you have view lots, and you require trees on the lot below you, 10 years from now, all of a sudden, you've lost your view. This has happened in Bellevue, for example. There were examples where a citizen lost basically a half a million or a million dollars of value in his lot after 10 years because the view disappeared.
Right.
Well, we're doing the same thing, actually. So I'm actually opposed to this, and I would like to bring it up maybe in the urban forestry discussion.
Uh. Deputy Mayor, oh, actually, councilmember Witten. Did you want to make a comment first on what Don said?
I would, just briefly. I apologize, I can't speak specifically to the Issaquah Highlands and what terms they were or not working under, but the, you are correct. There is the definite potential for that type of challenging type situation to come up, so.
Councilmember Witten?
First of all, view lots are usually on slopes where trees perform the most important function. And I would think a developer who was trying to sell view lots as view lots would not be planting trees that were going to get above a certain height. Second-
Secondly, I think for the purposes of minimum tree retention, what caused me to, to be concerned about this was a very, very ugly development off of 32nd where there's not one tree on these small lots with houses. When I lived in Seattle, when we first got here in the 70s, we were on a 5,000-square-foot lot, and I counted 18 trees. The house had a footprint of 1,200 square feet. It was, it was beautiful, and one of the trees was in particular a spectacular native dogwood. You can find trees that fit, and I do think for this purpose landscaping should be counted. So, any trees they plant as part of the landscaping, I think, should be given credit under, for anything that you put here. But I think when you let a whole development go in with naked lots, just grass, and, and build the house to the maximum, you're really changing the character of the city. So, maybe you'd want to require it on, through R6, at least at a minimum, and maybe this is too many. I kind of like the idea of the Issaquah reference where they had two, two per 5,000 square feet, but not to have one tree in a whole development, except for the street trees, was really just, at least that I could see and identify as part of that development, was, it lost everything that you think of as being part of Sammamish. So, I think you need to consider, and landscape trees are the individual ones, they can be short trees, they can be squat trees, they could be a tulip tree. I mean, they, they don't have to be the coniferous trees that you find on, down on the main streets in the larger lots left, but I think having something, maybe it should be a landscaping requirement, but I, I do think having some trees onsite, otherwise, you're just raping the land. It looks like, it looks like the camp property where they've cleared everything except for the very back, and you don't realize it's part of the development. So, I, I really feel it's part of the character of Sammamish.
Deputy Mayor Huckabee?
Jeff wanted to make a comment, too.
I'm not in favor of this. I, I do think I'd like to leave this for the urban forestry at this point in time. I think under that conversation, we'll have a more robust conversation about tree cover, where our tree cover should be located, and how we address that both in developments and in replacement planting, whether onsite or offsite. So, my preference would be to just strike this and look at next year and how that robust discussion about our tree canopy cover.
Councilmember Keller?
Quite frankly, I was just going to really comment on the replacement. I, I think this should probably wait for the urban forestry, but having a minimum, it should be a discussion that they talk about, but they might want to actually identify, again, as we talk about receiving zones other than the minimum, so if the lot is too small, they can't put a viable tree on that lot that they would have an option, but it might, if, if the plan is done correctly, it might encourage somebody that has a smaller lot to do what Councilmember Whitten is suggesting, that they would put a tree on that lot.
Councilmember Odell?
I have R4 lot, but I only have three significant trees, and as I read this, I would be required to essentially plant a fourth one. So, I have a concern about that. The major concerns I have, though, as we get into the smaller-sized properties, it's really difficult to make this work. I mean, we saw that in the plat that was mentioned earlier, where they put trees where no tree should go. So, my suggestion would be that we retain the R1, R4, and R6 requirement, but not the, the other two sections on this. And on the R6, we might require maybe two trees instead of four.
I would concur with it.
And leave the rest of it to the for, the urban forestry. Councilmember Valderrama?
Yeah, no, I was about to make the same recommendation, is if we could, for the R1, R4, R6, look at, similar to what Issaquah has on the two significant trees, just to make sure they're, they're not there, and postpone everything else for the urban forestry management plan where we can have a fuller discussion, and even then, might be able to look at other cities as benchmarks to see what are their ordinance, because right now, we're only playing with one that was given to us, and then, and so, even then, I'm hesitant with just one benchmark, but for right now, I would support the two trees.
Yeah, I would support two.
Councilmember Jaren?
Thank you. Just to clarify with Tom, if you're going to replace, adding one more significant tree, if you're going to replace it with three-inch trees, you actually have to add four more.
I, I saw that.
As footnote number two points out.
His grandmother will be proud of him.
Then I have a question for Jeff. Jeff, if a, a new homeowners association is put together, which says that downhill lots shall not allow the trees above a certain height, does that take precedent over city ordinance?
Private covenants taking precedence over city code, so the city, and again, Mike might want to jump in here, but the city's responsible for applying city code, and, you know, at least in my experience, is private covenants, if there's a dispute over private covenants, it's become a civil-type matter, but I, Mike might want to jump in, so.
Yeah, that's almost always the case.
Mike is your mic.
It is now, I think. Yes, that's almost always the case. Homeowner associations or any other private property owner can record a private covenant that's more restrictive than city code, and in that case, it would control, certainly a private covenant that purports to violate city code would not be valid.
Unless it's pre-existing.
This might violate city code.
Unless it's pre-existing, right, so. We, we just have to see the, the hypothetical covenant that is...
So, maybe the covenant could say, shall not plant trees which become significant but are higher than a certain height.
No trees that become significant.
That's a bad question that I had, and I'm glad you asked that, because I had friends that purchased on a lot above the Sammamish Trail over in the shoreline area, and before they purchased and built their home, they had the, entered into a negotiation with the property owner below and had the property on their deed that they would not plant trees over a certain size. Now, we're talking about significant trees, so we're talking about large trees. So, if I enter into a negotiation with a neighbor and say, and they are willing to accept a fee for not being able to plant a tree that will grow up and, and damage my view, how does this interact with that? It seems like it would be a violation of the code that we have.
It, it's difficult to answer the hypotheticals.
I understand that, but I, I think, you know, when you have, especially on view property, if people are able to enter into a negotiation with their neighbors, and you've got a willing buyer and a willing seller that's willing to agree to reduce the number of trees that they'll put on their property so that they don't spoil the view of the uphill owners, I'm not sure I want something in city code that says, no, you can't do that.
Okay. We've got two options here, I think, that before us that we've kind of discussed. One is to strike the tree density requirement altogether. The other one was a compromise position to include R1 and R4, presumably four significant trees, R6 at two, but we also had an additional complication that there, in terms of the size of the trees and, and what you would have to replant or plant.
I, I suggest that any landscaping tree would be sufficient.
We'll add that to the, to the potential revision. So, I guess at the first, do we have a, hands on those who would like to defer this to the forestry discussion?
How's the mayor voting?
Mayor is making up his mind. I, I really have to agree with, with, with staffs that there's a lot of unintended consequences here that are not necessarily good ones, and I do think this is something we need to look at, at the, at the forestry level next year, so I'm going to agree with the majority.
And we will put that on the bucket list for that scope of work.
Mr. Mayor, just as a comment, we have a whole bunch of permits that are in the pipeline now. If we wait a year or two, we're going to lose those lots.
Well, if they're in the pipeline, they're already grandfathered.
No, that's basically, but that's basically why I came up with the compromise on striking the more densely populated ones, and also reducing the requirement for R6 from four to two.
You also mentioned unintended consequences, which you were concerned about.
I was concerned about the requirement to replant. Now, perhaps we could revise that, too.
Well, I mean... So, to, I'm sorry. Would you like? To Councilmember Odell's comment he just made, I think it, it, it might behoove us to, to table your thought on that until we get to item eight on this table, because I think the conversation for item eight will, will perhaps answer some of that for you, which is the removal limits that we had in extensive discussion about on September 15th.
Okay, well, let's, since we do, we do, we do have some conflicting information here, let's table this discussion until we look at item eight, I believe?
Yep.
Okay, in the meantime, let's look at item seven. Actually, no, no, let's, well, those are both removal standards, so let's look at item seven.
Item, item seven, it seems like a lot of red ink there, but it's, it's actually just cleaning up, this was working with legal and cleaning up the term existing lot. We already have lot defined in our code in 21A, so the strike-throughs here are really to just, again, utilize an existing term that we already have defined to make it clear in the code what we're talking about.
Are we okay with that?
I just want to make a clarification comment. I'm assuming you would carry this through your discussion into eight, nine, and so on, where you use the word lot?
Yes, so, and that's, that's one of the challenges, Councilmember, when we went through and created this table, is that it definitely will carry through. It's, we were trying to show, as necessary, we're trying to show these proposed amendments in isolation, kind of in a test tube, so we didn't necessarily carry all those changes through, but you're right, in the final version of the code, this carries through everywhere.
I have two questions, and just for clarification. A lot, as, as you've defined it here by reference to code, refers to a zone, separate zone lot, whether or not it has a house on it, whether or not it's been developed?
Correct.
Okay.
Everybody now okay with item number seven? Eight, then? Let's also remember how that affects item six.
Oh, item eight, again, this was the focus of some significant discussion on the 15th. What you see in the strike-through in the right-hand column was a two-row table that essentially staff, or rather, the Planning Commission proposed, in kind of breaking the size threshold at half an acre, up or down, and council was clear, they wanted staff to come back with something more robust than that. So, what we've dropped in here is a five-row table that, that splits out lot size using the quarter, the half, the one and the, the two, and two-plus acres. So, a couple of other changes that occurred. Initially, the Planning Commission's recommendations were metering tree removal on an annual, but then a rolling five-year basis. Council directed they wanted to see a, a 10-year rolling basis instead of five, so that's been included in the table, the far-right column. And then, in addition to that, the final change was the second column from the left, and this was, this column was intended to, to kind of re-cobrate the, the lots that had, it's kind of a counteracting percentage removal to the cumulative removal every 10 years. So, on your, in front of you, we left a handout that has two tables on it that looks like this. And we're going to bring it up on the screen as well for the folks in the audience.
Handout? I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's a handout that has two tables that look like this, that we left in front of you for today. Okay, now we've got it up on the screen as well. So, the first table on your handout or on your screen, whatever you're looking at, is the table that's actually in the draft code. The second table below that is an example of the application of this table, so what I'd like to do is just take a minute to walk you through this, to help show you how these numbers in the proposed code kind of work with, but also...
Can I ask a question, a little clarification?
Sure.
Does this apply to a lot that's been subdivided with 35% retained, or does it apply only to an existing lot?
This would apply to a lot, if it's a lot that's a newly-created lot, after its vested development regulations under the subdivision expire, it would apply thereafter as well, so you're correct.
So, they could be removing the 35% retention?
Beyond the vesting of the development regulations to the subdivision, yes, that's correct. So, this table, table two, we're going to look at now. So, basically, when we worked through this application, the assumption that we were making is that forested conditions contain plus or minus 120 significant trees per acre, that's what we have found. So, that's the assumption that's being made when we look at the range of trees per acre that could exist on these different lot sizes. So, table two, left-hand column, lot size, or your five, your, your breakdown of your lot sizes, the second column from the left, then, assuming 120 trees per acre under forested conditions, we provided a range of trees that you may find on these different lot sizes. So, five would be a low number for a, up to a quarter-acre lot size, 30 would be forested conditions. On the quarter-acre to half-acre, 10 would be a low number, 60 would be forested conditions. So, then, the final two columns on the right, the max trees removed by percentage, and then the max trees removed by whole number, specifically speak to the proposed code and the percentage of trees allowed in a 10-year removal by percentage and by whole number. Okay? So, again, using the zero-to-quarter-acre lot size example, we'd have a range of potentially five to 30 trees on a lot of that size. So, then, by percentage, allowing a 50% removal, okay, you would be able to remove anywhere between three and 15 trees by percentage every 10 years. But using the whole number, the cumulative number per 10 years, that number is six. So, what council discussed at your last work session on this on September 15th would be, the lower of those two numbers would prevail in an example. So, for lots that have fewer significant trees on them now, like the five, right? The more restrictive removal number of those who are a 10-year period would be the three instead of the six.
Three, retaining two.
Correct. For lots that are more like forested conditions and you had a higher number of significant trees, like the 30, the 50% would be 15, but the whole number would cap it at six. So, and again, council described, they wanted to see something like this, and having the lower of the two numbers then would prevail in code. So, that is an example of depending on the number of significant trees that you have on your lot, either the 10-year percentage would prevail as the code requirement, or the 10-year cumulative number. Does that, does that make sense?
Councilmember Jaren, do you want to comment on that?
Yes, a question, Jeff. That makes sense, but what if you have a forested lot and you want to develop it now? Not subdivide it, but just build a house on it? This, this wouldn't work for that, because to develop a forested lot, you're going to have to cut down more than three or six trees. Do you distinguish between developing it versus just sitting there? And where is it distinguished?
Right. So, that's, that was something else that we also did discuss in maybe not-so-direct terms on the 15th. When we get into, let me just find it here. Item nine speaks to, not to skip ahead here, but just to answer your question, Councilmember Jaren. Item nine was a discussion from the 15th that we had about the purpose of doing that, and that giving the director, I believe it was Councilmember Whitten that brought it up, about providing the director discretion for certain purposes to go ahead and allow a greater number of trees to be removed. number of trees to be removed. So, when you look at item 9, option B, what you'll see, and then under subsection D, you'll see a number of purposes, building a new structure, such as a residence, ADU, garage, or shed. Those were express purposes council talked about on the 15th. I think alternative energy was discussed as well. There were express purposes council wanted to see in code to consider where the director would have additional discretion to provide for trees being removed necessary for that use.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember?
Yeah, so if we approve this table in 8, then we can also approve that addition in 9.
That's correct.
Okay, good.
Also?
Yes, please, Councilmember Whitten.
I'll look at number 10. Specifically, that was a question I raised. It says development proposals. So, that answers your question. I think it, you get the approval as part of that. New development in 11. So, I think if you track it through, you see new development comes up, and it, development proposals are where you get the 35%.
So, I think that table seems to work pretty well.
The first table.
The first table or the second table?
Mm-hmm.
No, no, I ask you a question. The first table or the second table?
The first table here. Well, the second one is the example of how it works.
The application, right. Okay.
So, if, it's seeming that council is inclined, or seem to be warming up to item 8, which is the table.
Right.
So, if council is inclined to move item 8 forward, then staff would also recommend you move item 9, option B, forward.
Right.
Instead of option A.
Oh, no.
Option A is removing the purpose language altogether, and council did discuss that on the 15th as well.
I want to move A.
Well, then, we're back to where we started.
Then we're not getting the ability of the director to approve the higher numbers.
It just says, I don't think they're inconsistent. This...
You think, or you do not think they're inconsistent?
Well, I don't think they have to be.
Could you give us a rationale for why we have, if we choose B, we can't choose A?
You could, you could strike A, take a look at the table, and then you go back to 1, and you strike A.
I mean, it's a very simple combination.
That's what we're saying.
Striking simply in, so we're on item, just to make sure we're all talking the same thing, item 9, option A, is what we're, we've moved the conversation to. By selecting option A, there won't be any discretion for express purposes, then, to go beyond the tree removal limits in the table in item 8.
But you could draft that. I mean, you can combine these. I was surprised you came up with all these options, because...
Well, that's option B is where...
Well, we have drafted that, that's option B.
That's where it's provided.
Yeah, striking it and then using the table in A, in...
Right.
In 8.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you meant to keep the purpose that's shown there.
No, they're, they're working together.
Okay. Are we okay with those two things? So, we can skip item 9 when we come to it?
Yeah.
Well, we're not, we still have to go back to 6, and 8 is, well, 7 we've done, 8 we've just decided on. How does, now, I want to talk about the complications of 8 you mentioned to item 6.
Well, in the complication is, so, when we, can you put the table back up?
Particularly as it relates to the so-called compromise position of R4, R1.
So, the table, this table now that we've just looked at has a required number of trees, limiting the number of trees that can be lawfully removed in a rolling 10-year period. So, in addition to that, we also have replanting requirements throughout the code for any tree lawfully removed, and we even have a more extreme replanting requirement for trees that are unlawfully removed. So, between the replanting requirement, between the minimum limiting requirements of removing trees on a rolling 10-year period here, when you then go all the way back to the table in item 6, which is the minimum tree density, I think you're, you're really layering a lot of things onto a lot, in terms of applying tree code. That's what I talked about in terms of the complexity of application earlier, but then also unintended consequences from conflicting or complexing matters. Another one would be in replanting, we're providing for off-site tree replanting relief later on in the code when we get to the replanting standard. So, there's a lot going on, and my suggestion about looking at minimum tree density maybe a little bit more holistically as part of an urban forestry management planning effort is something staff feels is appropriate, and we start using these other regulations, and we see how they work.
Well, I'll ask the question again. On item number 6, do we understand these complications? Are we willing to move this to the urban forestry discussion, just because of the complexities of the situation?
Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to yield on this, but I would like the urban forestry to come before, issue to come before council next year, not 2 years from now.
I think that's our intention at this point.
On the planning commission docket?
Urban forestry is on the planning commission docket?
If, if you approve the comprehensive plan on October 13th, which has policy directive for staff to begin that process in 2016, that will go on staff's work program.
That's next week.
That would be next week, and then we'll have to talk about, through the city manager, funding that particular effort starting next year as part of your mid-budget adjustments.
Councilmember Whitten?
I'm sorry, I, I don't have an objection to that. I just can tell you, I think the whole character of Samamish is dependent on having trees on lots.
I agree.
And I lived on a very small lot, and I can tell you, you can do it. 18 trees on a 5,000-square-foot lot. I was, counted them, I was just amazed. The whole perimeter was trees, and then there was one in the middle of the backyard.
Well, I think, I think we all agree with that.
So, I mean, I, with my blessing, put it forward, but please do make sure it doesn't get missed on the parking lot, whatever you call it.
Well, let's make sure we finish the comp plan next week.
I would assume we are going to.
I hope so. All right. Okay, so, we're deferring this to the urban forestry, so we could take up a more holistic approach to...
Correct.
...canopy.
So, staff's understanding is item 6 is not moving forward, item 8 is moving forward, and item 9B is moving forward.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but before we leave item 9, Councilmember Keller has an issue.
Yeah, it's not an issue, it's just that in the, it's D3, building, building a new structure or adding on to an additional structure. This is a residence for R1, R4, R6, right?
Correct.
So, when you come down further, and you go to existing R8, R12, R18, there's nothing in here that talks about, obviously, we're talking about residences probably in the first section, but in the commercial area, we're not talking about any building. There's no new building. Maybe that doesn't, it's just something that struck me when I was reading that. There's not an equivalent to building a new structure or adding on to an additional structure.
It's also true that commercial has slightly lower standards of tree retention, too, so...
I had the same question, because you could have an R8 lot, a lot that's owned R8, and you just want to build a house on it.
Right.
You should be able to, so that...
Yeah, or it's already there, and you wanted to add on another unit or something.
The way I read it is this is not properly drafted. I know, I couldn't figure out why I didn't like B, but the discretion to increase the number should not be limited to specific purposes if it comes in under one of the later sections of 9, or 10, or 11, whatever. There are several of them where they say, in connection with a development proposal for which a permit is required. I assume that would be for a garage, anything other than a shed. A remodel, ADU, anything that a building permit is required for comes under the requirements of these later sections, not under this section.
So, yes, you are correct. Section 250, which item 10 and 11 address, it's a different section of code.
So, so, this is really inconsistent with that, those sections of 250 and so on, because it's not necessary. I mean, it creates an inconsistency between the two sections. One, here, it says you have to get direct or discretion to exceed these limits, and the other one, where you're saying any time you come in with a development proposal, as to which a permit has to be issued of a type 2, 3, or 4, then you get to do the 35%.
That's correct. So, I, I mean, if you'd like to move the conversation to section 250, I can address that.
But I mean, so what I would do is give you discretion and not limit the purpose, and somehow reference over to 250, saying that it does not include those as to which situations as to which 250 applies.
Do you want to continue your comment?
Sure. So, in item 10, the term "development proposal" is defined in our code, and it's defined as an activity requiring a permit or other approval from the city relative to the use or development of land. That definition, then, was further qualified in section 250 as a type 2, 3, or 4 development proposal. So, that would, that takes away the building permit for, a type 1 building permit for a single-family residence, for example, would not fall under section 250, it would fall under section 240.
So, we want to strike, we want to strike a limitation or broaden the limitation as to types of permits? In other words, building a new house should come under 250?
Well, so, again...
From a policy's viewpoint.
And again, with the direction we took from council on the 15th, we were trying to create a clear dividing line between what applied to section 250 and what applied to section 240. Where we stand right now is the difference, anything from, anything, a type 1, we're not qualifying as a not requiring a building permit, would qualify under 240, type 2, 3, and 4 would qualify under 250. That's, that's the line in the sand that's been drawn in this code right now. If council would like to move that line, one way or the other, that would be for your discussion and directing staff to do that.
My thought is that anything, I guess, what, I would differentiate between an addition and improvement to a house, or building a house, or an ADU, or a garage, a structure, versus a permit for putting in a gas line, or an electrical permit, or something of that nature, increasing the height of a fence. So, I would put in a construction-type of permit. I don't know how you would define that, but all the permits that we issue, I mean, there are thousands of them, shouldn't trigger a 35%, but a permit for construction of a structure, I think, should be under 250 from a, from a policy viewpoint, rather than under something where you have to go through hoops to clear trees. I mean, I don't think if you have a vacant lot, you want to have to go through that. You've always understood as part of your building permit, you could take down the trees that are necessary to...
Yeah, and Councilmember Whitten, I appreciate your comment. And again, just going back to the 15th, one of the discussion points that council had was, and again, where we ended up creating the bright line here between type 2 and up and type 1 and down, was a council comment that building a single-family structure or some sort of accessory structure on an existing lot of record, that someone should not be able to take down 65% of the trees for that type of purpose. So, again, that's where, we took your comments, and we put them into a code, so you see what it would look like in code. That really helped define the bright line that we've brought forward to you between, again, the type 2 and up, and the type 1 and down, between these two sections, because then your single-family residence or your detached garage, for example, on an existing lot, would fall under the removal standards rather than the retention standards. Otherwise, if we move type 1 into section 250, your detached garage on an R4 or R1-zone lot, someone could, in theory, under this code, then submit a plan to remove 65% of the trees and retain 35%.
Are we okay with these two together? Councilmember Jaren?
Well, just one question on number 9, and that section we're talking about. It says at the discretion of the director, subject to double the tree replacement requirements. Why do we have that in there? Why?
That was the direction we received from council on the 15th.
I don't recall.
There was a lot of things that we recommended.
Yeah, different... I would concur with Don. If you're going to keep this in there, I mean, I still think developing a lot should permit the 35% for a single-family home. You might not want to do it for the ancillary structures, but a single-family home should be, in my opinion, under 250. But if you're going to keep at least everything other than single-family homes, or even single-family homes, then you shouldn't have double replacement, because the director's discretion is going to limit the number of trees to those that are necessary to accomplish the project.
I, I don't think staff has any objection to that.
Well, I would suggest striking that, subject to double the tree replacement requirements.
I agree.
Using existing standards.
Again, I still...
Are we okay with that, then?
I still think the single-family home permit should come into 250.
Just inform the other council.
I don't, I don't think, personally, I think maybe you may be right on the ancillary structures, there could be a big abuse, but the single-family home, you buy a lot, you want to be able to shape that lot and landscape it, and if it's totally forested, you know, then you're going to be limited how many you can take down after that. But I really think a single-family vacant lot should be under 250.
Okay, well, let's ask for that.
I agree with that.
Tom?
Just to be sure that we're consistent in the table, and we're hearing the option B, right?
Correct.
Correct.
There's a reference to forested trees in 5 years, I think there's a reference in 10 years.
Right. So, because you approved the, and again, as I described earlier, we didn't want to carry all the code changes through, because we're trying to consider these code changes in isolation to the specific council member requests. So, this table that you're seeing in option B will be completely replaced with the table that you've just concurred with in item 8.
So, that, that's no longer significant.
Yeah.
All right, are we okay, then? All right.
Residence out of there?
The word residence reference, assuming that's the definition of a single-family home.
Primary structure.
Primary structure. That makes sense.
So, primary structure will move to section 250?
Unless the primary structure is a garage.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, then, so, primary structure will get added to development proposals in section 250, item 10?
Let's make sure we're defining it as a, as a single-family home.
Yeah. Primary structures and type 2, 3, or 4 development.
Okay, and then we'll remove that from option B in item 9.
And it would be a development proposal for us, primary structure.
So, we're now past item 9 and 10, I believe?
Wow.
Are we okay with that? Let's go to 11.
Tom?
Yes.
One quick question on item 9.
One more question on item 9. What is it?
For reasons, like the list of reasons for doing stuff, I'm wondering if we need to include utilities?
9, whether we need to include utilities under D.
On the list, list of reasons for utilities replacements. I mean, Don had a deal where he had to dig up a lot of his lot to replace a waterloo, and if there was a, what had now become a significant tree that was impacting it, would that be a reason to take down a significant tree?
Good point. I think we should include that.
How about we, under the fourth line there, Councilmember Odell, we, we maybe reframe that to say installing utilities or sources of renewable energy such as solar panels?
Right. I'm on, I'm on D, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd say installing or maintaining utilities.
And I have a suggestion.
Yes.
I think...
I think any, and any other worthwhile purpose type of thing, as staff may determine. I mean, there might be something we haven't listed here that is like the utilities.
Technology?
And that's the problem with using a listing, limited purposes. So, some broader classification-
Well, utility's pretty broad, but-
But I mean, but there could be other things.
Which we can add.
Which I would like to see staff have the discretion to do it, and I would even be willing to let staff take a look at that after we approve it tonight, hopefully, and come up with some additional things, if you don't want any other worthwhile, whatever type of thing, but-
I think we covered it pretty good here. And, you know, after trial of about six months, we have to-
We can change it.
I think we have covered it pretty well here. I appreciate that you're giving us another relief valve, so to speak, but we will, we're going to look at this next year, another urban forestry managing, management plan. Some of these going to be overlapping inevitably, and we will have about a, perhaps at least a six months or eight months of experience, and then we can come back to you at that time if we need to do any tweaks to it.
Okay, let's move on to item 11.
Item 11, there's, oh.
Assuming that you including, we're including installing and or maintaining utilities, as councilmember Odell suggested.
Yes, yes. I believe we are, yeah.
The reason I bring that up is we've got potential major work in Inglewood and Tamarack and-
Other parts of the city as well. Okay, item 11.
Item 11, we've got two items here. We've got the proposed amendment to add the 50% retention requirement in the erosion hazard in lake management areas. And then we also have an additional proposed amendment to add the minimum 50% retention requirement in the R1 zone.
And also, you missed it, but one of my suggestions was a request that we add it for steep slopes, being defined as the grades of over 15%.
I think that's part of 17.
But the 50%. Yeah. So, it was erosion hazard, steep slopes.
Okay.
I would support that.
Are you, you're referencing the, the steep slope identified areas?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
And just that area of the lot, not the whole lot.
Do we have a definition of steep slopes?
It's in the code. I believe it's 50% or more.
Okay, given that, that addition, are we okay with this, item 11?
Keller, has got any issue?
No.
Well, first, Nancy, you have spoken, and then Don.
Can I just make one suggestion and might shorten it? I, I think if you take out lake management areas, small lake basins, whichever, from erosion hazard and steep slopes, and discuss them separately and discuss R1 separately, you might find consensus on three of them, and the lake management is the one that's controversial.
Okay.
So, I think you can fly through it if you-
Let's go to councilmember Gerond.
Okay, I'm a little confused by the, the whole section. Now, this deals, it says new development in, in R1, R4, and R6-owned lots, so if it's new development, ordinarily would be the 35%.
Mm-hmm.
And you, you must obtain approval anyway, for any removal. It says must obtain approval prior to removing any significant tree located on a lot, either through a tree removal permit or in conjunction with another permit. That's true already, isn't it?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So, what we're saying now is we're going to increase to 35% to 50% in these particular areas. In the erosion hazard area, are we talking about the erosion hazard, hazard near a sensitive water body zone, or?
So, we're, we're actually talking, there's a map that, well, we'll pull up the map here for you on the screen as well. There's a map, an 11 by 17, that we left for you.
And the brown is the erosion hazard areas?
Correct. And the yellow outline are the, the Pine and Beaver Lake Basin boundaries.
Okay, I'm, and also, we said on steep slopes now also.
We actually just looked that up. So, the definition of steep slope in our code is above 40%. I think that's what councilmember-
40%?
Yeah.
Well, then I would say above 15% to keep the trees, the higher tree removal requirement.
Well, 15%?
I think you said 40, 40, wasn't he?
Well, you can't build on 40%. That's a no-build area.
You can remove trees, though.
Well, what I'm saying is, I was hoping for a stricter tree re- all of the things we've been hearing from, in our public comments today, on erosion occurs on steep slopes, where it's 15% or more. So, I'm hoping that if we have a 15% slope, that's where you keep trees.
What is the definition of steep slope?
And again, as I just mentioned, the code defines it as slopes above 40%, and councilmember Wen is correct, those are essentially critical areas now in our code, so those don't have a, they wouldn't be subject to a 35 or 50% retention, they're subject to-
So, this map is not-
That's why they're not on here.
But if you have a steep slope of under 40%, but over a certain percentage, and I think it's usually 15, you can't build a road at a grade 15, I don't think, can you? Straight up and down. I, I think that that presents an erosion hazard, and I think that's where you want to have a stricter tree retention.
But the erosion hazard areas are erosion hazards. I mean-
But steep slopes, when you denude them, also become-
Erosion hazards.
Erosion areas. I mean, look at the thing on Tamarack that we've been looking at, thanks to Murray Wector.
That might be over 15%. And there is a road there. My hill, that lands with it, is 39%.
It's 39, so-
So, I mean-
Depending on which topography map, it would be really close.
So, I, maybe if you're not comfortable with 15, it could be 20 or even 25, but it's clearly something under 40 is going to wash down the hill and hurt the downstream owners. And I think putting, you're not saying they can't take out any trees, you're just saying they can't take out an increased number of trees.
Do we have any common knowledge on this issue from our other cities?
Not, certainly, we would have to go, and that would be something we'd have to research, yeah. Unfortunately.
The point I was trying to make with regard to the, the other area, and that's the lake management areas, you have them circled there, and I certainly agree with the, keep retaining 80% of the significant trees within 200 feet of the shoreline. I agree with Dr. Welsh in that we want to minimize the mixing in the summertime from the wind, and that will help that. But extending that to the lake management area doesn't make any sense for that purpose. So, for other purposes, Dr. Welsh sent us a letter saying that, well, Issaquah Creek has 70% tree cover retention. Well, Issaquah Creek is mostly in rural area, and in fact, Ria'Adis is doing enhancement by agreements with some of the agricultural property owners there to replant along the creek. I can see that, but in our city, we have our, we have our stormwater requirements, and they're very strict, and they're getting stricter with MPDES. So, I don't see why we would create these arbitrary boundaries for the, for the lakes, in the sense that the lakes are mostly spring-fed anyway, rather than surface water. So, I would suggest taking out and lake management areas, but retaining the 50% for erosion hazards and the, the steep slopes, if we can come to a definition on that.
You're saying keep in the, the steep slopes?
Excuse me, do you have a definition of steep slope you'd like to propose?
No, that, that doesn't, I refer to staff on that, 15%.
On the other hand, what is the right number?
I also want to question the wisdom of these lines right here, because the storm drainage flows, I'm not quite sure every parcel within those drawn lines actually flows into the lakes, and I-
But they do there in the drainage basin.
But they have, they have stormwater systems, too.
Right. Well, they do have a stormwater system there, too, but if the intent is that what comes into the lake untreated water, that's what you're trying to control, and then they enhance the stormwater quality by omitting the removal of the trees, I'm not quite sure that we're accomplishing that with these boundaries that has been established here. One suggestion, you may want to consider doing this, this is, again, the urban forestry discussion that you're going to have next year, with the much robust information hopefully provided to you. Would you want to consider having that at that time, rather than getting stuck on this one right now?
I would like to have everybody take, consider very carefully the comments of Dr. Welsh, who, as you know, is the former head of the University of Washington Lomnology Department. He studied Pine Lake in 1980. He was head of the department when some of his students and proteges from the department were doing Beaver Lake, and he did the update on the Lake Samamish Plan, and he was involved with the updates on the Pine Lake Plan. He's an expert in his field. He happens to be a wonderful resource for the city, because he's also a Samamish resident and cares very much about the trees. His point is that you accomplish several things when you increase tree coverage. I'm reading from his letter, which was finalized and sent to the staff and the council tonight, where he states, "The fraction of retained forest is likely an important factor in maintaining the lake's high quality." Now, he's referencing that to Samamish in a minute he'll qualify on. He said, remember, the problem with Beaver and Pine are phosphorus loading, as well as with Lake Samamish, although we're not asking the 50% be put into Lake Samamish. It says phosphorus lost from forest land is very low compared to urbanized land with a large fraction of impervious surface, which increases the rate of storm runoff, carrying phosphorus and other pollutants. Trees cover can mitigate the rate of runoff, and therefore, the entrainment of pollutants and transport to receiving water bodies. That effect is obvious, if obvious during a rainy period, the area under tree canopies often remain relatively dry for quite some time after rainfall begins. More tree cover means slower rate of runoff and more infiltration. Just as retained tree cover in the Issaquah Basin is apparently an important reason, Issaquah Creek phosphorus content, as well as that in Lake Samamish, has remained rather stable, so can tree cover operate to remain, to maintain good water quality in small lakes like Pine and Beaver. This water quality should be an important consideration when considering rules regarding tree retention. These are special areas, these are small lakes, they're 80-some acres each, they have an average depth of 20 feet, they're extremely sensitive to phosphorus loading. As you develop, and, and the problem in the future is going to be infill development, where you're going to be taking down a lot of trees. We have an impervious surface limit with 72% if you have a small-sized lot, and that's under 7,000 and some square feet. We also have made exceptions, which I have no idea when or where they came from, from our 80% phosphorus removal, which exempted all the lots and the camp property, because they divided off roof runoff from yard runoff, and figured it was less than 5,000 square feet. So, it's extremely important to look at tree coverage as a phosphorus reduction, and not just around the 200 feet from the lake. So, I would, given the way we've created all these exemptions in the code to the 80% phosphorus removal standard, I would very much like to see, and the fact that we haven't decreased the impervious surface limit for small lots on, on the small lake basins, I would very much like to see the tree retention increased. And then if you want to put it back, you can. But let's get it right this time, and for the small lake basins.
Councilmember Keller?
Small lake basin, that's what the yellow line says.
Use your microphone.
That, that's what the line says on here. In here, it says lake management areas. I know maybe lake management areas means small lake basin boundary, but the reason I ask that question is I want to go back to, is this really a basin that we're looking at, then? Is, does the water flow? Is the, are we really, are these trees in this area going to affect the lake? Because it says lake management area, I'm not sure, is that-
It's the same thing, as I understand it. It's a sub-basin for each of the two lakes.
So, should we describe it that way, then, in this? That, that it is the basin, it's not just the lake management area, it's the basin?
Yeah.
And, and then I would ask, is there any other lake legal complication where somebody else could say Lake Samamish should fall into this somewhere? I'm just, is there a complication since we're following this yellow line anywhere?
Well, that's what I don't know. I mean, I was- I wasn't trying to argue what Dr. Welsh said. All I was suggesting that is, do we have sufficient information? You have those questions. I got questions about the validity of these lines right here, that, that we need to probably So, that's what I was suggesting, that you may want to consider having this discussion in the urban forestry management plan discussion.
I, I'd just like to follow up with, I don't have an argument with the logic of what we're doing and the tree retention in the areas. I'm just, I'm, I would just want to make sure that there aren't some complications with what we're drawing here, and some conflict in definitions.
I guess we could ask our council, you know, there's, I'm looking at this map, and I'm guessing there's a lot of, for example, R4 zoning in there. I haven't, I don't see a zoning map, but-
Yeah, I think you're, you're right. It's a lot of R4.
Are we, are we now with the 50%? Are we going to look at, what are the legal complications we could get ourselves into on this?
Oh, there's, there's a long list of them. I think that councilmember Keller struck on a key point, and it, and it may be that a way to, to better define this. If council wants to retain the lake management area issue at this point, rather than deferring to the urban forestry program, it may be that we want to go with the actual boundaries of the designated lake management districts.
We don't have a district currently for Pine Lake. We have a management plan.
Right, just, all right.
Just for Beaver.
That's why I use the word basins, because they're definable for, I mean, and we use the word basins for all the stormwater requirements and the 80% phosphorus removal. And this should be consistent with the 80% phosphorus removal, define it in accordance with that standard. I mean, you know, we require A-CART, 80% phosphorus removal under A-CART, for the small lake basins, and that's what we should be doing. If you want to go with a 50% tree retention, use the same definition as we use for the application of the 80% standard.
I mean, that's already in the code.
This almost goes without saying, but the greater clarity that we can put into this, the better off we are.
So, it would be how you define the A-CART standard requirement should also control the 50% tree retention.
Let me, let me turn to Kathy and Jeff, and perhaps there's an exhibit or a map in the Pine Lake Plan, and also in the Beaver Lake Lake Management District, that we can refer to, that, that actually defines the boundaries we're talking about for enforcement purposes.
These boundaries seem to be a little- Right. Yeah. Is there?
So, one other-
Hold on, let's get something from Jeff.
There are, and to the city manager's point, we, we did work closely with our GIS staff to produce these yellow lines, but we certainly would want to make sure we double-check and that it's crystal clear where the line is, so.
I mean, but it, but you have to do that, anyway, for the 80% A-CART standard, right?
Right.
So, that's something that's already in effect in code, and anytime you have an application coming in where A-CART applies, 80% A-CART, then you say that you've also got a 50% tree retention. And the other thing that is really important in this context is, there's a domino effect when you remove trees. As you move toward more infill and more infill, you're taking down more trees necessarily to accommodate it, and when you do that, you're putting at risk the trees that are still standing. I mean, I, every time neighbors two over took down all the, looked like they shaved all the trees down years ago, and we immediately lost all these trees in the next big storm. It really is a domino effect, and so the more trees you can retain, as a wind barrier back from the water, the more apt the trees along the water are apt to survive. apt the trees along the water are apt to survive.
Okay.
Can you just get clarity on what is the definition going to be of the boundaries we're talking about?
Well, I would say the same boundaries. I'd say let, give staff direction that they don't have to come back to us, but to pick up the same language in the A-CART standard of 80%, because it's already in, in the stormwater code, and, and say that's where the, how you define the boundaries.
Is that feasible, Jeff?
Yes.
Is that permissible?
Well, the other, that's the other issue, is it...
So Mike, is that permissible?
Yeah, we, we have statutory authority for the council to adopt something tonight that includes direction for staff to fill in the blanks, but we have to have sufficient clarity for those blanks for it to be enforceable. So I think the issue that we're talking about here, I'm not hearing enough clarity unless we were able to produce an exhibit or something specific we could refer to.
Well, to use the same, they already define for every permit that comes in, development permit, construction permit, they already define whether it's subject to A-CART or not, and if it's, and whether or not an exemption exists. So there is in code for the 80% A-CART requirement, a way staff determines that, and I'm suggesting the criteria for this 50% should be the same. So I think that's a sufficient direction to staff.
Make a comment on that issue.
So a suggestion here would be while council breaks for dinner and goes into executive session, staff can research that and see if we can come back after the break with something that will work for everybody.
I would suggest this needs a little more clarification, a little more discussion. So what we're going to do now is go to our council dinner break. When we come out, we will have, I don't think we're going to have student liaisons reports, although they may show up. Then we will do another session of public comment at 6:30, approximately 6:30. We will do an executive session. I believe that will take approximately 10 minutes.
How much dinner?
As, as part of dinner.
Can we finish 10 before we go?
We gotta go, we'll come and do 11 when we come back. Finish 11.
All right. Let's just say that the executive session will be 15 minutes, purpose of real estate acquisition.
Yeah.
Certainly no action is expected.
Okay. Thank you. But I also want to offer again, public comment, for those who have public comment. I have, again, this is three minutes, please give your name and address. Five minutes if you're representing a recognized community organization. I have Bill Hammond.
I'm not ready. I just got here.
Okay. Is Carolyn Hoager, Howger, ready?
Did I sign up on that?
Somebody signed up here. Are you intending, yeah, over here.
Okay.
Give your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Is this on?
Yes.
All right. We moved to Sammamish.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carolyn Howger, 1923, 218th Lane, Southeast Sammamish. We moved to Sammamish from Seattle about 10 years ago, and like so many other people, we were so enthralled with the trees and the existing wildlife that we enjoyed because of the habitat. That habitat is fast disappearing. We have deer that come in our yard. We have bobcats, raccoons, squirrels galore, all kinds of creatures. But this community is very unhappy with the thought of losing this habitat. The animals and the creatures have a hard time surviving when there is four houses. We hope that whatever decisions you make on habitat and environment, tree preservation, please, please consider having something consistent that does not allow a development like what happened right next door to us on 20th and 100 and, or 218th Lane. Drive down there, drive in please and see it. It was an acre and one-third that any of, anybody could, could buy. We could have bought it if we had enough money, but it was purchased for $350,000 and divided into three lots with the existing lot and two other lots. There are now two houses there, almost 4,000 square feet, plus the existing house. And the games that were played with the wetlands should not happen to another neighborhood. By carving out a small amount of wetlands and keeping the existing trees with a few super-large, what do you call them? Significant trees? Keeping those significant trees, the builder was allowed to clearcut the rest of the lot and took down over 100 trees, including 20 significant trees. And many trees, you might call them insignificant, but they were very close in size. So please, whatever decision you make, don't let games get involved, or a developer or a builder can say, "Oh, well, we'll get credit for this if we do this." And it may be a good thing. To me, the wetlands come first. Thank you very much. Please consider that.
Bill Hammond?
My name is Bill Hammond. My wife Barb and I are here. We moved into Sammamish.
Could you give your address?
Our address is 24017 Northeast 14th Street, Sammamish, 98074. So I can't see exactly where we are on your map, but I'm sure we're right there. And we, we moved into our property 31 years ago, and our plan, in fact, at the time that we moved in, we planned that it would ultimately be our retirement plan, that we would take a five-acre piece, we cleared just one acre of, of that land, and build our house smack in the middle of that five acres. And that, the remainder was, is totally wooded. And if you look now, having allowed it to grow, we have numerous trees that are in the 36 to 48-inch size on our property. So we're really your parkland. And when we moved into the place, the property across the street from us, which you are familiar with, I'm sure, called the Mystic Lake Development now, was a heavily wooded area that was carved out of the city specifically so that the owners could maintain it as a treed property. So it is with great sadness that we have watched the development there. So we, we share that concern. On the other hand, in our property, we now have four acres of very densely wooded property, and our desire was to separate it into four or five lots and be able to use that as our retirement. The rules as we understand them would take such a large number of replanted trees that it would be almost impossible to rebuild the, the tree limit if we were trying to do some kind of development. So we're looking very closely at how the rules work, but we would really like for you to consider in this process, what happens to smaller owners who have a need for this to be a retirement option. We are not looking for this to become rezoned R4 so that 20 houses could be built on this, but we do think that it's appropriate to come up with some way of looking at the larger pieces that we could divide it into so that you would truly have retention of some, what you would call estate lots in a location like ours. So please consider that as you try to develop these rules. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for a public comment? Okay. Public comment is closed. And we're going to continue with our discussion of the tree ordinance. We were at, I believe we were at, still at item number 11, I believe?
Correct.
Yes. What is the...
The question I have based on the conference plan is, one of the things we've talked about is the flexibility in the code, the plant, replant, or the replacement trees offsite. Has that been addressed in here?
Yeah, council hasn't, there were, there were no proposed changes.
When we get there, we'll...
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Jeff, you want to get us started again?
So yeah, so we left off on item 11. We were talking primarily before the break about the, the lake management area term that was in there. So while we were in executive session, Kathy was working hard in the back and consulting with public work staff. And I think what we came up with is, let me just read this. I'll, I'll do a complete read-through and then we can break the words down if you wish. But the section could read, "Regardless of the zoning designation, erosion hazard areas and the Pine Lake and Beaver Lake drainage subbasins on maps as created and maintained by the city shall retain 50% of the significant trees within unconstrained areas by wetland streams, landslide hazard areas, and associated buffers." So the, the phrase Pine Lake and Beaver Lake drainage subbasins, that was the, in working with public work staff, that's, that's consistent language, and then as well as on maps created and maintained by the city, that phrase appears elsewhere in the code as well. So all that language, we would be using consistent terminology if council wished to move that forward.
Wish I had that. Do you have it written somewhere? Is that up, up there or?
No, I like it. I like the way it sounded.
I like the way it sounded, but I'd like to look at it too.
No.
We're going to type it right on the screen here for you, so you can have that. Just give us one moment.
Yes. An onion skin paper.
Good job.
And what is the blue paper?
Yes.
You're going to wait a couple minutes?
No, it's where you put carbon paper, you put three or four things in with a blue.
Do you want to, well Kathy's doing that. We have another item in 11 that we can talk about quickly. I think council will generally be okay with.
The slopes.
Well, no, we're going to move over to the, another one of your suggestions, Councilmember Whitten, about the, the office in commercial zones, about not having a minimum tree retention percentage but requiring a double planting. So item 11, but if you turn the page.
Could we finish with item 11A?
Okay, sure. I was just trying to economize.
We also included, did you also...
My comment is on item 11, 1A, which is what Kathy's retying right now.
Okay.
So my question and comment is, you talk about erosion hazard areas, but you do not include the drain-to-erosion hazard areas. My property happens to be in the drain-to-erosion hazard areas, and we're held to a more significant standard. Many times when we, over the years, it's very clear that the water leaving our properties is going down Snake Hill, it has eaten out the ditches before King County brought rocks and things in. I'm questioning why you don't have the overlays in here as well, which is the drain-to-erosion hazard area.
Well, that, so that's a new, that's introducing a new twist on this from the council discussion on the 15th. So this language in A was responding to the direction we got from council on the 15th of September.
I understand that.
So to, to include the drain-to areas.
The drain-to areas, because those are the key areas where the water is actually draining to these erosion hazard areas and causing the erosion. So we need to keep the trees in that drain too, the overlay areas as well.
I agree. Excellent. Thank you. How do you define that, though?
We have it defined in the comp plan and such.
Oh, perfect. Good catch, Ken.
You're welcome.
Okay. Have you almost got that?
Yep.
Okay.
Ready? Want to flip the screen on?
Yeah.
I would hope so. Yeah.
He had 15% coming up in something. Ask him what it was, would you?
Okay, so we had to turn the screen off, so we wouldn't notice all Kathy's typing mistakes while she went back and fixed them. So, so here it is again. Regardless of the zoning designation, erosion hazard areas in Pine and, and Pine Lake and Beaver Lake drainage subbasins on maps created and maintained by the city shall retain 50% of the significant trees within areas unconstrained by those features and associated buffers. And then the deputy mayor's amendment, while Kathy was typing this, would read erosion hazard areas and drain-two areas? Is that...
Yeah, I, there's a term in the comp plan that we've used, and I don't remember if we called, went back to and called it the overlay, the SO overlay, or whether we called it the drain-to-erosion hazard areas. I didn't have a chance to look.
Okay. So we can make sure that terminology is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Excellent.
Okay.
Steep slopes?
Are we, let's look at this first.
Okay.
Do we have any consensus on this issue?
Yes.
Please, please indicate. Okay, I see four on that side. I see, oh, you're voting now too, Mike?
I think it's about time. You guys have been able to do this forever and I, I, no, of course. I would like just to suggest that we add the word depicted after subbasins. Pine Lake and Beaver Lake drainage subbasins depicted on maps. That's great.
Okay.
Depicted.
You, you don't have to count my vote.
I'm not sure about the spelling, but I understand.
Strike the second as, because the map's created and maintained by city.
Yes.
One on, you wanted to leave the second as.
No, not that one.
No, the second one, after maps.
The second one. Okay, so we have a consensus on that language. Now, the next issue, I believe, is the steep slope issue.
What about the drain-to-erosion hazard area?
Well, did, did we add that? I think we added it.
It's not been added yet.
Okay.
Not in that language.
No, we haven't. Can we go back to the language then?
Yep, well, we had that. So erosion hazard areas in areas of drain-two.
It'd be nice if we had the actual language as opposed to speculations.
Kathy's typing her right now, so.
Okay.
Mary, turn it back on the screen for the council.
Okay, now read this, this one.
Great.
Okay, now I'll have to ask that again. Are we, do we have consensus on this language?
Yes.
Yes.
Adamus.
I think, I think we're...
Wow.
Wait a minute. When you read it, is that read right? Because usually erosion hazards near sensitive water bodies.
Correct. That's the language in the comp plan.
Okay, so it's not near sensitive as water bodies.
Need to add a comma after overlay.
Oh, yeah.
Just that's statutory construction if there ever is a challenge, but...
Yeah. Okay. All right, so we have consensus on this one. Now let's go to the other issue.
Steep slopes?
Steep slopes.
What's the 15% about? Where was the 15%?
Definition of landslide hazard areas.
The definition?
It was part of the, it was part of identifying landslide hazard areas. Where Kathy's going to bring it up here for us.
Thank you. It's a super steep slopes, but their steep slopes are 15%.
What, the regulations or the definition?
The definition, the one that had the three, the three criteria.
I think I'm wrong, I think. I think you have to.
Where somebody would park.
Get a slope if you can, or get a variance.
So, I think we've got it here on the screen. If you go down to, so landslide hazard area, it can be an area of historic failure, it can be areas of shown movement. And then if you go down to number three, any area with three of the following characteristics, slopes steeper than 15%. Hill sides intersecting, geologic contacts, as described there, and then springs or groundwater seepage.
So that's already a landslide hazard area.
Correct.
But there are steep slopes between 15 and 40%.
Well, this is greater than, steeper than 15%, so 15 to.
It's also got to be, have all three of the characteristics. What I'm going to say is you're going to have probably, just the steep slope of 39% is going to, even if it doesn't have the other two, probably needs the trees to retain the soil onsite. Is that not a fair comment?
Yeah, so it's, and again, it's amendment for the council. We've got steep slopes defined as greater than 40%. We've got our landslide hazard areas. Councilmember Whitten, I think, is trying to look at what's in between those two, what's not a landslide hazard area and what's not a steep slope as defined by code.
So I guess I'd like to stay steep slopes over a certain grade, because I, I don't think there can be any harm, you know, even building is a challenge on that, and you can see the damage that occurs with tamarack. I mean, that's just the best example we have.
There's also a drain to areas where steep slopes just have issues for adoption, and I've been wondering why this won't approach that maybe it is without this one.
So I, I would ask staff if they could recommend a number somewhere between 15 and 40, assuming that these other two characteristics didn't apply. Might be have one of the two, might not have.
Councilmember Jaren?
I think if you're going to do that, you're going to have to look at number four there, where it talks about area with a slope 40% or steeper with a vertical relief of 10 or more feet, because you can have a slope of 15 feet for one or two feet, and you don't want to create little bands of restriction.
Good point.
That'd be my driveway. I'd have to re-tree the whole thing.
But probably the trees next to your driveway help retain the slope.
I'm sure they do. I was sort of joking, but you know, when you talk about steep slopes, there are just so many little pockets of steep slopes throughout the entire city.
You're still only talking a percentage requirement, you're not saying a ban, so. Does staff have a recommendation?
Well, I mean, admittedly, not having put any thought into this prior to today's meeting, we're, we are kind of shooting in the dark with the numbers, so. My, I think my recommendation, again, would be, it's something that we should probably look at, and it's something that we probably do need to look at under the more comprehensive effort of the urban forestry management plan. Councilmember, when I, I don't, I don't have a, a pre-selected number in my head, because it's, I think it's something we'd want to take a look at and analyze what the potential impact of that would be by including that. It's just not something we've looked at to this point in the process, so.
I'd be comfortable with that. I still think, you know, this is, I'd rather put some number in, if it's not perfect, change it when you come back, because it's, 39% is huge. I mean, at 40%, it's an absolute ban on development and trees. We see what taking trees down damages, you get a heavy rain and the soil wears off, and may not result in a collapse of the, but.
We will never have an ordinance that that would address every hypothetical circumstances. And I think that if we try to do that tonight, the risk that we may run into it, unfortunately, unintended consequences of what we put in there. If we're in doubt, I think you had already addressed the 95 to 98% of the problems that we're dealing with the trees in the, out there. Let's spend more time, and you have more robust information in front of you to get into those additional details next year, it's not that too far down the road to address those. I can't give you a number right now. I mean, I, just the number that we give you is that picking it up in the air.
Which number should we change? Should we change the bottom, the top number or the bottom number? That's, that's the issue.
The average between 15 and 40.
But you still have the vertical relief to deal with, so.
Yeah.
I think you're opening a can of worms here.
True.
You are. So the consensus is to reconsider?
Do we consider it next, next time?
You're capturing all of these, so there's no way they'll get lost, aren't you?
I want to bring distance into this answer, too. It's something like, average of 15% over 100 yards or whatever.
Yeah. Okay, so then we're done with 11, I believe, 12?
Not, not quite, mayor. So now, let's, let's flip the page, though, on your table.
I'm trying, yeah.
And there's, well, still under number 11, there's councilmember Whitten's proposed amendment to not have a minimum retention requirement for the ONB and CB zones. And then, but then to also add a, an additional qualifier to have double tree replacement for properties in those zones that utilize that, that reduced or no retention requirement. So that's under 2D and 2E.
Do we have any, councilmember Odell, do you have a comment on that?
Nope.
I thought for last time. Anyone else have a comment?
11 here on the doubling, if they use the, all, all replacement, it gives them flexibility, but then they'd have to replace, the replacement requirement would be doubled.
Yeah, I have a big question, why there? So I don't have a good answer to that. Do we have an answer, why would we double the requirement?
Well, the answer was, that was, councilmember Whitten suggested amendment to the code. So I believe the intent there, I don't want to speak for her, but I believe the intent was if, if they're going to go below the minimum retention requirement, that that would be the mitigation or the trade-off for being able to do that, and I, you may have additional thoughts.
As well as offsite, as well as onsite, if you were going to double.
Does staff have a recommendation on this one?
Well, certainly, the language certainly works. I mean, we can definitely apply that language successfully for development proposals.
No unintended consequences, no?
No, it's, I mean, it's.
All right.
And that's areas outside of the constrained areas, right?
We know we have one vote for it, but let's see what everybody else says.
No, but I was clarifying, that, that's areas outside of the critical areas and.
And that's the way the language has been crafted.
Where does it say that?
Indeed, there is no minimum retention requirement for significant trees located within the ONB and CB zone lots and areas unconstrained by environmentally sensitive areas and associated buffers.
And the replacement can be outside, is that what you're saying?
Well, we'll get to that, I think, won't we?
That'll show up later in 280?
Correct.
Okay.
Do we have consensus on that one?
Okay.
Consensus, okay.
Item, item 12 is put forward here for section 250, and it is removing the critical area buffer credit. And I believe a couple of folks during the public hearing earlier this afternoon spoke specifically to this, want to remove it and wanted to keep it. So you can see the strike-through language, it would, this amendment would remove those subsection Bs from 1 and 2. You'll recall, the former tree regulations had a 50% critical area and critical area buffer credit, where you could count back up to 50% of your tree retention requirement. The interim regulations that are currently in force removed that completely, and the planning commission recommended to partially reintroduce that with up to a 25% credit. So that is what's being proposed to be struck here.
Okay, do we have councilmember Jaren, I guess?
I would support what the planning commission said, which is in, we have it in 11, left it in 11, I'd leave it in 11, not take it out.
Any other, councilmember Valderrama?
I also would support what the planning commission had recommended. They had spent a lot of time deliberating this and going through this, and I think we should just follow here to their recommendation on this.
Councilmember Whitten?
What it, what it's doing is basically reducing the 35% credit. I don't.
Is it reducing the 35% or the 65%?
It's, it's taking the 35% tree retention requirement, and it's allowing for trees in a critical area buffer, not the actual critical area now, this was changed by the planning commission, allowing trees within the buffer to count to a certain percent, up to a quarter of your tree retention requirement can be credited or counted in.
You gave me a couple of hypotheticals on that the other day.
So you're, so you have, you have 100 significant trees on your property outside of sensitive area and sensitive area buffers. So under a 35% retention, you're required to retain 35 of them. Of those 35, under this planning commission recommendation, up to, depending on the size of your, of your buffer on the property, you can count up to 25% of those 35 trees in the critical area buffer. So that would be eight trees, for example.
That's why I said it's reducing the 35% indirectly. My, my concern is that if we had to redo all the replanting onsite, I think this might be something to give flexibility. But once we open up, the flexibility to use replacement trees offsite, I don't think we need to give a credit, because I think they're not burdened with the replacement to the extent they go offsite. That's brought in the flexibility that the credit, I think, is trying to do. So maybe you could give them an incentive through going offsite more than you do other people or something, but to me, I'm really disturbed about giving them a credit for something they have to do anyway, which is keep the trees in the buffer areas.
Councilmember Odell?
Well, we made the retention requirements much stiffer in the emergency ordinance for a reason, and that is the, fact is that we're losing trees rapidly. Having a replacement requirement offsite, even if it's 2 to 1, 3 to 1, or 4 to 1, whatever it is, is not going to have the same effect as losing a single 100-foot tall tree, because the replacement trees will be eight feet high, if they're, if they're evergreen, a little higher perhaps if they're deciduous. At the same time, also giving them a 25% credit for trees that would have to be retained in any event, basically takes this 35% retention requirement back to the original 25%. So we've gone absolutely nowhere here. I am very much in favor of keeping this wording in item 12 exactly as is written with the strike-throughs.
Councilmember Keller?
Yes, thank you. I, my inclination is to support, really, councilmember Whitten and Odell in their view of this, but I do want to get some clarification. As it reads now, in the buffers, they get a 50% credit? Is that, is that what?
As it reads now, they get no credit.
They get no credit.
That was the former regulations that were repealed by the interim regulations. That's correct.
So, but, but the point I'm, I'm trying to get to is, what we've been working under right now is they did get 50%.
No.
Before the.
Before the intro.
Before the.
Before the emergency.
Right.
So.
They were getting.
Up until October 14th last year, that's correct.
Exactly. Okay, so they were getting 50% credit for them. So I'm, I'm just trying to look at this in terms of the 35%, because I, too, agree, that's what I lean towards, is we tried to up this retention policy to 35%. And the interim policy, in fact, if you measure this against the interim policy, it does reduce the 35% then. But if you redo, if you were comparing it to the previous one, it really, it's, it's more.
Stronger.
It's actually stronger still.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm trying to make sure that I'm clear on the logic as I go through this.
So you went from 50% to zero, to, up to 25%.
Right.
Well, I'm not, I'm not asking, I'm just asking for comments here.
I'm watching his eyes.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jaren?
Yes, Bobby made good point there. We went from 50% in the old ordinance to now up to 25% while increasing the requirement from 25% to 35%. The other point to be made is that during the last 10 to so many years, we've also increased the buffer size. So we are, we are now having larger buffers around our critical areas than we had when we started out with the tree ordinance. So in that sense, we're making it more restrictive.
Council, or deputy mayor Huckabee?
Yes, I support councilmember Whitten's. I see no reason not to make it stronger. I think, and I'll quote her once more this evening, Eileen Stahl made the comment that we live on a plateau. It's very important, our trees are not just aesthetic, they serve a strong function in this community, and that function is capturing and retaining water. And those trees are in the buffer because they're needed in the buffer. I don't think that we should give any credit for new development for having to retain trees in the buffer.
Go back to councilmember Odell.
Thank you. I agree with deputy mayor Huckabee on everything she just said, and I repeat, but to me, this is the heart, the absolute heart of the tree retention ordinance here. If we got this, I'm very sorry we spent so much time arguing about it. And I feel very strongly that we need to keep the wording as amended in item number 12.
Okay, councilmember Whitten?
Point out what motivated this timing and this stringentness of this tree ordinance, and that was a property that was developed under a lot of citizen protest on the corner of Southeast 20th and 228th. And they actually, I think, technically met the 25% that, and they have, they're steep slopes. I mean, they're, they had some areas, they're in the Pine Lake Basin, and you'd never know, and it's one of the ugliest, and they, well, they could have done a better PR job if they even had timed the, how they did the development, but you'd never know they saved a tree. And that's really what sparked the outrage that everybody, my granddaughter used to chew me out when I'd drive her to Skyline High School, and every time we'd pass, it's, "Look what they did! How can that happen?" And I'd say, "Eh eh eh." But that's what started this tree ordinance, was the outrage that our people felt when it was so visible on such a large parcel, right in the middle of the city. Could have been a signature development that would, but it didn't come out that way. So I want to say, the more exceptions you give, and you're going back to a 25% requirement if you give credit in some cases, I want to keep the 35%, and I don't want to give credit for doing something they have to do in the buffers. I just don't think that's appropriate. So that's what we're all about, this whole purpose of this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Councilmember Valderrama?
Yeah, and I wanted to reiterate what councilmember Jaren had said as to where we had gone to, where we're coming from, from the zero, and that they kind of split the difference in the planning commission. We do have the opportunity, given the 35% that's being maintained and the buffer expansions, to hear from the vice chair of the planning commissions to get a better insight into their thinking, because they went into a long process on this. And so I'd like to be able to hear from the planning commission's perspective on this and why they ended up instead of from going to 0 to 50 where they went. Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Frank.
Point of order. Why is it different from asking for staff?
I'm happy to talk if you want me to.
You can speak, I think frankly, you could speak, frankly.
Frank! As only I can.
You can speak for yourself or the Planning Commission.
So I'll, I'll speak quickly and briefly as, as a Planning Commissioner, as Vice Chair of the, of the Planning Commission. The thinking behind the allowing the, some credit for what happened in the buffers, we were given some hypotheticals where the buffers were so large and the actual critical area was so small on the property that it really prevented any development on the property. And that was sort of where we were going with that, was okay, so zero is too much, you know, not having anything in there isn't good, but we, so we wanted to land on a compromise there, and that was sort of what we were looking at. And we were given not just one, but I think several hypothetical areas by members of the public and also from staff that showed how that would impact it. So that was, that was-
Were they hypothetical or were they real life?
I think there was one real one. I think gentleman back there showed us one that was a real one, that it was actually preventing any development on the property, and then the actual critical area was very small. So, and yet the buffer was a significant portion of the property. So I think there was one hypothetical and maybe one real one, I forget the exact mix on that.
Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Huckabee?
Jeff, in the case where that would occur, that hypothetical, and there was no possibility of development, aren't there some regulations that would allow-
Variances.
Go ahead and continue.
Aren't there some regulations that allow for development on that property, or can we put something in here that would give you some, the ability to take some direction to allow something to go forward where that kind of situation might arise?
So, Councilmember Whitten did answer the question correctly. There is the, we do default for relief from the code to the variance process and the criteria that are already instilled elsewhere in the code. So that would be the case for that. The only other thing I would add quickly is, the Planning Commission did reintroduce this, not as a flat 25%, but on a scaled, on a, on a scaled method where the size of the buffer, and I think Frank just mentioned it in his comments, the size of the buffer as a percentage of the overall site, that's part of the development proposal, would, so for example, if the critical area buffer was 9% of the lot area being proposed for development, you would be able to count up to 9% of your tree retention requirement in the critical area buffer. So it was a, it was a scale that was really dependent on the size of the buffer area on the property. So, and I think the Planning Commission had a lot of discussion about that in wanting to have some sort of proportionality rather than just a flat 50% like in the old code or 25% or just some other number.
Thank you. That confirms in my mind then that I agree with Councilmember Odell, this is really the heart of the tree ordinance, and as long as there's a variance process that is a relief valve, I'm very comfortable with going with no retention, or no credit for the trees in the buffer.
Councilmember Whitten again?
No, I was just going to mention a variance when I heard that original argument, I'm sorry. Because I know that there are definitely ways, and as we know, variances are pretty liberally granted in many circumstances.
Councilmember Jaren?
I have a question. We, we talk about crossing it out in one, are we also talking about in R8, R12, R18 in the office?
That's the section right below there in item 12, so.
So we could do the first one, but not the second one.
We just remove the retention requirements. Remember? We made it all replacement for one.
I see, where did we do that? Oh, up, up above?
Actually, R1, we've already agreed is 50%, I believe.
Yeah.
So that's, that's one change that needs to be made there.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Mayor?
I was just looking at, in, in item 12.
Yep.
One is, includes R1 there. Now, we've already agreed that R1 is now 50%?
That's correct, so that, that code change will roll through.
So that would change.
Yep.
Okay. So on this issue, unless there's someone else who has a comment, I want to get a consensus. Right now, I'm, I'm looking at the, the existing Planning Commission plan. Is there some consensus on that?
To remove it, you mean?
To keep it.
The original one?
Okay, I don't know that we have to vote, but the alternative plan, which is no critical area, buffer.
Credit.
Okay with that? Two, three, four, okay. All right.
Crossing off R1 though, there because it's in the 50% already.
Correct.
It's in 50%, yeah.
Okay, so turning the page again.
Change.
Page, can you tell us, please? Or what the number-
Well, we're on item 13.
Item 13?
Thank you.
Four more to go, five more to go. Now we're rolling, yes.
So item, item 13 isn't a proposed change here at this point, it's something, we just wanted to clarify because we thought it was an important point that Councilmember Whitten raised on September 15th. There was, we, we just wanted to clarify if there was any confusion about the applicability of the shoreline regulations, that these, these tree regulations do not supersede the shoreline regulations with a lesser requirement. So the shoreline regulations with the more extensive requirements supersede these, so.
So we're all good with that?
Yeah, we're all good with that. There'd be no, no, yeah. Simply put, that's it.
Clarification on that then, so is the 80%, is the shoreline 200 feet considered a buffer then? So that if you develop the rest of the lot, you can't count, get credit for the trees in, in the first 200 feet?
No, it's a shore, it's a shoreline regulatory zone, so it's a shoreline regulatory area.
So you'll be able to count the trees in the first 200 feet?
No. 80% tree retention is required in that area. It's a completely different-
I understand that, but for the rest of the development?
50%.
It's 50%.
Yeah.
Can you count the trees in the first 80%, the first 200 feet towards that? Because it's not a critical area, and it's not a buffer to a critical area.
It's, 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 I understand your question, and I think the intent was that the shoreline regulations take precedence in that 200 feet over anything else. So they're part and parcel of each other.
Okay, good.
Okay, let's move to item 14.
Item 14, there was a request to add language for protection of understory and with trees and vegetation. So we've added under section 270, number five, an additional measure within the designated tree protection area, which corresponds back to the drip line definition actually that you looked at earlier. So we think that's good language and is a good addition.
Yeah, I guess the only, you know, and I proposed it actually, but the only issue I have is, is to make sure we're not including under that understory, we're including native shrubs and native plants.
Not blackberries?
Not, not blackberries and not-
Then put native under-
That's what I said, native, and-
So we want to start the word na, native after understory?
Yeah, let's, let's look at what would normally be there in, in that situation.
Native understory trees, shrubs.
Section is, is the protection section, isn't there a section that talks about planting the understory where we would talk about the native plants being planted as the understory?
We're getting to that.
Okay.
Can I do a typo?
Sure.
The clause is to ensure long-term viability of trees and stands identified for protection, comma, permit plans, delete the next, comma, after plan.
Okay. Let's get some consensus or an ad on this.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes.
On paragraph A, should we be adding wording to the effect of along with the number of starting, along with the starting number of significant trees? Or should we get a significant tree count registered on the plant, on the plan?
I'm not sure if I-
Says all minimum tree protection measures shall be shown on the tree protection and replacement plan, but it's silent as to what the starting number is of significant trees.
That's, that's actually a requirement in other areas of the code for complete application for a development proposal.
So they're, they are identified?
That's already covered.
Okay.
And that's something that's already done in practice.
That's my comment then.
Can we get some consensus on this one then? Councilmember Jaren?
I have a question on this. Understory trees, shrubs, and other vegetation shall be protected, that's simply during the construction time period, is that right? Because it says to ensure long-term viability identified for protection, permit plans and construction activities shall comply with the following minimum.
Mm-hmm.
So because you clarified that the drip line and the five feet barrier beyond that, it only applies during the construction, so after construction, they can take out the understory, shrubs, and vegetation, putting grass if they want. Is that correct?
Well, this is, you are correct. We had this conversation earlier this afternoon about this section in another regard, and so this does relate to those specific circumstances. I think from the staff perspective, the thinking was, was that, well, a couple of things. So when, for example, if we're going to talk about subdivisions specifically, typically the areas that are not being subject to site grading, clearing activities are areas that are either being retained for an open space type tract or some other native vegetation tract or open space tract, right? So those are areas that are being repurposed as part of a subdivision into the future in that type of use.
But this is the drip line of all significant trees.
Right.
Which could be a 70-foot diameter, 60 feet plus five feet around it, so 70-foot diameter, that's for, you, you said that that was during the construction activity.
No, that's correct, yeah. No, we did talk about that earlier today, so.
Right, so this whole thing is for construction activity, protection measures?
That's correct.
It's not clear in the reading of it.
It's not clear, and that wasn't my understanding. My understanding was that this, that we were concerned about the fact that frequently a developer will come in, they'll throw a couple of trees in the ground, and then two years later, you've got what you got, and some of them may have died, and some may be sick, and some may be healthy, but you know, just whatever luck would have it, that we were talking about protection measures and measures for keeping the replacement tree understory plantings surviving for a period of time. So am I missing, is there a section that I'm missing that we don't have any comments that would address that issue or, because if this is just during the construction period, that's not very meaningful.
So to go back up to the top of the section, I'm, I'm reading from the actual entire code here, not from the table, but, so the section 270 starts with priorities. Significant trees identified for retention shall be selected to the extent feasible subject to the following order priority, and then it goes through the priority list. And then we go down to subsection three, which is preservation and approval for new development may require significant trees to be retained which are permanently preserved in a tract easement or other permanent protective mechanism. So to get back to Councilmember Jaren's question then, when we get down to subsection five, which is the one we're currently talking about, protection measures, to ensure long-term viability of trees identified for protection, permit plans and construction activities shall comply with the following minimum required tree protection.
I don't see construction, was it, and construction company?
Yeah, I don't think it's limited to construction.
I don't think it's limited to construction activity.
The long-term viability trees identified for protection, comma, permit plans and construction activities shall comply with the following minimum required tree protection. So to go back to our conversation earlier from this afternoon, Councilmember Jaren, your question was specifically in terms of what we talked about was, can those areas be used under a drip line once the construction activities are completed? And the answer this afternoon, which I still believe is correct, is yes, but what this is saying is, this amendment is that understory tree shoves and other vegetation shall be protected. So can they go and be removed in those designated protection areas? The answer is no, because they're being protected long-term per this section, but can those areas be utilized for, and again, the examples we used this afternoon was, you know, kids running through and playing through there, or you know, for some other passive type use, the answer is yes, because those aren't the types of activities we have the ability to go out and force.
So that then takes you back to E, understory trees, shrubs, and other vegetation.
Right.
So what you're saying is that if you keep a significant tree during construction, you have a five-foot, beyond the drip line, five-foot barrier, after construction, you take the barrier out, but you can't touch the, the shrubs, the understory trees, or the vegetation?
That doesn't make sense. I mean, grammatically, it's, it's, it's an inconsistency in the language because this one says specifically, to ensure the long-term viability of trees and stands identified for protection, comma, that's a separate clause. If you try and parse it out, it would be off on its own, and then the subject of your sentence is permit plans and construction activities, and that governs all the sub-items under that section. So this has to be only for the permit plan and construction stage. So if you want to make it long-term, you need to put it in a different section. And I don't, then you need to find out if there's the will of the council to do that.
Yeah, I, I also looked at the designated tree protection area as being pretty vague. I mean, we keep bringing up drip line, but designated tree protection area is a pretty broad description. If that's where I'm having some confusion.
I mean, I think you need, best management practices during construction are one set of tree protection measures, and if you want to do long-term protective measures like preventing excessive pruning, which is what you should be doing, whether it's during or after construction, if it's a preserved tree, unless you're going to remove it under one of those funky sections where you have a number you can take out, then you need to have long-term protective measures that aren't unduly interfering with the homeowners or with the primary structures. You want a yard to play in, you want to keep the trees, but you don't necessarily want to have the protection of the understory because you don't want a forest on a single-family lot, especially if it's small.
This obviously gives the option, you know, because it wasn't taken away during construction, at least the homeowner can say, "I will use some of this land, I won't use the other part of it."
But, but, yes, I agree with you, but I'm saying the measure only is required during the construction phase and the permit phase.
That's the way I read it, and that's, that's why I wanted to clarify.
I mean, there's, you can't, it's a sub-item of what, this is what applies during the construction and the permit planning stage.
So I was one of the guys that suggested inclusion of this language.
Well, it's reasonable for short-term, but for the long-term-
It's also reasonable for long-term because-
Well, but then, then it needs a different section.
Maybe it's a function of the size of the lot, I'll be willing to talk about that.
Yeah.
But if we have a group of trees that are in a cluster, or grove if you want to use that term, and you want to maintain the natural appearance of it, then you have to have a variety of stuff underneath the tree, particularly so that the thing regenerates over time. Otherwise, you wind up with a appearance that looks like that parked in downtown Issaquah with nothing but 100-year-old trees in it. And maybe that's what people want, maybe it's not what they want, but the point, I agree with Don on a single standalone tree, but if we have a bunch of trees and we're moving toward getting bunches of trees, then we probably want to maintain the natural look and feel of it underneath the trees because that is what the trees themselves are used to. Retains the moisture in the ground, it helps with the runoff issues, a lot of different things.
Well, it seems like section 270, which is the tree protection standards.
Yeah.
And we're talking there about the significant trees identified for retention and for protection. This is not just during the construction period, this is long-term. These are the ones we want to protect, and I think our thought was adding in the understory in that section- in that section, so you're protecting not just the trees, but the understory around those significant trees that are part of a continuous canopy, the significant trees in a public park. And most of this talks about stands or clusters of significant trees, not a single tree. So I'm struggling a little bit about why we shift from this long-term perspective in 270 to saying that the protection measures are only viable for the short-term.
Because of the language of the section.
This would be at the top of the section there.
And so it may be that...
So in section five then...
Section five?
Yeah, the one that we're talking about, the one that's...
You know, the ordinance.
Because we're talking about ensuring the long-term viability of these...
Right, so I think what we should do is, we should actually remove the short-term activities from the, as councilmember Witten had suggested earlier, from the preamble language.
Yeah. No, I didn't suggest that. I mean, I'm saying that if you read what's there, how people were suggesting for long-term protection wouldn't fit with the language.
Right, so if we remove the permit plans and construction activities, and the language would reread to ensure the long-term viability of trees for protection, the following minimum standards are required for tree protection.
But this isn't a minimum standard, this is a fairly general...
I, oh, can I make a comment?
Actually, councilmember Huckabee, are you done?
Um, no, my question is...
Okay, ask your question again.
I'm still waiting, I think we're still talking about how we incorporate and where we really address the long-term protection of trees, such that we can also incorporate the understory. And I think that we've got mixed language here between short and long-term, I quite agree, John.
So if I may finish, just quickly, so going back to what I was saying, so for, for the section five, if we remove the short-term activities from that preamble language, and then we install it selectively in A, B, and C...
The short-term?
So for example, 5A would read, "All minimum required tree protection measures shall be shown on tree protection and replacement plans." That's fine, because that's the permit plan part that we're removing from the preamble. B would read, "During construction activities, tree protection barriers shall be installed five feet beyond the drip line of significant trees to be protected prior to any land disturbance." C would read again, "During construction activities, tree protection barriers shall be a minimum four feet high," and then the rest of the section would go on. But then D can remain as, generally as is, because that's then moving into the longer term. What I'm trying to suggest here is, rather than try and capture short and long-term in the preamble, we frame the preamble in the long-term, which starts with "to ensure long-term viability," and then we just specifically select those items where the short-term measures are necessary to ensure the long-term.
For the long-term.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Would you need to put a clause, something in there about except as designated below or something? Yes, Nancy.
I object to the policy changes that you're making. I think that what's appropriate for short-term is very different than for long-term, and I'm very comfortable with this being short-term with all five items. I am not comfortable with D and E, they're too broad, in my opinion, for long-term. I think we need to craft it, and I'm going to say, let's kick the baby down the road until we get our urban forest plan where we can look at, both in terms of landscaping and everything else. You don't want the law of unintended consequences, which we've been hearing about all night, to, to, to throw the things I've been proposing down to the urban growth forest plan. And I think any long-term protections need to be thoroughly vetted, and we haven't had that vetting at the planning commission or with this council, and I don't think we want to craft long-term protection standards that include the retention of understory and stuff, unless it's in a separate tree lot. I mean, you can come up with all sorts of things, but very strict requirements during the construction phase are best management practices that do not necessarily correlate with best management practices afterwards.
I think what this does is it allows the options.
I don't, I am against the policy personally.
No, what I'm saying is, what's here already, with, you know, the, the short-term look, allows for options going down the road for the homeowner.
I, I, yes, well, that's what I'm saying, but don't, don't do what he was saying, which is half and half.
Yeah.
I mean, I make A, B, C, and D, and E, just leave it alone. And take a look under the forest, urban growth forest management plan, at that point, take a look at these and have it vetted at the planning commission with the public and not at the last minute.
Agreed.
Because it's a huge limitation on somebody's ability to deal with their property if it's a single-family home. I mean, you didn't even want to put two trees on a single-family lot as a minimum lot requirement. This should be looked at in terms of that, because if, if you're retaining trees on site, you may not be able to, going back to Don's original comment, to utilize any of your lot as a, as a yard. So I mean, I'm really, I mean, if you can't even do the understory, you know, mine is brambles and blackberries, frankly.
Well, that's, that's the understory, Nancy, but I don't want to, want you to throw out the long-term viability of the trees either.
Well, but I'm saying, kick it down the can until you get to the two tree per lot, and you can take...
Can down, yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you. I always mix my metaphors. So what I'm saying is, take the deep breath and don't have unintended consequences. I've been hearing that all night on some of my ideas, and let this join the parking lot, and make sure it gets captured.
It's a consequence.
Here. Don, please.
It was councilmember Witten to kicking the unintended consequences down the can or whatever. And in fact, if you read D, where it says, "You shall rope off all these barriers," you wouldn't even get any trails in our parks. So I think that this is fine as temporary measures, to protect the trees during construction and, and the understory, but I totally agree.
That still leaves some options for the future to continue to preserve.
That's right.
Mm-hmm, and that's what I'm looking at.
Under the UFM.
Look at permanent understory when we have a little bit more science and a little bit more...
Well, understory, but also the trees, we need to...
Well, the trees are protected, we're not talking about them, we're talking about the understory.
Well, we actually are saying that we are going to protect them after construction.
They're subject to the number of trees.
They're still up the retention.
No, they're still...
Sit under a tree in the park and have a bottle of wine, maybe, and dine.
You do that often?
I understand that, but...
A native brand?
If you're taking away the protection of trees after construction.
No, no, we're not, no, that's, the trees are not involved here, this is just the understory.
So we're only removing E? I heard we're removing D.
No, we're leaving it, we're leaving it as a long.
All by keeping it short-term and moving the long-term to the UFM.
Great.
Okay, we all okay with that?
Yep.
So we're accepting item number 14.
That's correct.
In short-term.
As written.
So you're accepting 14 and adding the word native in front of understory?
That's correct.
We are looking at native, yeah.
Okay.
If they want to take out the blackberries, cut that. Item number 15?
Item number 15 was a request to clarify that water availability would be provided before, during, and after construction.
No. Until project approval, clarify?
Yep.
I mean, once it...
I would accept that.
Until project approval.
Project completion, yeah.
Completion.
And it's only a requirement of the applicant, too.
Are we okay with it?
I guess I don't understand. We're talking about six E, use soil amendments and soil aeration in tree protection and planting areas?
I thought we were talking about G.
G?
No, I thought we were talking about G.
I'm looking at E, though. How can we do that if we're not allowed to touch the understory? Just said that we're going, not allow the understory touched just above that, and now we're saying use soil amendment and soil aeration.
For planting areas, yeah.
For planting areas.
Says in tree protection and planting areas.
Let's just say planting areas.
I think it probably, and this was more something that deputy mayor Huckabee was looking at, and I think you were talking about planting areas more than...
Yes, because as, when Mike Sugie and I went to the urban forest, they, we talked to the gentleman from British Columbia who spoke about the need to have the planting area properly prepared for the trees. And those of us that moved here in some of the new developments know that they scraped the yard, they threw a couple of trees and holes in the ground, and they called it good and went off, and they didn't put any amendment, soil amendments in, they didn't do anything to provide for the long-term viability of those trees.
So what I'm suggesting is, we remove tree protection and include just planting areas?
Yes.
Everything else in this section deals with existing trees.
Yeah, mostly.
And the planting area would deal with replacement trees, I guess.
Yes.
Planting areas for replacement trees, maybe you should say.
For replacement trees and understory.
Well, at least the planting trees.
Well, if you're going to do the understory, you're going to properly soil, right?
You don't need to do it if you could protect the... Okay, we, so we're okay with that otherwise?
Yep.
Okay.
Replacement trees.
We're removing, we're, we're keeping planting areas, which would include...
Or replacement trees.
Which would be replacement trees.
Well, could be for your vegetable garden, too.
No, it's not, this is not about that.
It's the understory and the trees.
Good try.
Okay, let's go to item 16.
Okay.
16 cleans up some language council requested in regards to native, the use of non-native trees. And the such.
Okay, let me see, I've got Don Jaren.
Yes, in G, where we say, "Non-native replacement trees shall be recommended by a certified arborist, having characteristics suitable," couldn't we develop a list of suitable trees? So you don't have to get a certified arborist necessarily every time?
And could you, maybe in the listing, give some indication where it's appropriate or if soil amendments might be necessary for these trees to be used?
I presume some trees would do better in some locations and some would do better.
For example, street trees, you want trees that have certain root structure and so they don't destroy the sidewalks.
So the conversation I recall from the 15th regarding this was that those lists are certainly, is something that we do want to develop, and that we were going to be completing that process as part of the urban forestry management planning effort. So this councilmember Jaren could end up being temporary language in here until we go back and recalibrate a completed urban forestry management plan, and...
Could you maybe just leave...
You'd have to do some code changes to that effect.
Question, could you leave the language to be in the alternative or a listing to be developed by staff?
Sure.
So that if you don't develop the list, then you don't have it, but if you do get the list done, it can go into effect without waiting through that other process?
Good idea.
Yeah.
I would encourage that this list, if it's not just trees that are native to the state of Washington, be trees that are native to the Pacific Northwest, because there's a reason that a lot of the other trees do not exist here already. I know we were looking at changing climatic conditions, but if we restrict ourselves to state of Washington, Oregon, Wyoming, Montana, and perhaps Idaho, I think we'll be good for several decades.
That's not the Northwest.
I, I really don't want people to long-winded, as an example.
That's a Western athletic...
Mayor Huckabee?
If you looked at the Seattle list of trees, which runs about, I think I printed about six or seven pages, the trees are all identified by type, deciduous or coniferous. They talk about where they should be planted. They particularly have talked about the fact that what they're looking at in, in the future is more drought and more pineapple express-type rains. So one of the trees that they have selected and are recommending is a broadleaf evergreen tree. It's a broadleaf oak, it is not native to the area, I'm not suggesting we do that. I think we need to develop our own list of trees, but there are several programs ongoing in the next couple of weeks where master gardeners are doing presentations, either at garden clubs or at some of the local nurseries, talking about the changing climate and the need to look at other trees. So when you're looking at the fact that you've got deciduous trees that drop their leaves during the rainy season, and you've got coniferous trees that will, will stay green all year long, you've got to find the right combination, and I have to admit, everything I'm seeing is somewhat new and somewhat on the speculative side, because nobody knows just exactly how the climate is changing and how long-term it will be. But I think these are all things that I'm really excited about, looking under the urban forestry concept, that we can begin to look at how British Columbia is looking at it, how Vancouver, Washington's looking at it, how Portland is doing some of these things, and we can have a real good conversation about what type of trees and what is native and whether we need to perhaps move away so, from just the native trees in order to address the increasing drought conditions.
Well, Kathy, we're already getting a lot of these trees in, like the gum trees we see around town are not native to this area. I'm going to make a suggestion that for the purposes of getting this particular order just buttoned up tonight...
I am very happy with buttoning it up tonight with native trees.
Let's do native trees and then kick this issue down to the urban forestry.
Or we, as councilmember Witten suggested, if we get a tree list ahead of that, that could come in and step, come in earlier.
We could do that, the study session after staff has researched it or what, but...
Right, whatever.
Mike, you had something to say?
Well, if, if the intent is to capture councilmember Witten's comment about giving the staff the discretion to otherwise approve, I would just suggest at the end of section G, and the end of comma, and then adding, or as may otherwise be approved by the city, that gives the staff the discretion now to approve something that perhaps a city arborist recommends, but it also gives the staff the discretion to develop and implement that list.
Excellent, I concur with that.
Thank you, I like that, too.
I, I concur with that, too, but at the same time, I hope we don't see a bunch of palm trees in the middle of 228th and...
Make some in Aldera now.
You're responsible if there's a lot of palm trees.
I have a question.
Councilmember Witten.
We're still keeping the word primarily native, aren't we?
Yeah, I think so.
So do permit non-native?
Yeah.
Thank you, I just want to make sure that was...
Okay, so we're okay with this as amended?
I have a question. You know, Nancy Bear sent an email around...
She did, where'd it put it?
And we copied it, I, you can hardly read it, it's so small.
Everybody got one.
Is this the lady who came this evening?
Yes, she's the one down by the barricade. She, I think she said she was a master gardener in here, I'm not sure, you'd have to read that, but I think her point was that one of the things that are really important are coniferous trees and what they do in terms of water retention and stuff.
Yes.
And I would, and wondered if we couldn't give an incentive somewhere...
For native evergreen trees.
Right, yeah, to put non-native, to give a special emphasis to coniferous trees rather than other native trees, not that, maybe, and I'd do it through an incentive. And I would say, you know, in terms of, if you read, for every, say, over 50%, if replacement trees or, or retention trees, if over 50% of them are coniferous, then you get a credit for, on your replacement, for maybe 25% or something, 50%, I mean, I don't know what it would be, but you, you're doing that.
We can leave the staff discretion.
Well, we can't, we can't, we can't bring this back another day.
No, that's too complex.
Could we maybe, I mean, I like the idea.
Can we then make sure Nancy Bear's comments get incorporated into the parking lot?
Or to the UFM?
Because I think the incentive to use coniferous trees is probably a really good one, and it would help keep the character of the city, I think is important.
15? Two. 16, rather. We're done with 16. Let's go to 17.
Item 17 is a three-parter. And these are, the foundation of item 17 is from the Master Builders Association. Critical area buffer replanting, offering a credit for that, street tree credits, and being allowed to plant in stormwater facilities. So for, for the street tree credit, we've actually provided four options for you in that table at the top. You can plant, it would be a one-to-one credit, which I believe was the request of the Master Builders.
I don't know where my name got in here. I don't remember making a recommendation on this.
They're crowding me out, dude.
I know.
Well, there was, just based on the discussion on the 15th, but focusing on the options, there's four options. There are one-to-one street tree planting. It'd be a straight-up one-to-one. Or it would be a one-to-one credit for each street tree planted over the minimum requirement for street trees. A .5 credit, which was discussed on the 15th, and then a .5 credit for everyone over above the minimum. So, or if you're not interested in any of that, then it would stay as-is and street trees don't get any sort of recognition towards the replanting requirement.
Do we have a requirement under our current standards that require to have street trees?
Yes, I believe we do. As landscaping.
And can we possibly increase the intensity of that with potential credits here?
Is there value to increasing the intensity?
And then that's where I'm going to talk to the council. I mean, there's some significant values having street trees. It helps us on the storm drainage. It helps us on air quality. It also helps us particularly in the median areas, gives us narrow roadway perception to control the speed. So there are multiple reasons. I don't know how we want to handle it in terms of how much credit you want to give, but you need to provide some incentives to have more of it rather than less of it.
And I think that was the foundation of Mr. Hoffman's suggestion, which is essentially option A, which was a one-to-one recognition towards the replanting requirement.
Okay, Councilmember Witten, did you have your button pressed?
Oh, I'm reluctantly going to support this because I think I need to compromise on some things. And I think this is a good point to compromise on.
Councilmember Jaren.
Thank you. If you refer back to 280...
I'm sorry.
We're replacing landmark trees with three new trees. We're replacing heritage trees with two new trees. So if you have a forested lot and you cut down 65% of the trees, or maybe 50% in a lot of the areas, and then you replace, now you build your buildings, and now you're going to replace all those forested trees with multiple number of trees, I think you have to keep in mind, as the city manager said, that the street trees are important and they should be counted. And in fact, you should also encourage additional street trees if practical. I don't think it was, in Klahani, they made a big mistake when they put the street trees in. They didn't have a wide enough buffer area.
They didn't put a barrier.
They can put root barriers. It doesn't have to be wide enough. So they can put the root barriers.
That's why you need a wider street width, even if you don't pave it all.
Root barriers and the right kind of trees.
Yeah.
So I would support option A, which is each street tree replaced shall be counted as one replacement tree.
Council, or Deputy Mayor Huckabee?
Okay, this is the second time tonight that I'm going to quote Eileen Stahl. "We live on a plateau, and street trees, yes, I agree, are a wonderful thing. They really beautify the neighborhood, beautify the streets, but they do not serve the stormwater function that you mentioned. Typically, street trees are deciduous trees. Our rain comes in the late fall, wintertime. The street trees have no leaves on them. So they don't really perform that function during that period of time when we really need them to. If we could do street trees that were conifers, that would be a totally different story, and I'd be more than happy to give credit for that."
Or any other evergreen type of tree?
Evergreen type. I, I'll go back and I'll mention the broadleaf evergreen that Seattle has been talking about, the broadleaf oak, which does make, keep their leaves in the wintertime.
No, they don't, Kathy. Oaks drop their leaves.
Broadleaf evergreen oak keeps its leaves, according to the Seattle tree list.
Is that what we planted in Klahani?
Yeah, it's called an evergreen tree.
He's looking in the Bible.
So anyway, if we had, if there were a conifer-type tree or a tree where we could actually, where it had that stormwater function, I would be happy to give it a one-for-one credit. But it's not performing the stormwater function that we would like it to. So if we give it a credit at all, it would be a significantly reduced credit, maybe to .25. I wouldn't even give it a half because it, I just don't see that it is...
Do we get, just as an aside, do we get into the issue of, particularly with those types of trees, their growing levels and so on, where we're now having the problem that Klahani has had in some areas where they, the root systems have cracked sidewalks and...
I think that we've put in the root buffers. That, my understanding is that, we've talked about that over the years. Aren't our street trees primarily put in? And we have the root buffers so that they don't crack the sidewalk?
That's correct. That's what we did. We put the root barriers on 228 Avenue in the first, second, and third phase. Right, John? You and I built the first three phases.
That's on 228. Do we require developers to do that when we put street trees in?
It's part of our standards that we do. We do. I think that Deputy Mayor, the storm drainage is one aspect, so perhaps we can take a look at a different type of trees to function much better in that regard, as you suggested. But the other aspects of the water qualities and the perception of the creating the narrow road rather than making it look like airport landing strips, so to speak.
I couldn't agree more. I think the aesthetics are definitely there. And most of the aesthetics are on our part when we're building the streets as opposed to a developer putting in street trees. So that, to me, are two different topics. So from my perspective, I would prefer, again, until we get a better sense of what type of trees we can plant, I would prefer to kick this can down the road also to the urban forest until we can identify the appropriate type of trees that we would want to have as street trees and give those appropriate credits.
Okay, Ben, you've already spoken, so... Next is Romero.
Yeah, we've talked about the functions of trees much beyond stormwater. And the implication for most of the citizens is about the character of the trees as well in our city. And they're not just looking and limiting it to stormwaters. There are safety applications that have been mentioned and implied by the city manager. There is also issues as far as wider right-of-ways that can be taken into account here. And then there's an emotional issue that goes in. And as you may remember, southeast 14th Street, when we were going through there, they held us up because there was one street tree that the family was around, and they were taking us to court to be able. And in the end, we had to accommodate that street tree for that neighborhood. So it's much more than just the stormwater function that's taking place here. And we have to look at the safety applications, the emotional, the canopy side. Staff is supportive of this. The Planning Commission members have stated they're supportive of this. The one that makes sense is the one-to-one. There's also a consistency in the application of this. Depending on the size of the lots, if you don't include street trees, each one then is putting in slightly different variations of 36%, 37%. So there's a consistency factor on it. So for all of those reasons, as well as common sense, I would recommend option A, that one-for-one tree replacement. What, no, I went and talked with staff and the Planning...
I don't see anything here. This is the Planning Commission is...
No, as I had mentioned, I had talked to the Planning Commission members.
I didn't hear Frank say that earlier.
No, no, this is in the discussions with Evans. I had discussions with the Planning Commission, I mentioned on the last time.
Well, okay, Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. Our development regulations already call for street planting. In a sense, this is similar to the allowing credit for trees that are in buffers, et cetera, setbacks, whatever. And I still have the same kind of problem with option A as I did with that. However, option B, where each street tree planted in excess of the minimum, and I would add the word existing requirement, shall be counted as one replacement tree. To me, that's a net gain. The other is not. And I really don't care for C or D for the reasons I just said. But B does give us a net gain, and I would be willing to allow that. I guess one thing we have to be cognizant of is we don't want them planting trees every four feet because that's not going to be very good in the end either, so.
You could say as approved by staff.
Well, right. Per the existing regulations, is what I said.
We're going to assume that we wouldn't be planting trees too close together? Okay. Councilmember Keller?
I actually agree with Councilmember Odell here. I felt the same way. The connection between the last one is, is this a net gain or not? I have a question, though. I'd like clarification because we've talked about this being landscaping. And I'm evaluating this as, right now, there is a requirement. And this says minimum requirement. What is that? Could you give me just a very brief description from B? What would be the minimum requirement?
For street tree plantings?
Yes.
My understanding is, and maybe Andrew, I don't know if he's still here, can elaborate on this, but my understanding is that averages out to about one tree for every 30 linear feet, so.
And if we were, I mean, would it be reasonable we were talking about putting too many trees in there? If we were saying that we were going to give you a one-for-one over and above what that minimum is, would that be too many trees in that area?
And I think that gets back to the species selection, right? And so any plan would have to be approved by the city and specifically by Public Works for that. So if they're going to cram a bunch of trees in saying, well, here, look, we're planting five times the requirement, approve our plan for street trees.
And would it also, my question would also be, though, would it change the quality of the tree? Would they, could they be picking a quality of a tree that would be lesser because they would be getting credits for anything above what would be the required?
Right. So we have a street tree list. So A, you're going to have to select off that list to start with. And then B, you're going to have to put together a street tree plan as part of your development proposal. Then that would allow for the appropriate maturation of those trees within, within the right-of-way.
Deputy Mayor Huckabee, again?
Oh, I was glad that Councilmember Keller asked that question because Councilmember Witten has referenced the development on 32nd that has no street trees.
No, I said no trees on the lots.
On the lots.
There may be on the street. I'm not sure. You could look at it. It's denuded of all trees in the houses that are cramped next to each other.
There are a few trees in front of the houses either.
Yeah, probably, yeah. I mean, it just, it stands out like a sore thumb.
And, thank you for pointing that out, Councilmember Odell. I think I would be comfortable with option B, that if we're going to get a net improvement in trees, and my street trees are about 20 feet apart, and we're very happy with them the way they are, so. And I think they're, by picking off the list, we could have people actually put in more street trees, which would not impair their long-term viability. And then we could provide a credit in that case.
Councilmember Keller?
Oh, I'm sorry. I had to say...
Okay, Councilmember Jaren?
Thank you. I was just thinking, Councilmember Odell said our development regulations right now has street tree plantings as a requirement. That's true, but our development regs also had no replacement requirement at all for significant trees. Now we're talking about one-to-one replacement or even two or three-to-one replacement. We're going to have plenty of trees to create the canopy over the years. And to not count the street trees, they're not going to be able to do it on the lot. As a compromise, I would say let's go to D then, where you count the street trees as one half of the replacement and any additional ones as one replacement.
I would accept that.
Councilmember Witten?
I would accept that also. And I would say any additional trees should be as approved by staff because even if they're on the approved list, if the trees are too clumped together to be shoved in there, they're not going to survive. It's not a viable long-term plan. So you want to have some kind of a tree plan as approved by staff.
One more time, Councilmember Keller?
Yeah, I would like to say first that we do have other alternatives of planting other than on the street as well. I mean, we want to give, if we're going to have all these trees planted, it's a wonderful opportunity to do this retention ponds or stormwater retention as well as our parks even as a receiving zone. So we'll find places for all these trees and increase our canopy. But I think I could be, I could accept D as well.
C is what they were talking about?
No, D.
D as in David.
The D, okay.
All right.
Do we have consensus on D then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We have four people. We got to, we got to... Actually, I was reading for C, but let's, I'll just forget that.
We haven't done the critical area buffer replanting, have we?
I think that's the next section here, I believe.
Middle of 17 has tree replacement standards.
Yes.
Critical area, one is above it. Street tree credits, but we haven't done the critical area.
Oh, yeah, the one I have above it. That's correct.
So we need to address that one before we forget about it.
Yes, we do need to cover that, and so if you have any...
The core question there is, is the council interested in incentivizing planting in critical areas and/or buffers?
Obviously, this would be in cases where the critical area has been damaged or otherwise, you could use more trees.
Exactly.
Whatever, for whatever reasons, it needs more trees.
Right, and the council did have a prior conversation about this, I believe on the 15th. It might have been Councilmember Odell, actually, that highlighted the notion that we want to direct enhancement and the improvement of our critical area and critical area buffers.
Replanting trees. The real question is, at what level are we going to do that?
Well, I think we should give them full credit. If we're asking them to, I mean, that's a sensitive area. We want to protect it. We want to preserve it. If it's going to enhance it.
Exactly.
I said, give them a full credit. That's a good thing to do.
I only want to do it for onsite, though. I don't want to do it for offsite.
Onsite, yeah, that's right.
No, I don't want to, personally, I'm objecting to offsite credit, credit for planting offsites.
We're talking about onsite.
One-to-one offsite.
But there are two. There's onsite and then there's offsite. So Nancy's saying she would...
Why would you not be giving credit for offsite? I mean, it's our city.
One-to-one.
One-to-one.
Should there be a requirement that the priority be given to the onsite first?
Yes.
I think it is.
Onsite first? Let's clear, when you said onsite first.
First priority for replanting is onsite. Then when you run out of space there, you go offsite.
Well, but we have...
Well, not only state, but it has to be an improvement.
It has to be, you know, it has to be, it has to make sense, essentially.
I mean, you can't just simply go out there...
Okay, I'm going to put in 10 more trees.
From our wetland bios to see that if it makes sense to do that. When we get the application. Right, Kathy?
Two-for-one onsite, one-for-one offsite in critical area buffers?
Very good.
We got that? Also, the trees planted within or as part of stormwater facilities?
I'm for a one-for-one credit.
That is what we got.
Are we okay for one-for-one on that?
Yeah, we're good.
That's what we'd agreed to before?
Yep.
Okay, so we're done with that one?
Just stormwater facilities or other approved city property?
We could open it up, I suppose, there could be a hierarchy- in the forestry? Yeah, let's, let's do that then, and we could take a-
Where do we do the offsite thing to give flexibility? I don't see that in here.
That's going to be in the urban forestry units.
So, so there's a-
When we do sites. The one that's been whining about her trees falling down-
The mosque?
With a fifty percent retention and three or four acres forest.
So, what we've agreed to is, in terms of critical area, buffers, two-to-one or one-to-one offsite, and in terms of stormwater facilities, one-to-one wherever they're located.
I would suggest that we, not, I, I would prefer just to kick the can down the road on all the replacement facilities.
Well, I think let's start with this.
If you've got a consensus already on this one.
I think we only are allowing the garden clubs to do one stormwater facility. They've been asking for years to plant them, and for some reason, there seems to be some reluctance to allow them to do so.
We could re-invisit that.
I, I think we should give as, in the discretion of the, as approved in the discretion of the director. I, I really think it has to make sense for viability, and there may be, you can't, they can't just plan to do it in the stormwater-
The viability of the trees, but the viability of the stormwater facility.
Staff maybe would have to do a regulation to describe criteria or circumstances.
We could start with the ugliest ones first.
Consensus on this, let's move to the next item.
Box with all the red ones doesn't, don't apply anymore, because we've gone to-
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll just cross that off.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to eighteen?
Last but not least, I saved this one-
Jail time.
For Mike, for Mike to bring it home for us. There was a request for criminal penalties, and legal crafted this language to add a new section at the end of the chapter.
I have a comment.
Okay, Councilmember Whitten.
I want to see the city throw the book only at those developers who are intentionally and willfully and fragrantly, I'm sorry.
Well, this doesn't, this doesn't say developers.
I know, but what I'm saying is, this is not quite what I had envisioned. I want the city to have the tool in the toolbox when you have a developer who may do it on a weekend, who, we had one that created a lot of grief for neighbors on-
Two oh seventh.
Well, I wasn't going to say where.
Oh.
But, but you want to be able to throw the book at them, and so, the, this is fine as far as it goes, but I also want to see it be much stronger and have, and/or imprisonment by no less, more than three months or whatever the typical language is, where it is willful.
I think, I think at this point, before we all start weighing in, I'd rather take this to Mike and get a clarification on the language.
Yeah, the, the old prosecutor in me, and I do mean old, tells me to, suggests that in the second line, comply with any of the requirements, shall be, shall be guilty of a gross misdemeanor, not just misdemeanor. If we make it the gross misdemeanor change, then the judge does have the discretion to impose a fine up to five thousand dollars, and also has the discretion on a gross misdemeanor, Nancy, to impose jail time of up to a year. Now, I'm not suggesting that very many judges would do that, it would have to be truly egregious, but-
But when you're interpreting this language then, and you've referenced just the five thousand and not the imprisonment, that would be an indication.
Penalty for a gross misdemeanor is maximum five thousand dollars and one year in jail. And this will be in a court, so it'll be up to the judge to decide what to impose.
So, this has no less than five thousand? So, why don't you just say and apply-
Well, let's, let's let him give, give us a recommendation.
If it's a criminal matter, the maximum penalty for a gross misdemeanor is five thousand dollars and one year in jail. So, that's, we'll need to make that change. Judge, cities do not have authority to create crimes higher up than gross misdemeanor, that is, can't create felonies, only the county can-
Well, that's why I said three months.
Right, so, that'd be a misdemeanor, one thousand dollars and three months, gross misdemeanor is five thousand dollars and one year maximum.
So, we need to change that out, no less than five thousand?
So-
No, I said, no.
Want to get clarification from-
So, I'd suggest, second line, comply with any of the requirements, shall be guilty of a gross misdemeanor, and subject to the penalties, blah, 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 and suggest that the court should consider the imposition of a maximum fine of five thousand dollars, because that's what state law says. The next sentence goes on to say that each day is a separate violation. Again, I, I don't want to create false expectations that a judge in a criminal matter will very often impose anything other than a fine, but he or she certainly does have the discretion to impose jail time.
Can we add the word willful? I mean, should we add the word willful?
Or does that actually raise the bar higher?
Yeah, it does, I would, I would not recommend that.
I think you're raising the bar.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can you go by the buttons?
I will, but I was, just wanted to check with Mr. Canyon first. Don. Don receive.
Well, it says the penalty set forth in SMC one point one zero point zero one zero. If you go to Exhibit Three, Attachment B, we have our assessment schedule, and that doesn't agree with the five thousand dollars, and to have a five thousand dollar per occurrence and each day being an occurrence is totally ridiculous. I mean, you have to give a certain reasonable time to contact and to give them time to make a correction before you start piling on five thousand a day. If you look at the twenty-three one hundred oh one oh, it's talking about a hundred dollars a day in the first fifteen days and two hundred and fifty a day after that. So, what are we doing here? They seem contradictory.
I'm sorry, it's the difference between a civil penalty, which is what twenty-three one hundred oh talks about, and a criminal fine. But I do suggest that not very many judges would be happy to see a criminal case in his or her courtroom about a tree violation, if however, one was egregious enough, we would certainly work on a certificate of probable cause with the police and see if it can be filed with our prosecutor.
So, it'd be really only the most egregious cases?
Yeah, and it takes-
That you could imagine.
City prosecutor would have to sign off that there's probable cause to believe the crime occurred.
Okay.
Give them a proper time, a notice and things like that?
Yes, and that we would.
Rather than starting the next day as another occurrence?
I think that would be only in the rarest of occasions. Code enforcement, as you know, is generally complaint-driven. We have had the, the example that Councilmember Valdarama mentioned and a few others of truly egregious conduct. This is a tool that can be used to combat that type of conduct.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm asking, do we have consensus on this as-
Does my button work?
Do you want to ask my question?
They're always pushing our buttons.
All right.
Push his button.
Councilmember Odell.
One of the, I, I, two things. First of all, this criminal penalties will be on top of the civil penalties, correct? In addition to-
They are alternative means, yes.
Or complementary, per the ordinance.
Complementary?
Oh, yeah, I should have said that, yes.
Okay.
They're, they're not mutually exclusive, so.
The second thing I was going to ask about was, we do have one or two frequent flyers in this kind of problem in the city, and a lot of the line of Nancy's wanting to throw the book at them, I do as well. Is there any way we could have a multiplier on either the civil or criminal penalties for repeat offenders?
On the criminal penalties, we could not, that's just jurisdictional, the state has only given us that maximum authority, although if you could prove multiple violations, in theory, the judge could impose up to five thousand for each one, that, that is not likely to occur. The, the, the city has a bigger hammer pursuing a code violator civilly, not only because judges are more inclined to impose a civil penalty than a criminal fine, but when you go after them civilly, at least in Superior Court, the judge has what's called equitable authority and can impose an injunction, or can order a property owner to actually take an action. Criminal judges can't, they can just put someone in jail or make them pay a fine.
So, in the case of a civil penalty, a repeat offender who keeps doing this within the city, can they get out of it simply by forming another LLC? Or can the penalty be attached to the individual in question?
We can certainly make an argument that is sort of effectively piercing the corporate or other legal entity shell to convince, try to convince a judge that you have the same driver behind multiple entities. You may recall, we did that successfully in the Kinder Ace case. So, yes, we can make that argument, have to have the facts, have to have the evidence to, to prove it. You know, the counter to that is people are entitled to form separate entities, and each separate entity is by definition a separate entity, but if we can link the behavior, then judges, I'll put it this way, judges know when they're, when someone, when a party to litigation is trying to skirt the rules, and judges don't like it either.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember or Deputy Mayor Huckabee.
I'm just delighted to have this in the code. I think having this type of hammer, and despite what Councilmember Jaren says, is that we should be very cautious about it, I know we've had some recent experiences where people have sent emails out and said they're going to take the trees down. We have an arrangement with the neighborhood behind us to protect the trees and the greenbelt, and we have first right of refusal, and yet, before we were a city, we woke up at five o'clock in the morning to the trees being cut down, and the owner saying, I paid a lot of money for this property, I deserve to be able to take those trees down, and we had nothing to be able to fight against that. So, to, to be able to have this sort of strong enforcement when an individual property owner decides to take the matters into their own hands and cut the trees down, I, I just, I'm just really, really pleased, because I think most people that I talk to are concerned more with the neighbors or individuals as opposed to developers taking trees down unlawfully.
If I could just briefly, Mayor, the, the angry Turkish fellow to my left has heard loud and clear from the council, as have we, that you want more aggressive action taken on egregious code enforcement cases, and we are prepared to do that. I think if we saw something like the example Ramiro mentioned, we'd probably recommend that we not just impose a fine in the normal code enforcement process, we'd probably recommend that we go straight to Superior Court on that, get a warrant of abatement, get an injunction, get those fines imposed, get our attorney fees recovered, which your ordinance allows, and that, that sends a message, right? It's something that probably should be used sparingly, because most people maybe, well, I would say most code violators really aren't trying to pull a fast one, and most of the time, once the city contacts them, the problem gets solved, and that's what we want. But I can show you examples of a two hundred thousand dollar judgment on a code enforcement case we got for Burie, and a hundred thousand dollar judgment for Boffel, when people really needed to know that, so.
Councilmember Keller.
Actually, the explanation you just gave right now really helped me, and I was listening to the passion of, you know, let's throw the book, let's do this, and really concerned, you can feel the impact that the monetary fine would be for somebody doing this is big with what we're looking at now, and now we're talking about a gross misdemeanor for somebody cutting a tree down, and I'm, I'm wondering, you know, how do you apply this across the board also? I mean, can you indiscriminately say, well, this guy was really bad, so we're going to go after them, this one wasn't so bad, so we're not going to? It needs to be applied consistently, so I would be concerned that we get too heavy-handed with this, even though the passion is there to do that, I, I think there needs to be a voice of reason as to how we're going to apply this, and if we go too far to gross misdemeanors and, and that sort of thing, is it okay to apply it differently across the city?
Yes, it's not okay, obviously, to apply it arbitrarily or unconstitutionally, but there, there are easy to discern differences between the person who builds a deck without a permit versus the example that, say, Ramiro was talking about, and judges don't have any problem discerning that distinction.
I guess my question, though, is, you know, that, that significant of an infraction that we had, and I mean, it was claims of the person looking in the window and all kinds of things, actually criminal intent going on in that.
But even the clear-cutting of the trees was criminal intent.
Right, but, but I'm just saying, it was, it went beyond really what we're talking about, so are we building, you know-
Mr. City Manager, you wanted to interject in there?
After the Councilmember Keller.
Okay.
I'm just saying, are we building a penalty for that one exception?
Yes, if it gives you the hammer.
Well, I don't think so. I gave you the example that, that we experienced, where the property owner actually called the police because, and told the police that we were trespassing on his property. This person was determined, because they paid a certain amount of money for their property, that they were entitled to clear three feet into the greenbelt so that they could put in a playset for their child, and they didn't care what the neighbor said, what their neighbor said, what, what we said, despite the legal agreement between the two communities.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. More tools that you give us that we can keep on our toolbox, the better we're equipped to deal with these issues. I would encourage you to put this in our toolbox. I didn't have this tool previously, and we had one that it was very egregious. It was terrible, it was disgusting, it was, it was like to your face saying that I'm going to do this thing, and I'm going to get away with it. I got to have this tool in our toolbox. Obviously, we're going to be very careful how we use it in our code enforcement actions, as the city attorney articulated very well. I, I understand, Councilmember Keller, your concern, and, and we, obviously, we'd be very judicious with this thing. But if I have this tool, it would also set the tone for those violators that play by the rules, you'll be okay. If you don't play by the rules, we'll go full, full pledge.
I would, I would encourage you guys to consider-
Consensus? Do we have consensus on it?
Yep.
I have one more comment.
Oh, yes, I forgot, yes.
I don't think, know how it fits into this, but I think it's really, really critical that we have a telephone number to call someone and make a code complaint on a weekend and on the, and the evenings, and I think that we-
Have those numbers in pub, but we will get it updated again.
I mean, I think we need to make it front-page news so that everybody, I didn't know we did, that we realize that there's someone we can call, because the developers used to, there were a few that didn't abide by the rules, and they said, oh, you want to take down a tree, do it on a weekend or in the evening.
We do have an on-call person on the maintenance division that, and, and we will, we'll get those numbers available again.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jaren, I mean, Odell, you had a final thought?
Well, I was going to move an option.
Well, this is-
That's the last one.
That's what we're coming to, but let's, let's first start with, are we, do we have consensus on this last part?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Next, any other issues we haven't discussed?
No. No.
No.
No.
Okay.
I, I had Nancy Bowers, and it's going to be moved to the parking lot.
We, we all got that, so.
Bowers or Bear.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt the ordinance included, as amended, included in Exhibit Three, as further modified by City Council today, to amend Chapter twenty-one A dot fifteen, Chapter twenty-one A dot thirty-five, Chapter twenty-three dot L one hundred, and establishing a new Chapter twenty-one A thirty-seven of the Samamish Municipal Code, SMC pertaining to tree regulations and code compliance, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. I think Councilmember Odell wants to make the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I so move, thank you.
Second?
Second. Three seconds.
It's high.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay.
I want to thank my community development director and also all of staff that worked so diligently on this one. So, Jeff, thank you so much for a great job on this.
One to go.
Mr. Mayor, can I suggest a five-minute comfort break?
Yeah, just a five minutes.
We got to find a tree.
Only five minutes, and then we'll be back.
Careful, too much.
Pacific Standard Time or the council time?
I don't know.
About five minutes. Let's get started again. Not a whole lot left on the agenda, but I do want to go to council committee reports. Not everybody's here, so if we could do this fast, we won't have as many reports. Okay, we got, we're missing the ladies. Okay, we're getting started here, soon as we get one more or two more people. Do we have some council committee reports tonight? Well, you got to plug in if you want to do it. Okay. We're going to start with committee reports. Councilmember Jaren?
Well, not committee reports, so I'll take mine off.
Okay. Do you have one?
Yeah, I just wanted to update on EFR, the personnel committee. We're meeting tomorrow, so I don't really have a report, but just to give you an update that we're going to get an update on the chief, the resumes that have been submitted up to date. We're going to meet to talk about the interviewing process a little bit, and then we're going to talk about policy for the administrative salaries.
Okay.
So, really, that's it. SCA, nothing to report right now. The information's, the packet of information's going to come out this week, so.
Okay. Councilmember Odell?
Before I go on, Bob, did you mention the fact the chief and Vanessa's retirement?
Oh, I actually, in my notes, I had that. No, I didn't. Go ahead, or if you want me to.
Is your microphone on?
Yeah. The chief is retiring early. He announced that he's going to retire in the end of November instead of the beginning of February, or the end of February, excuse me. One of the comments that I'd make is, as soon as that announcement came out, I really made some personal phone calls to some of the district representatives on the board to just get an idea, you know, how, you know, how that would affect us with the chief leaving a little bit early. And everybody was very supportive, you know? The chief has a great operational team in place, so, you know, we should be good. Obviously, we'll miss the chief when he leaves, but in particular, operations will be good, and it's going to be the administrative deficit that we have. And the fact of the matter is, we'd have that if he left in November or if he left in February, so. So, I think everything's good. The chief is leaving us, you know, in good hands, and hopefully, from an interviewing process, that'll get expedited then somewhat.
Councilmember Odell?
Thank you. I want to briefly discuss RIA 8, which occurred on September 17. It's getting to the end of Larry Phillips' tenure as the chair of this, so they're looking for a new chair, one more meeting in which he'll be chair. There were discussion of habitat status and trends. The news on the salmon return for this year is not good.
Is that overall or just coconut?
Well, this is at the Ballard Locks, which go into Lake Washington and the RIA 8, feed into the RIA 8 area. It's among the lowest, for Chinook, it's among the lowest on record, and sockeye percentages are even lower. So, overall, it's not been a good year at all. A lot of concern there about what's going on with ocean conditions in addition to conditions within the lake watershed. We had one, it's a very interesting presentation on recycled water from Brightwater, the Brightwater Plant. Apparently, a good deal, and I didn't know this, but a good deal of the Snoqualmie Valley agricultural area is being watered by recycled water, which is absolutely great because the, one of the things they can't get out of the effluent are all the nutrients. So, the nutrients actually act as fertilizer for the plants and help that out as well. So, I don't want to turn anyone off on farmers' market, but a lot of what comes off out of the farmers' market, frankly, is probably generated by this process. I think it's a very good example of what we can do with stuff we make our mind up for. So, Mr. Mayor, that's my report.
Yes.
At Salmon Days, they had one whole organization protesting the use of recycled water, that they claimed sewage all over and food and whatnot, so.
Oh, dear. What organization was that?
You know, sewage something or another. Oh, at the Fish Hatch and doing whatnot.
That, just for the record, absolutely not true. The water is crystal clear, and if you wanted to drink it, you could, but it's not sort of a-
But it also has things like caffeine in it and also drugs filtered through.
Caffeine.
It's a mixed bag. It's not as clean as they say.
Is this Starbucks protesting?
Deputy Mayor Huckabee?
Yes, I also have a report on EFNR, and it relates to the regional fire authority that District 10 and District 38 are planning on. This week is our board meeting on Thursday. The intent was to have an update on the regional fire authority from 10 and 38, and then a discussion around potential changes to our inter-local agreement and to the nonprofit. And I want to thank Councilmember Witten because she had suggested at one point that the nonprofit be limited to just payroll, and we're talking about possibly also financial services, but this gives us an opportunity to go back and take another bite at that apple. Well, this Thursday, we are going to have the RFA Planning Committee do an update, and we're talking about a process then for all five partners to get together and have a conversation about what changes will be made to the ILA and to the nonprofit agreement. We had, when we thought we were going to make, have that discussion this week, we had a bit of a fire drill, and we met with Lyman, and our proposal will be to come up with an ad hoc committee similar to the operations committee. One policy member and one staff member from each of the partners as an ad hoc committee to sort through all of the different issues that need to be addressed. And there were a number of issues that, for example, Ben brought up, the fact that D-10 owes us money from the time that we left D-10, and some other things that may get overlooked that we need to make sure do not get overlooked in the process. So, that's where we are, and they're hoping to actually put on the ballot in November the fire benefit charge in District 10, and then they're hoping to go to the ballot next year. Is it April?
April, I think, is when they would like.
April for, they're, they're shooting for April for the regional fire authority to go to the ballot, which will again entail the regional fire authority and the fire benefit charge for the regional fire authority. Quite an ambitious undertaking, I would think, so we'll see how it goes.
Yes, Councilmember Witten?
One really important thing I think in this context is, if you go to a nonprofit, you do not want a majority to be able to hurt us financially in terms of purchases, funding a training center, for example, which you could currently, I believe, do. I mean, if you're going to do the nonprofit and so on, you really need to capture that and make sure legal counsel is, or scrutinize it with that in mind.
And actually, I appreciate that because at the meeting, several meetings ago, there were several attorneys that presented, and there was an attorney, Joe Quinn, who is very familiar with RFA law and potential changes in legislation, and we thought we might have a conversation with him because there are some things, as we found out, if currently under, if there were a 5% annexation, there is a property transfer. If under the RFA, there is a 5% annexation, there's no property transfer. So, there are some things that we need to educate ourselves on also under the RFA legislation so we will understand from a long-term perspective how we will relate to this new entity.
Anyone else for council reports? Okay, Nancy, you don't have? Okay, and Kathy, you're done? Councilmember Valderrama?
Well, first of all, we finished off the summer season and the farmers' market, another tremendous year. The nice weather helped us have record crowds as we were going out there, so I wanted to recognize that activity. Yesterday, Citizens for Sammamish meant, they also had concerns overriding conversation was focused on the Cascadia Rising Exercises, and so it'd be good if, that those questions be addressed. Additionally, over the weekend, on Friday and Saturday, with Councilmember Jaren, we had attended some of our local football teams, which I shouldn't mention, are undefeated in conference play to this day, all three high schools. But several citizens came up to us asking about the trail and what's taking place on the trail in the northern section. Again, on the following day, Sunday, or it was Saturday, Sunday, we were back out on the trail. Again, there are quite a few number of customer service issues still taking place in the north. A number of them were reported to us here at this council in public opinion months ago, are still unresolved, and the discontent. So, given that we have not scheduled that meeting with King County, as has been seen in the emails and Councilmember Witten and Jaren, I'm willing to schedule the meetings directly with Council, King County Councilmember Lambert and Hague, with the council members of the willing that are willing to go and meet, unless I get a quick meeting scheduled here in the interim with the executive's office and those council members because the customer service issues is now, every time we go someplace, we're hearing about them.
I think I sent an email out yesterday suggesting that some of those issues are still unresolved.
Oh, yeah.
A number of them are, and in fact, it might be difficult to have any kind of serious discussion with staff without knowing the result of some of the inquiries. And I suggested that we work with staff and the deputy mayor and whoever in staff, I presume Jeff and who else, Jesse, I guess, that, and I also spoke to Councilmember Kathy Lambert. She's willing to join us if we were to have an update on what we know about those things, but I think we ought to have that update when we know about those things. So, that is something I talked to her about over the last couple of days, and I think we can probably set that up, but I don't want to have a meeting where we say, "Well, we're looking into this, but we don't know what the result is. We've got some geotechnical issues on this, you know, stormwater issue, but we don't know what the result is." I think when we do know the result, I think we should have an update from staff. Speaking to Councilmember Lambert, she also suggested that we could at least ask county staff to join us if they wish, if they can, but certainly have that kind of an update when all the facts are in.
A number of these, the facts are in, they've reported it here in public.
And some of those, I'm not so sure, from what I'm hearing from Kathy Lambert.
Apparently, Kathy Lambert had been given some misinformation as to the status of them, and that's what would be-
By whom, Ramiro?
For example, she understood that on the property of the Chapmans who were here, that the ramp had been fixed. The ramp hasn't been touched by King County.
So, King County staff gave her a wrong-
That's correct. So, she's getting the wrong information from King County. She's been invited to go visit and see the actual, and which Councilmember Jaren and I did over this weekend to go visit, that it hasn't been touched and it's still impassable.
Well, maybe we could get-
The drainage issues still haven't been addressed. Eight houses have been denied their claims. So, there's a number of this information that she is not receiving correctly, and that's why it's important to go back to the decision, talk elected to elected, and have staff also speak. But otherwise, we're just perceived as ourselves turning our backs to them and not responding.
Well, I don't think anybody's turning their backs, but I-
We haven't moved since February.
We have an opportunity to have an update on some, and what I'm hearing from both Kathy Lambert, and this was, I don't know, today, is that some of these things are still unresolved. I'm hearing from Jesse that a couple of these issues.
I think we just found out about the Chapmans, that the county insurance claim, insurance department denied the claims, and I feel for them. They're frustrated. It's frustrating for them, too. Part of our challenge is, Romero, that we got this litigation going on in the current permit process to be able to, well, in the south, but it's the same agency. It's basically the same people are making those decisions. So, why don't I just maybe two of Mayor and you and Deputy Mayor, three of us sit down and talk about it, see what's the best strategy to go forward with this thing, so.
That'd be fine.
Thank you. There'd be expeditions on that, thank you.
Okay, anybody else for council reports? Councilmember Keller, once again?
Yes.
Is this committee reports or council?
Done to council reports.
Yeah, we're on council reports already. You snooze, you lose, Don.
What are we doing in the side of the room?
So, this is, this is a council-
You'll do him.
I wanted to bring up the Best Arts for Kids. You know, I had sent some emails out about this just for information. And I also sent an email out to everybody today, actually, or yesterday, with some links on it of finding information about this levy that is now going to be on the ballot. We all collectively had voted positively to have it put on the ballot. Issaquah is going to, I believe, next week actually look at this and make a determination if they want to support it or not. I'm not sure what the will of our council is, if we want to support items on, on the ballot like this or not, if we have done it in the past.
No.
And I understand your point. I'm just bringing this up that what about-
Don't we have to go through a legal process and then permit people parole and cons and things like that?
Exactly. And my question would be, should we invite somebody in? If we don't vote to support it, could we invite people in to give a five or 10-minute presentation on it, both sides, to actually give and inform our, the citizens here and as well educate the council itself? I would be for that, for informational purposes.
Anybody else in favor of that?
It wouldn't hurt if I wouldn't be giving a five-minute-
Because our schedule's toothpaste, so we still haven't gotten the streets and everything. I still think it's just one more distraction.
Councilmember Odell, you okay with looking at that?
I'm okay. It's some of the ballot that's coming up in the order, so it's fairly critical. It'd be interesting to see if we can get both sides in. If you can't get both sides in, then it's just a no.
Councilmember Jaren?
Yeah, I'd support it, trying to do it.
Can I ask a question? Both sides are zero, or if I invite both sides and only one shows up?
Both sides are zero.
Legal thing, you have to ask the legal staff.
The legal thing is that if we are trying to pass-
Is your mic on?
Right.
So, this is the information you want.
Your mic.
Councilmember Jaren?
Well, I would go with Bob if only one side shows up, but you've invited both sides. That's fine with me.
And endorsement is a resolution?
Yeah, if you, I think the Councilmember Witten is correct that if you vote for endorsement, I mean, the passing resolution is part of this initiative, that in that case that you would have to invite both sides.
You would have to invite both sides, or do you have to hear from both sides? In other words, if somebody doesn't show up?
Right, that's fine.
Well, and remember, it was last year, the year before, that we had people who were opposed to the Lake Washington School Board, the school bond. They came and they did a presentation to us. The pro side never came, but there was, there's nothing that stops them from coming in, talking to us, doing public comment and doing a presentation.
I think what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing, Councilmember Keller wants to invite for information purposes. I don't think he's advocating for a resolution.
Okay.
But did anybody else agree besides Jaren?
I agree.
You have three.
That's three, four, five.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Witten, did you have something else as a council report?
I made my comment about, I don't approve of that. I mean, it's, we're two- I mean, it's, we're too overburdened, we're starting our meetings at 3:30. This is the third one out of four.
Valderrama, you had more?
One last item that I had tomorrow is the candidate forum at 7:00 PM, Boys and Girls Club. I should note, there was a recent article that says Issaquah's paying for the filming of it, and I know there's still that issue on the filming. We might want to consider that.
Good try, councilmember Valderrama, good try.
I like the memo.
See if we can get it. But Issaquah's paying for it.
Councilmember Jaren?
Mr. Mayor, last week, I attended the Road Usage Charge Steering Committee meeting again, and we did have a conversation, and Judy Clivern was there, and she pointed out that at DOT on major projects, practical design will be used on all new projects. And they envision 40% savings, and half the savings will go into maintenance and preservation, and half into new projects. Well, I'm, I'm, there's a word, what is it? Gobsmacked?
Gobsmacked.
Gobsmacked by that. That we can save 40% all of a sudden, why haven't we done it over the years?
Well, I had understood that Burian had to start over on one of their projects that they had almost fully designed.
Well, we asked about that. Mr. City Manager, is that a case? I think it wasn't the case, at least we were told at Puuson Regional Council.
Oh, where we told the story?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Councilmember Odell?
Yeah. A week or so ago, councilmember Jaren and I attended a meeting in Redmond on what we thought was transit issues. And it turned out to be more about building transit-oriented development, which is also interesting as well. But seeing as we don't have much transit left up here, it was a little hard to sit through this whole thing. Also, last week, councilmember Keller and I met with the leadership of the Y, Marcia from the board, and Dave Mayer, and also, who was the third one?
Leslie Austin?
Leslie Austin, thank you.
From the, from the board.
It was a good discussion on where the Y is in terms of getting their own message out about the community center opening up. And we also talked about some co-branding issues, and there's going to be more emphasis on the fact that it is a community center operated by the YMCA in partnership with the city of Samamish. One thing that also came out, and I'm not sure how this came up, but in view of public comment earlier tonight, I thought I'd mention it. The community center is being built with wiring for emergency power. At that point, I put on my list to do about going out and talking to FEMA about getting a generator, a grant for a generator for it, so that we can make that into a true emergency I attended the Lake Washington Bond Meeting, Lake Washington School Bond Meeting that was held Wednesday of last week at Eastlake High School, at which point the purpose was a public meeting to get input on the bond effort itself, and what the component, what the various components' relative importance were. I'm a little disappointed, frankly, in Samamish. This is, I think, the third or fourth one they held, and by far, the lightest turnout. We had maybe 12, 15 people in the room, over half of whom were Lake Washington staff. I don't know what's going on with the Eastlake Learning Community, as it's called, up on the plateau, but I would hope they would wake up and pay attention to this issue. Lastly, I got a, just before I left, I got an email from Ben, just before I left this afternoon to come to the meeting, I got an email from Ben saying the ITS system, with the intelligent transit system that we put into the 220th corridor this past summer was turned on. So I tested it, and guess what? It worked pretty darn well.
That's good to hear, then. Thank you.
I have one comment. One thing that I've noticed in other jurisdictions, in Bellevue and Issaquah, and I see Redmond, I think, are, they are adopting the program for yellow light on left turns instead of an arrow only. It's yellow during a green cycle to go straight.
It's a blinking yellow.
It's a blinking yellow.
I want to know one later.
And I've seen wonderful results on the parkway, and on all sorts of areas where I've encountered it. And like, getting into City Hall would be wonderful if, I hate to sit there for a council meeting, and this light's going on, and I'm late.
And you're blinking? Get it on.
It's red.
Okay, yes, councilmember Jaren?
Just briefly, this afternoon, we had a report from a citizen about the Cascade Rising, which is going to take place next year. And apparently, there's some preparatory stuff that the cities are doing now in the Fire District and Water District. And what I understood you to say is that we are participating in that.
That is a great segment, the city manager's reports. I heard the two councilmembers mentioned that one. We are participating in the Cascade, and I, but bigger issue for me is that, to be honest with you, is this minimizing the dis councils, or the previous councils, and also the city managers', the attention to emergency operations. We took this thing very seriously. We adopted our emergency operation plan back in 2002. Plan was updated in 2007, and just two years ago, 2012, we had an extensive public presentation year. Each council member was given a copy of the plan. Now, we're trying to put this in, obviously, an emergency procedure manual that is being updated currently. Participating exercises, so let me give you, participate in coordinated meeting with the King County Emergency Management. That is a periodic things that the, our deputy city manager does. Activating EOC when appropriate. Remember that snow events and the power outages, we activate it, we test it, it worked extremely well. Utilize City Hall as a warming shelter in the last two snow major events, power outages events. Participate in a seasonal emergency management briefing from King County Emergency Management. Participated in public health briefing and preparedness related to pandemics and Ebola activities. Mercer Island, water issue. That was a big debrief in the Mercer Island. We participated in those events. Emergency weekly radio checks. We have emergency weekly radios that we test it, make sure that works. We have in October 15 coming up, that the drill where we will activate our new emergency operation, updated EOC, and we will test that, test the system. And we're obviously participating in the Cascade Rising, June 2016. So what investment that have you made as a council and as the city manager that I recommend that you consider making? Two out of three fire stations that you equip with the emergency backup generator, so they could be used as warm-up station. Third fire station, 81, is right now, we're currently scheduled, and it's going to be happening this winter. We will be upgrading that particular station, too. We installed emergency radio broadcasting antennas at the strategic locations throughout the city. And we also upgraded that AM radio with the ham radio systems.
What is the AM frequency? I forgot. Is that...
It's 5...
530 or something?
530, or I'll get you this frequency on that one.
Probably should put it in our newsletter, maybe, and...
We will, we will. And then you also has received substantial technological upgrade to, for our EOC center. It's about, just last year, you allocated close to $120,000 that we upgraded. So we also installed backup batteries for every traffic signals, in case of the power outage, that we have the backup batteries, and those backup batteries also scheduled to be upgraded.
For the roundabouts, too?
Roundabouts, no bells, no whistles, no computers. Something must be wrong with them, so we don't do anything with the roundabouts. And obviously, we do meet with the Samamish Citizen Corps, and then you plug, plug in every year, money in the budget to support them. This notion that somehow this council, this city manager, doesn't take the EOC seriously bothers me. I know we're in the political silly season, some comments are being made. I just wanted to make sure that I cover that basis, so. We do take it very seriously. It is an important function, is given to the city manager by the state law, and I don't take that particular duty lightly.
Thank you, by the way.
Yes, thank you very much, and I'm...
You're welcome. And you deserve the most of the credit, by the way.
It's nice to know that that's an ongoing issue. It's not something you just decided to do this week.
It's always.
It's been planned for a long time, and it's been executed for a long time.
We do it. I mean, it's just, it's like a final plan that you get ready for exam. Ramiro and I always felt that we've never been ready, unlike the councilmember Don Jaren, that he seems like always ready for final exams.
Ted, before you go on, can I make a suggestion that is that in addition to publishing the emergency frequency in the paper, or the newsletter, that we also put it on the website, if it's not there?
Sure. Sure. It's there, I think. It is in our communication, but I'll find it, put it up.
The same thing with the numbers for the code violations for weekends, the number to call in. I have no idea what it is. I don't know where to find it.
Sure.
And we might find out, we have a lot of help out there in finding things going on.
Right. Next topic, I'll just make a little introduction, is the Sahalo Way Transportation Project upgrade or update for you. I want to zoom out to 30,000-foot level council and look ahead for two years, or maybe three years. And that's what our job is also here, in the sense that, what are the minefields out there for us? What I see that in about two to three years, this region is going to see unprecedented amount of the transportation funds coming into the market. You got this state came out with the major state capital projects, funded multi-hundred millions of dollars of projects. That's coming into the market. City of Seattle is planning on going for $1.2 billion levy, transportation levy. That's going to come into the market. We got also Sound Transit is considering going out, one-plus-billion-dollar transportation fund.
16 billion or something like that.
Well, I think there may be 1 billion. So huge amount of dollars coming into the region. What does that mean for us? In three to four years, when you have that much transportation funds coming into the market, design price is going to go up, construction price is going to go up, right? I mean, that's just the reality. It's the demand and supplies, that you have to deal with that. What I think we need to do is, as I have been encouraging my staff to do, and thank you to your actions, you actually did one of them tonight. We need to get our transportation projects ready, designed, and get ready for construction. So we need to be ahead of the curve. When those funds hit the market, consulting engineers are going to be busy, and contractors are going to be busy. And when they're busy, those prices are going to go up. Tonight, you authorize a site is Fourth Street, for example. That's one critical project.
Which one did we authorize?
Southeast Fourth Street.
Oh, I'm sorry. I...
The Sahalo Way is another critical project. We need to get moving on that one. And then the two other ones that are out there, that I, they're going through the consultant selection process right now, is Issaquah Falls City Road, and Issaquah Pine Lake Road. Now, clearly, you can't get all those projects under construction at the same time, then we have to put the one-way sign outs for people. I mean, we need to manage how the folks come in, go out of the town, too. I think that if we manage this thing, it might actually save us money in the long run by getting these projects ready and designed, and then strategically find the time to advertise the projects. Now, for Sahalo Way project, this is one of our concurrency projects. I know Transportation Committee met on this project. So I'm going to turn it over to our interim Public Works Director, John Cunningham, to maybe start giving the report, then introduce our team. John, you guys know, who's used to be our Public Works Director here. We fired him three times, we can't get rid of him.
Get rid of Adam back. I think what the city manager meant to say was recycled Public Works Director, as opposed to interim Public Works Director, but I'm very happy to be back and...
We love having John back here. He's been doing a great job, so I wish he could accept the job permanently, but he's retired, he's not interested in doing that.
Thank you, Ben. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Ben actually stole an awful lot of my introduction, but I would like to talk a little bit about the schedule, and then I'm going to turn it over to Andrew Zagers, who's our city engineer, and Jed Ireland, who's the project manager for this project, and they'll do sort of the technical part of the presentation as it pertains to Sahalo Way. The schedule that you, slide that you see before you, most of it is historical and kind of reminds you of where this project has come from so far. The last four bullets are the ones that I really wanted to talk about as we get into the presentation. Obviously, October 6, that's this evening, and our expectation, our hope tonight, is that we'll come away with a pretty fairly well-designed or decided scope of work, so that we can tomorrow morning begin to negotiate the design contract with our selected design firm. And then the next bullet on that is, we've got planned right now a second open house on November 4, at which we would be talking with the public and letting them know what the scope of work of the project is going to be, based on input that we've got from them, based on your input, kind of just keeping them up to date. And then the final two bullets are what the city manager alluded to. You might recall from your adopted 2015, 16 budget, that for both this project and for the Southeast Fourth project, the only money that was appropriated was the money for the design and some right-of-way purchase in those areas where we needed it. As the city manager indicated, we've had discussions over the last couple of weeks about the advisability of getting the design done as soon as we possibly can, and getting these projects ready to go out to bid and getting them under contract. So right now, we're looking at trying to get this project designed by spring of 2016, and then depending on, you know, the construction, the construction availability, the bidding climate at that point in time, whether or not we've got all of our necessary permits, whether or not we've purchased all of the right-of-way that we need, you know, getting the project out to bid and coming back to you with a contract award. So that's a little bit of a prelude to what you probably will see as you go through your mid-biennial budget adjustments this year, is you'll be seeing some requests for appropriation for some construction dollars in 2016, for both this project and the Southeast Fourth Street project.
It's coming from the transportation funds, so the funds are already there, just to basically advance appropriations of some of those, if the design and right-of-way is ready, so we can proceed with it.
Right. So with that, I think unless there's any additional questions, that ends sort of the schedule side of this, and I'll turn it over to Andrew and let him talk about the technical parts of the request for scope of work decision.
Let's keep going. Good evening. So like was mentioned, I'm going to go over the scope of what we're proposing for the final design. This is going to be based on the results of the preliminary design report that was directed to us by council. Part of the final design is to increase the corridor capacity to meet our concurrency standards, as this is one of our concurrency projects, and then also keep the project within our allotted tip planning estimate, which is 15.7 million, including the design. As part of the scope of the analysis for our preliminary design, and as was discussed in our Transportation Committee meetings, both held on June 4 and September 9, we were asked our consultant to analyze a five-lane option instead of our three-lane option for Sahalo. Look at a possible truck climbing lane for the north end, coming up out of the Alpha 202. Look at the intersection of 28th Place for either Signal or Roundabout, and then also look at some functional, cost-effective features that can be implemented, possible sidewalks only on one side. There was a discussion of gravel sidewalks. There was a narrowing of the medians where possible, or possibly eliminating the median north of 37th Way, and then also keeping eight-foot shoulders on the east side and on the north, on both sides, north of 37th as we go up the hill. The recommendations, based on the study, we were able to... The recommendations, based on the study, we were able to have a project with an estimate value of $14 million, a little over $14 million, $14,160. We are looking at only proposing sidewalks on the west side only, but having bike lane, with a bike lane. On the east side, we would want a combined eight-foot shoulder slash bike lane. And then north of 37th, we would convert it back to what's existing out there right now with, without a median, having two lanes and then eight-foot combined bike and shoulders on both sides of the roadway. There is a warrant for a new signal at 28th. The posted speed limit, we are looking, recommending to reduce it down to 40 miles per hour, mainly for safety and also design considerations, because once you go up above that, design costs can go up extremely high because of safety concerns and additional warrants you have to meet. And then we're looking at narrowing the striped median between 25th and 28th and continuous two-way left turn lane, third lane for the remaining portion up to 37th. What's not recommended is a five-lane option. There was no benefits for it, plus it's very costly. The cost for the project would go up to about $67 million.
And we don't need it.
So. We don't want it.
It's not we don't want it. It doesn't need it by concurrency, right?
Right. We do not need it for concurrency. It didn't need any recommendation to have that. The roundabout proposal at 28th was also not recommended because it didn't do any benefit. Matter of fact, it lowered the intersection to a level service F. And then gravel sidewalks, we don't recommend at all for cost-effective maintenance jurisdictional requirements, ADA. So we definitely want to keep a concrete sidewalk as a requirement.
Quick question. This is what is required for concurrency also. It meets all the concurrency requirements.
Correct. And yes.
I told John that I want to take a look at this roundabout versus signal analysis there, so I need to spend a little bit more time on this thing. Intuitively, I'm having a hard time understanding that the signal provides a better level of service than the roundabout. But my license is dusty, so you guys are ahead of me on this one. So we'll take a look at that.
Ben, you're also going to have to, if you do the roundabout, figure out a good way to get pedestrians across that road.
Yeah. And then I think that's, we built some of the laws of transportation, high schools and middle schools.
The pedestrian activity. But I don't want to spend a lot of time on details right now here, but let's keep going.
So these are all the recommendations we have to meet our concurrency requirement for the project. In addition, there are other options and enhancements that we can propose that are above and beyond the concurrency requirement, but also require additional funding sources where we won't be able to use our impact fees. And the next couple of slides give you, give us a few recommendations that we had our consultant look into. They were enhancing pedestrian crossings. Since we're only having sidewalk on one side, when there's bus locations or intersections, we want to have a possible safe signaled crosswalks there in tune around $45,000 each. They also do require a study to determine if they're actually warranted for those. Another one would be bus pullouts where the bus stops are on the west side only, where the sidewalk and curb and gutter and bike lane are. That's estimated around $320,000. Widen planing strip. Right now, our current section for concurrency, we're proposing a three-foot planer strip on the west side to widen it to five feet. Drives an additional cost of $820,000, mainly due to needed walls to meet the topography that's in that area. And then a raised median, that's is only going to be between 25th and 28th. Instead of being a striped median, we would actually have the raised, either concrete or landscape median. And then widened painting medians in between 28th to 37th. Right now, we're proposing eight-foot median, but to widen it to 12 feet is an additional $2.7 million, again, because of the needed walls and to take care of the topography and the widening. And then there was a discussion of the truck climbing lane that goes up the hill from 220 or 210. That is a cost, mainly for the widening, is a little over $5 million, $5.8 million. That's a portion that's both within the city limits and also in the King County. We've already had discussions with King County where they expressed that they would not be able to contribute any funds to that, so that would be all under our dime. And when looking at, is it really needed? There's only about 3% traffic that this relates to for trucks and buses compared to the overall traffic that go up that hill. And when looking at the cost effectiveness and benefit, we just look at a travel time and what really impacts the driver. Getting caught behind a bus or a truck only adds 50 seconds of travel time for this area that this, where this truck turning, you know, truck climbing lane would be.
Can you repeat that, please?
Okay. 15 seconds travel time.
50, five zero seconds. So when a person gets behind a bus or a truck climbing.
It may feel like 15 minutes.
City manager, I remain to be convinced of that.
The other part of it is also, council, it's the perception that we're not building highways. We're building arterial streets. Truck climbing lanes belong highways. You want, if those buses slowing down a little bit, the general traffic, that's okay. You want people to come into our town with the reasonable speed. We don't, we don't need to have that, the speed lanes coming through.
Can we comment on that?
So, and then the look at the price tag. I mean, 3.4 plus 2.4, you're looking for $6.8 million. With all, I mean, the $5.8 million, that's a lot of money, folks. Lots of money.
I want to rebut that. I live on the south end of the city. 43rd is an extension of 228th. It's one lane downhill. It opens up to two lanes toward the bottom of the hill to accommodate the traffic going into a roundabout. Coming uphill, all the way uphill, it's two lanes. And it's not the buses. There aren't any that I know of. There used to be the 216, but that's disappeared. It's, and it's not the trucks. It's all those cars funneling down the one lane that backs up on the parkway. And during rush hour, if you didn't have two lanes coming uphill on 228th, you'd be stopped going uphill. And there's more development from Issaquah coming in on that hill. And it's a really, and in bad weather, there are bozos who don't know how to drive in bad weather or just can't get up the hill for whatever reason, who've taken that risk. They have a place to pull off and leave their car. And believe me, if there's two lanes up the hill and you don't have a place to pull off, that's really critical. So it serves many purposes. I would never, ever said it was meant to be a truck climbing lane or a bus lane. It's meant to give, the choke point for Sahali is the intersection with 202. Coming up, there is no choke point. It moves once you get to the top of the hill. Giving it two lanes to come up the hill gives you all that thing. It's nothing to do with being a truck climbing lane. It's having two lanes to accommodate the traffic flow coming up the hill. So I think there are so many reasons for that. I'm really appalled you'd call it, put it in terms of being behind a bus or a truck. I don't think the buses even come up there. I mean, that's ridiculous.
Are there buses?
Okay, are there?
Actually, buses do come up that one.
Connector buses?
Come on, man.
About three different metro buses or Sound Transit?
But that's in addition to the volume of cars, which is the main use of that road.
There's a three-lane section. One of those third lane could be utilized as coming up, the two-lane receiving. We don't need to build additional fourth lane at the cost of $5.8 million.
No, I want three lanes.
We got engineers, we got transportation planners, they got the numbers, they got the modeling. We got to trust their judgment, what they're suggesting us that needs to be done there.
So are you recommending three lanes coming?
No, it's two lanes coming up the hill.
Two lanes coming up the hill. It will be transitioned to the one lane as you come over the top.
No, no.
It's one lane going down and two coming up. Is that what you're saying? That's what I'm proposing.
This is a challenge, they should show it out there.
It's one, it's exactly as it is today.
Then why are we doing the whole project anyway? I don't want to spend any money.
We're doing the project for concurrency, and that section, we don't need any improvements for concurrency north of 37th.
No, I don't care about concurrency. I'm caring about traffic flow.
I'd like to point out that the design has eight-foot shoulders on both sides. So if you're talking about snow and ice problems.
Have that issue resolved.
So I have a couple of comments as chair of the committee here. First of all, I don't think the $5.8 million number is worth it. I really don't. However, the questions I have are, what is the width, the typical width of Sahaliway going down the hill versus 43rd? And the second question is, could the shoulder be used for driving? Could we allow shoulder driving there?
During rush hour.
So that something that is moving slow could get off to the right. I see people do it, but it's not signed as such.
Right. I think we, there's just a couple of things that we would need to take a look at, and that's the signing. There may be, and I don't know what the widths are, we can, we can look at that. We'd have to look and make sure that the shoulder is structurally sound enough to invite people over, you know, invite trucks over there.
That's really where I was going with that.
But, you know, there's some technical issues just to look at, but there's no, other than that, there's no reason why someone, you know, we couldn't build it so that someone could drive on the shoulder.
Well, I've been behind somebody who's been not going very fast, like a bus, that basically reduces the en route time up the hill by a good two minutes.
Sounds like a five hours, right? When you're behind those two. I can relate to that time. But in reality, distance-wise, it's about 50 seconds.
Right. So I'm not willing to spend the $5.8 million, but I wonder if there's a simple solution here, given the width of the shoulders. We may have to re-stripe the road to make it happen, but.
It's a great suggestion. I suggest that we definitely consider the enhanced pedestrian crossings. Pedestrian safety is important things. And bus pullouts, I think that this is an issue for some of you that we should consider it. And then at that point, I think we can manage that, and we'll take a look at this. Obviously, the critical issue is at the intersections that I want to spend some time with our engineers, that 202 and the Sahaliway intersection. That's the intersection that needs to be fixed. That how that double left turn going on to Sahali, and then the receiving perhaps the double right in, in the PMP car, I don't know those things. I need to spend some time to find out what it is and how the merging is going to happen. And, but the thing is, I mean, we can spend a lot more time on this thing and have multiple meetings out of this thing. What I'm hearing from our engineers saying that we don't need that additional fourth lane there. What we need is that the perhaps coming up.
Be a third lane.
The two lanes, and then the, and at one point that it's transitioning down to one lane. Isn't that what you were telling me, Andrew?
Correct.
And that gives the operational advantages, and we have white shoulders. And in terms of the snow and ice circumstances, I've been here for 16 years. There's been only one incident at that location that when we had the snow and ice, that we had some road blockages. That was when entire Puget Sound was shut down. Not only that particular road, entire county was shut down. But with this, that we will have the sufficient shoulders to do it. The other part of it is, council, there's no way King County is going to come out with the $2.5 million. I mean, let's not, let's be realistic here. It's going to be us paying for this thing. So this is a $5.8 million. Engineers are telling me that we don't need it.
Okay. Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, I have a number of questions. First of all, I want to thank you for putting together this study. I want to thank the Transportation Committee for doing their analysis. I'm a little perplexed as to why the public comment is in November. I understood that the perception, and actually the feedback was that the citizens were surprised at the last open house. And then we've had a lot of comments from citizens and the Sahali Homeowners Association that they wanted to participate in this process in the design. And as I understood, they had problems trying to coordinate with the Transportation Committee to attend those meetings because of the ad hoc nature of them. And so I would have expected that those presentations and public opinion be coming beforehand. So that's the first issue that I have, because there's a lot of concern about that that's been voiced multiple times, that they wanted to have input into this. The second point I'd like to know is, under this design, will there be the requirement to acquire land from current owners in Sahali with this reduced three-lane approach?
It's at the intersections, at the corners, in some intersections, not all intersections, but not in a linear fashion, that councilmember Valderrama.
But also.
The big one was the right turn lane, Item D. And looking at that price, I wouldn't support it.
Well, I know you, but it'd be interesting to get their take on that as well. How firm is the number that we're giving a 14.16?
Feel comfortable?
Sorry?
That includes a 30% contingency, so we feel comfortable with what we're doing for this scope, for the original scope for concurrency.
30%?
Mm-hmm. Because we don't have a full survey and a lot of design, so we build that in our initial estimate.
Yeah, that's fairly common at this point, this stage of design.
And then the issue of concurrency. We talk about concurrency, and we had that on East Lake-Samamish Parkway, and we did the whole project out there. And then the citizens found out that concurrency does not mean what people think it means of getting cars off faster when you start to go at time. So this goes back to councilmember Whitten's comment before, is are we checking the box or are we doing something that's functional? Because people are looking, how do we get off the plateau faster as we?
And get home faster.
Get home faster as well? That's right. Especially the reverse commute out here, since we live in such a friendly city. That said, so just to spend the money, knowing that we still have to address the issues with King County, because King County is broke as far as roads go. They're not going to put a cent in here. It's high on their priority list, but it's been repeated for years that they don't have a cent for this road. So then it comes to us. It comes to us, and what everybody who's driven that road says, are we just moving the bottleneck down to 202, even if we pay for King County's portion, which people have a heartburn of doing? Because the real solution everybody has talked about is a flyover, which is prohibitively expensive.
$35 million.
Exactly. But better to spend $35 million than just to move to 202 and take pictures of the gray barn.
Ramiro. Hold on just a second. Mr. City Manager, you had a response to that?
Yeah, Ramiro, it's a state facility. We can't just simply build what we want to do there. It's also that the Department of Transportation needs to be involved. I'm not quite sure that, you know, flyover worked really well when we did that 202 and the 520 that the, thanks to one of our former senators that actually plugged the money into the state budget, that helped us a lot when you have a two-lane. Right. But in this case, I don't think we can justify to either state or to any reasonable person saying that we're going to spend this kind of money. Actually, with the proposed improvements that the staff and the engineers were showing, you can meet the reasonable level of service. What needs to happen is that two-left turn going on to the 202 and the two-right coming in from 202, as Nancy's issues, when you come in, you need to be able to continue with that two-lane at reasonable distance, just what happens on this Southeast 43rd Street, and then it transitioned back to the single lane. The other issue that I ask Andrew and John, that the free right turn lane at that intersection, and the critical component is that, how do you make that signal work better? It's just not about what the lane's there, that making sure that signal is also functional. The problem is that you got too much traffic on 202. So the signal works in the premises of splitting the pie, so to speak. It stops one direction, let's go the other direction, and then then it turns around and stops the other direction, and then let's go the first direction. So you're in 50% of the time, and inefficient. So when somebody tells me that the actual signal works better than roundabout, my antenna goes up, they're saying, wait a minute. Now, roundabout, 100% of the time, you're moving traffic. We need to take a look into that one. I don't think that we can ask the state to do any either roundabout or flyover ideas at that intersection. But that intersection that I need, they're going to do some extensive modeling that if we need to get the DOT, Department of Transportation, to participate in any particular funding scenario, be short of flyover. Flyover is very expensive. I can guarantee that we're not going to.
And they own down at the intersection on 202.
And I think that we will be able to convince them to participate in it.
Ben, can I make a couple of comments?
Of course.
Hold on just a second. I want to make one, too. I think the other issue is, is also the Department of Transportation in Redmond, because we have other lights.
Sure.
Down there, we, it's a whole series of lights. And the traffic doesn't start or stop just at that intersection. And so I think, I think this would, if it's successful, it's going to be truly an inter, you know, inter-regional solution with, not only with King County and the Department of Transportation, but Redmond as well.
Yeah. And no question that that intersection is a critical piece of this project. I think we can't make that intersection work. I just don't know. I just don't know that we need that additional lane all the way through that up there with, when we have the white shoulders. And councilman, I mean, councilmember Odell wanted to say something.
Yes.
Had my light on.
I did too.
You've been up for a while.
The intersection of Sahale Way and 202 actually works better than a lot of people think it does. The problem is 202 itself. And what Ben was just talking about was, there's a series of signalized lights that take you down to the 520 interchange. And they don't work worth a darn in terms of being coordinated. If we had the ITS system that would just turn the light on today on 228 in operation down there, that would work a lot better. As far as, what we have down there is a parking lot queuing up to get on 202, once the light changes, and in the morning, you go about 100 feet and stop, because they're backed up all the way into Redmond. Coming this way from Redmond, there's one lane turning, turning right to come up the hill. So the problem is not merging coming up the hill, Ben, I disagree with you on that. There's also one lane turning left, going westbound off of 202 toward Redmond. And those lights are not, you're not having traffic going at the same time. It's a free, it's a free right on red there, but that moves fairly quickly. The, coming up the hill, there is a queue up at Timberline, the Timberline entrance, and the next queue up is really at Southeast 14th. And maybe 20, Northeast 20th, Northeast 14th, maybe Northeast 25th. Before we put $39 million into a flyover down at the bottom of the hill, we need to have some serious conversations and probably spend some of that $39 million on taking the ITS all the way from Safeway down to the 520, 202 interchange in Redmond. That would probably be the single best investment we could make.
Yes.
And, you know, this is based on 26 years of driving this road, looking at it every day, at all times of the day.
Ben, are we in the public input process? We had the open house once.
We had the open house, where we were requesting input from the public. And then, as part of the meeting, we also had handouts and we have had availability on the web for, you know, for constituents to give us comments and recommendations of the requests.
And that report was presented to the council when?
That was presented to the public, or to the council on July 14th.
And then?
And then we had the Transportation Committee in September 9th.
Okay. And Ramiro, did you, did you say that there's, there's some demand or desire to have more public input?
Absolutely. I mean, I was at that meeting in June, they were all up in arms, because it was the first time they saw it. As of about five weeks ago, Sahale Homeowners Association met when wanted to attend. There have been citizens who have asked to attend these meetings, the scheduling of the transportation.
Well, let's have a couple more meetings. Let's, I mean, obviously, public input is the most critical thing that we do, so we'll, we'll get them involved in this process if we...
Can I add comments before we finish?
Well, I was just gonna say that, you know, I mean, if we're, if we're basically deciding on the, pretty much the general scope of work tonight, the public meetings can be to tweak things a little bit, but, you know, if the expectation is they'll come and say, build us a five-lane section, you know, I mean, I think our response back is, no, we're not doing that, you know, and we don't have the money, it's not warranted, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about what the, the purpose of the, of the public meetings is at this stage in the game. I mean, how, how much are they going to influence at this point and change the scope?
Just like your June 16th meeting, they're gonna give you the inputs into it and be able to say, this doesn't help me get out or come home or the other.
Right.
Councilmember Jaren?
Oh, I was first, wasn't I?
Nope.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What's wrong?
A couple of points I wanted to make. And one is, with regard to the bus pullout lanes, we were talking with Metro and Sound Transit in the past, and they basically said they didn't like those. So I suggest we have a communication, open communication with them before we make decisions about bus pullout lanes.
I, I would agree. My concern would be especially during the peak hour, when you've got a pretty steady stream of traffic going one way or the other.
Hard to pull in, pull out and pull in without...
Then, you know, are they gonna pull off and not be able to get back into the stream of traffic? Because no one will let them.
That's what they don't like.
And the other point... Even though there's, even though people are supposed to yield and let them back in.
The other point I wanted to make is about roundabouts. Certainly, when we hired, when we hired the city manager, we knew that he had worked on the first roundabout in the state.
Twenty circles anyway.
Nothing circles.
You know, the roundabouts, I think the main goal of this project, if I'm not mistaken, is because of safety, it's not only congestion relief, it's safety with the left turn lanes along the road. So you're putting in a third lane, but you still end up with a left turn. Left turn into a middle lane is still dangerous in my mind. If you have roundabouts, you can eliminate that and people turn right and go around the roundabout. If you have several roundabouts, all the better and their traffic calming in addition. So I know it might cost more because of, of land acquisition for them, but in the long run, they really should be given serious consideration.
Yeah.
How do people get across then on your main road?
No problem.
Councilmember Whitten?
I'm, I'm really distressed we haven't discussed right turn lanes. What I'm interested in in the project is...
I'm sorry, I missed Nancy's one.
Right turn lanes? What I'm concerned about, and I'd much rather have a right turn lane than a bus pullout, frankly.
Right turn lane, where?
Northeast 28th.
Where there's traffic. The 800 and some thousand covers, no, it's only 480.
And what is the traffic?
I mean, to me, that's peanuts to get a traffic flow that flows. Every time you have a sharp right turn, you, you stop traffic behind you and you're talking about a one lane in each direction. So I think right turn lanes are really important at critical intersections. What does that 480,000 cover? Which intersection?
Probably the right of way, because when you add additional lane, that it requires additional right of way.
But which, but which intersection?
That would be 28th. And currently, the peak hour traffic is 67 cars making that movement.
That's all?
Yes.
Yeah. I really don't think it's needed. That's my intersection.
What I'm opposed to is a project, you've gotta look at this and say, we are anticipating growth of thousands and thousands of people. This is a plan that's supposed to go through 2035.
Exactly.
You're taking a 30,000-foot perspective. It's a tremendous inconvenience to residents to do a construction project. And what does it accomplish? In my mind, almost nothing. I mean, I think you could go in on the cheap and add left turn lanes.
Exactly.
Add, and do a few other minor tweaks and have the same results that you're gonna have with the proposed minimum concurrency of $14 million. I am against this project unless you really show a flow, traffic will flow better. You can accomplish that through things like the right turn lane, things, 67 cars in what period of time?
That's the peak hour, peak 24-hour concurrency.
Which is how long a period?
That's a one hour, one hour period.
So in one hour, you have 67 turning cars.
And then in the projected for...
And then traffic stops behind you.
Projected for 2035 is approximately 96. So it's an increase of 30 cars.
I mean, I don't think this project's gonna do a ditty thing for anything.
Why don't you?
So I'm not in favor of it.
All by itself, no, but if you combine it with the other parts.
Nancy, you know...
Well, I'm just telling you, I don't see any benefit from doing a project that's not gonna help traffic flow. And I don't...
So let's ask Andrew.
And can I finish my comments?
What is the difference in flow?
Tom, you've had your comments. Can I please make mine?
You've been making them.
Well, I haven't finished them. Thank you. I'm not in favor of this unless you can show some benefit. I, I would be like on the Parkway on that one phase where we put in the median strips, I think we could have fixed it by a left turn lane or two at a key intersection. I just don't think this is necessary or worth the money unless you really take a look and say, what benefit is it going to be when we get all those extra people?
Yep.
Coming into the city and into the region.
Mr. City Manager?
So I'm not going to vote for it.
You know, and I apologize, I am appalled here, saying that this is a concurrency project, we build our transportation plan, we build our impact fee plan, we've been at it for 10 years. Tonight, we're saying that I'm gonna question the judgment of the licensed engineer that the 66 vehicles per hour right turn lane isn't there, therefore, I don't want to do this project.
It's not just that, it's the climbing lane.
Time out. This is not about the what intuitively, what we think. This, we built our system based on some laws and regulations and standards. We can't just simply come over here one night saying that I don't support this project. It's been in the books for freaking 10 years.
I don't support it unless you build a third lane.
I understand what you want to do, Nancy, but we gotta be careful here, what statements that we make. We, all bases of our transportation impact fee, all of our concurrency, long-term plans, short-term plans, it'll base, based on this. We can't just simply say tonight, I don't like this project, we're not gonna build it.
I don't like this project. I, that's what I'm saying. Thank you, Ben.
Your 107. Thank you.
Absolutely. Let me just ask a question. Based on this design, looking at the current design, do we have a number of the, a number of the change in traffic flow?
I don't know. When we base this, we base on the current traffic flows and the expected growth that come, you know, for the city to use us.
I'm just talking about throughput per hour.
Pardon?
Throughput capability. It, the, I don't care if we're gonna have a doubling of traffic. What I'm interested in is what is the maximum capability of the flow of that road today versus what it might be if we do all this?
What we're trying to do is maintain what, with the traffic that we're projecting in 2035, we want to maintain the capability of the road, this road to handle the traffic and still maintain our level of service that we have out there today. That's what the concurrency is for, so we're not adding any delays to, for future traffic. So this concurrency model actually takes into account the growth, the projected growth, and I believe it's around 22,000 vehicles is the projected vehicle traffic on 228th and Sahale.
And what is it today?
Right now is around 14,000 to 15,000.
So 50% increase?
Mm-hmm.
That's the number I was looking for.
Okay.
And that doesn't include, does that include the project, potential improvements, not only at the intersection, but on, on, all the way down to 520?
It does. It could, it's our citywide model where we project the entire build out for the city and what we...
Including sinking?
It doesn't include any of the timing that's on 202 and if we were to try to sink that traffic.
So that's, that's an extra.
That would be an extra.
Right. It includes, it does not include any of the ideas that you've talked about for improving the, the 202 and Sahale Way intersection or, you know, improving the signal coordination.
But that's the regional effort going forward.
Yeah, that's totally, that's totally outside of this.
Sure.
This analysis.
Which we would expect, yeah. Okay.
I would just like to make a quick comment.
What, where'd he come from?
Yeah. 202, that whole corridor is a problem. If the lights can help, you know, our traffic is backing up into Redmond, as you had said, Redmond is involved in this as well.
Absolutely.
Our traffic is backing up into Redmond, or we're backed up, you know, early in the morning into Sumamish. And here's the question that I would ask every one of us in making this decision. 22,000 is the projected increase in traffic. Everybody, everybody in Sumamish right now, from what I can tell, is very concerned about how the traffic is. What are we gonna say to those people five years from now, six years from now, if we decide we're not gonna get involved with this important commute corridor in our city? What are we gonna say when we don't start working on this project right now? I'm, I, I'm, I, I just think not only should we be configuring this road for future traffic, we need to be talking to the county, we need to be talking to the state, we should have a concerted effort upon, with this council, with people that are being represented and speaking with them. This is the conversations we've been having in the Transportation Committee meetings about getting this started and working on that, but what are we gonna ask the residents, or what are we gonna say to the residents in Sumamish if we don't look at this important commute corridor and do something with it?
If I may.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Keller. And then we're gonna refund those impact fees that we collected? And then we're gonna go back to lower our impact fees further? Not only are we gonna subject this community for further congestions, and then we're gonna refund the funds? Come on. We know better than this council.
If, if I could add one, one thing, I want to make sure that the council members understand that all of the traffic analysis that led to the recommendation for a three-lane section for, for most of this, most of this corridor, were based on the projections of the 2035 traffic. They're not based on today's traffic, they're based on 2035's traffic and this corridor meeting the level of service standard that you, the council has, has set, as the city manager says, so...
So what do you need from us tonight, Mr. City Manager?
I, I just need the council's overall head nod, so that I can proceed.
Do we have, I'm gonna start down at the end?
Nope.